Appreciate everybody being here, see the county clerks here, registered deeds here, treasurer is here, election commissioners here, appraiser is here, representatives from the sheriff's office and DA are here, and a lot of department heads, a lot of staff. So we really appreciate you joining. Should be a pretty robust conversation today. The rest of the gang's here, so why don't we turn it over? Tom, take it away.
Good morning, Chairman and Commission. Your entire budget team is here today, and we have a lot of other folks that'll join us today. I talked with Lorian a bit before this meeting. This is her eighth year as the Budget Director, so she is well seasoned. It's Lindsey's, I forget how many budgets you did before Lorian, Lindsey was the Budget Director before Lorian actually, and did a number of budgets. So you have an experienced finance team here today to help us through this process over the next few months. The work we're getting ready to undertake today is the first public work we do in budget. I say this every year, and I'll say it again this year, this is the most important work you will do as a Commissioner. You will set our budget for the upcoming 2026 year. It is a chance to prioritize and put into action programs and policies, which are important to the people of Sedgwick County. And we will work within the confines of the economic conditions that we have today. This is a budget, and we take pride in this in Sedgwick County. This is a budget that is set by the people. It is not a bureaucrat budget. We will have a number, and I will count them for you, it's dozens of opportunities for people, for citizens to engage at various times throughout this process between now and when the recommended budget comes in on July the 9th. So just a quick process overview here, we have been working, staff has been working on budget since November, December. We have division and department meetings and began to set forth what our budgets for the upcoming year will look like. Lorian, as the Budget Director, sent a note out about a week ago to all the staff outlining kind of the goals of the budget. And then I forwarded it up with an email myself, which I forwarded to the Commissioners too, so you know where the priorities from the staff are coming forward as we start this budget process. I will summarize, just for everybody else in this room, the important part for me in this budget is our staff yet. We have talked about this and emphasized this the last three or four years. And it's staff compensation and benefits, but it's more than that. It's the environment, it's how we treat employees and our morale, and how we supervise, so that we make sure that we're fair in how we do business. Those will be priorities as we go through the budget from the staff perspective. We start today with a budget retreat, and as you go through the list of things we're doing today, there are some things we do every year. For example, Lorian next will go through the forecast update, she does it every year, and gives you the lay of the land. Then we have what I call some ad hoc presentations. For example, Lindsey will present consolidated services, because we're talking a lot about functional merging and consolidation. And so at 9:15, she goes through a consolidated services review for you. We already have a number of consolidated services between Wichita and Sedgwick County. We will take a short break, and then Andrew Dilts will do what he does every year, either here or Tanya, give us CIP updates, so the Commission gets a review of every major CIP project that we are doing in '25 and '26. We will have lunch here, and we will kind of just work right through lunch. Sheena will present a policy, this is an ad hoc topic, on elected pay. Then we have two ad hoc presentations, one from Scott Nuland, and one from A.J. Beleski, to talk about their operations at the zoo and the arena, and the challenges they're going to be facing over the next five or 10 years that the Commission needs to factor in as we talk about our budget for 2026. We usually talk about senior centers, and it's gone the agenda again today, although I considered it an ad hoc topic. So Tim Kaufman will give us a history of senior center funding, and we can have discussion there. And then at the end of the day, we will do what we always do, and the budget team and I will put on our best active listening hats, and we want to listen to Commission talk about what their priorities are moving forward. As we go through, after today, we, our staff will begin to compile budget. We will have city manager, I'm sorry, county manager, county manager hearings from April 14th to 18th. That's where we have divisions and departments come in and kind of, we do a dress rehearsal before we come to you. On May 7th through 16th is when we will have the BOCC hearings. So for our two new Commissioners during that time period in there, you will see and hear from every department director, 40-plus directors and elected officials will come before you and talk about their budgets, their challenges, and what operationally they are facing. From May 17th to June 13th, there are five Tuesdays in that period, and we will use those Tuesdays for workshops and staff that are budget-related on any topic that Commissioner wants more detail on. All of these are open meetings, I might add to, public meeting today, public meeting on all of our BOCC hearings, public meeting on all of our staff meetings, public can engage and watch all of those. On June 17th, I have to have, I'm winding up my final budget, and I will present a recommended budget to you on July 9th. We have two public hearings, one for July 31, one for August 20. And this year, and I don't know if Lindsey might talk about this in a little bit, but Dr. Grove from WSU is developing a very robust budget simulator that we will row from 1st of May till 3rd week of May, so the public will have three weeks that they can get in, look at our budget, tinker with numbers, and begin to give us their priorities on what we think we should budget. So there's a number of opportunities this year, maybe more than ever, where the public can engage in this budget process, so that this budget ends up being the people's budget. That's our goal. With that, our adoption date is August 20, tentatively, and I think I will turn it over to Lorian to go through the forecast.
Good morning. Before I get started, I just want to thank Carly Sanchez, Lee McCray, and Dustin Sigler. They are our awesome budget team. The forecast is always a lot of work, and starting from the beginning is the hardest one we do. And they do a lot of other things at the same time, so I'm very appreciative of them and their work. Thank you, guys. Okay, so as a reminder, the forecast is a planning tool. It projects our actual expenditures and revenues, and it's what we think is really going to happen, while our budget is a maximum spending limit in a given fund for one year. So for example, our 2024 revised budget was $642 million. We had actual expenses of $562.6 million, so we had $79.4 million in unspent budget authority. So this slide is what Lindsey was referencing yesterday. We show this every year because it really illustrates the importance of the forecast. So in February of 2011, this is what the Commissioners saw. So in the years of that forecast, we thought we'd fall below our minimum balance requirements, and that we'd be insolvent within about five years. So the warning that the forecast provided allowed the Commission to take action and proactively address the situation, and that's why we take the forecast so seriously. So as we get into our current operating results, I want to highlight that what we're talking about today is not a recommendation. It's only what the forecast looks like right now. We have not tried to fix anything. Through budget development, we'll find out what your priorities are, what the needs of the organization are, to craft the recommended budget that you'll see in July. So in terms of what is actually included in our forecast, we always plan for all of our current services. We do have our current adopted CIP included. There are $31.8 million of cash-funded projects through 2029, and we do have a $5 million placeholder in 2030. We also have $19.9 million included for technology review board projects throughout all years of the forecast. We've included our stable mill levy rate of 28.701 mills, which was our final 2025 rate. And we have built in increases of 5% in '26 through 2030, based on the assumption that that's what we'd be allowed to capture for value growth in those years. So what's not included in the forecast, we don't have any additional funding for any new programs, any unbudgeted community and economic development requests or road projects, any unanticipated technology needs or pending capital improvement needs and priorities, or the replacement of the election equipment fleet. So in 2023, we did a $3 million transfer to our equipment reserve, with another transfer of $9.2 million in 2024. We're trying to build up the balance in that fund, so that when we have large purchases like the election equipment fleet, we can purchase from there and not have to affect our general fund. So everybody should have a long sheet handout at your seats. I'm going to walk through what's included in that sheet. So if you have not seen this handout before, this is showing what our forecast looks like for our county property tax funds. And those funds are the general fund, WSU, aging, highways, and bond and interest. So this shows our 2024 actuals in dollar amounts, and then each year shows the percentage increase or decrease from the previous year. So we're looking at our key revenue assumptions. Assessed value increases, our actual increase in 2025 was 8.06%. For 2026 through 2030, as I mentioned, we have that 5% built in. We do think that it will probably come in larger than that, but we built the forecast on what we thought we'd be allowed to capture. For our other key revenues on this sheet, mainly they stay at normal rates. Yes, Lindsey?
I would like to know if you have questions now or at?
Whatever you prefer.
Just thank you for the chance to ask a question. So looking at that 2025 column, and the 2024 actuals, actually, if I understand correctly, we're looking at the 2026 budget that's up and coming, that's the 5%. 8.06 is already realized, that's in our current budget, right? So 2025 is in the books, so to speak, in terms of we've already passed that budget. And the assessed value for 2024, there actually is another number that we should be looking at, that's at 6.952 million, or billion, excuse me, 6.952, again, that is a billion, excuse me, 6.952605137 is a 2025 number. It's just not shown on your sheet. So what that means is one mill today is $6.952 million today.
Correct, but what this is showing is that off of that 2024 actual figure of 6.5, it increased in 2025 by 8.06 to get to that number that you're referencing.
I understand, yeah. I guess I just want to make sure that everybody understands that what you're seeing there in 2025 is really not under debate, because that's been done.
That's locked in.
What we're going to be talking about is what we're going to do in '26. All right, thank you so much.
Okay. For our key revenues, as I say, we have mostly normal rates across the forecast. For medical charges for service, we do have a little bit of a larger increase in 2025, and that's because EMS submitted a revenue package for an increase in their user fees and medical standby fees in 2025. For our gaming revenues, we expect that what we collected last year is now going to be our standard amount that we receive each year. And then for investment income, we have estimates of $12.5 million in 2025. We have $10 million in 2026, and then $6.5 million in those outer years. And anything that we collect over what we believe will be our more normal amount, once our rates come down, which is that $6.5 million starting in 2027, we consider that as one-time revenue. So we look at our expenditure side, currently we have a 5% pay pool in 2026, and 4% pay pools in the outer years. For 2026, the initial compensation recommendation includes the step plus a 1% scale adjustment for the EMS and the sheriff's step plans, the 3% step for the fire step plan, and a 2% general pay adjustment, and 2% scale adjustment for all of the other pay plans. For health insurance, we have increases of 5% each year. We do know that, of course, we'll have increases in our CAPers and our KPNF rates, but the large increases in '24 and '25 are due to the increase in staffing levels across our organization. We just have a lot more filled positions now, and we've had all those increases in compensation, so that's caused those numbers to increase. For admin charges, the large decrease in 2024 was due to those consolidated tax funds. Calm care, EMS, and noxious weeds were consolidated into the general fund in 2022, and they paid back their last admin charges in 2023, so that's why we have that big decrease last year. We see a little bit more of an increase in 2025, and that's because those charges are based on our 2023 audited actual numbers. Most of our costs for reimbursement are based on people. Our people costs have been going up, so these numbers are going to continue to increase. If you look at software and hardware maintenance, this one always goes up and down a lot, and that's because it's based on what TRB projects are currently forecasted in those years. And for external agency funding, that change in '24 and '25 was due to the $2.5 million that was given to the zoo last year for the elephant barn. So you can also see here, we have listed the amounts by year for TRB, debt service, and our cash-funded CIP projects. These are one-time costs. You can see there are millions of dollars each year, and that CIB and TRB numbers are going to be really important when we look at the next slide for our forecasted operating results. And these are what our results look like right now. If you look at rows 31 through 33, that's aging, highways, and bond and interest, those deficits are planned. So we are trying to strategically draw these funds down across the life of the forecast to meet what we have as their goal fund balance. So that red is actually good, because we're trying to meet a goal by the end of the forecast. If you look at the general fund on row 29, we do have some deficits in '25 through '27. However, if you take out those one-time costs from TRB and CIP, that's rows 25 and 29, those are allowed uses of fund balance, if we took those out, we'd be seeing surpluses in every year. So for example, there's $10.9 million of those costs in 2025, and $14.1 million in 2026. Additionally, we do have some costs in the general fund in '25 and '26 that were previously covered by ARPA, and that's to cover the rough and least and some district court costs. That's about $2.8 million in 2025. So we took those out, even with that $10.9 million from CIP and TRB, we'd have about a million-dollar surplus in 2025. So overall, this is a very positive forecast. Our deficits are all because of one-time allowable costs, or because we're trying to draw down fund balances. And most importantly, last year, we started our forecast with a $4.9 million structural imbalance, where we had more recurring expenses than recurring revenues. Through the '25 budget actions, we got that down to about a million-dollar imbalance. But through this updated forecast, we have eliminated that structural imbalance, based on what we're seeing in our recurring revenues and expenses. So overall, it's much more positive this year. And so here you can see what we expect our ending fund balances for county tax funds to look like. For the general fund, you can see we'll stay well above that 20% of budgeted general fund expenditures on a budgetary basis. And then for the other funds, you can see how they're being drawn down across the forecast, and what their goal fund balance is that we're trying to meet. And then here are our mill levy rates by fund, again, with 28.701 in every year to match our final 2025 mill levy rate. And then for our next steps, I think Tom covered most of these, but we did have our base budgets released last Friday, the 14th. So they have until about mid-March to submit their budget submissions, and then any decision package requests they might have. With the WSU budget simulator, you will see a demo of that simulator at your April 15 staff meeting, and then Dr. Grove will be presenting the results to you at your staff meeting on June 3. So hopefully you can get some good data back early in the process that you can use for 2026 decision-making. We also have, as Tom mentioned, July 9th for the manager's recommended budget and last update. We do have two public hearings currently scheduled. The first is Wednesday, July 30th at 6:00 p.m., and the second is on Wednesday, August 20th at 9:00 a.m., which is also budget adoption, and then our revenue neutral rate resolution adoption as well. I'm going to hand it over to Lindsey, because she's going to talk about some additional considerations.
So I'm going to let Lorian stay there, because I assume there will be some questions here in a bit. So there are a few things that we haven't talked about in this forecast yet, and that includes the service consolidations that we know that are being discussed. So when Lorian said there's no additional programs, there's also no contemplation yet of how that would look, if there would be any initial outlay costs for that, or if there would be any ongoing savings from that. We don't yet have that factored in. So we'll talk about, I think in our next presentation, we'll actually talk about how some of those funding models work. And we do anticipate that depending on which way the Commission goes, that could impact the forecast either positively, or potentially negatively, at least in the initial days of that. So one of the things that had come up also earlier in this budget process is how do we intend to use our fund balance, and how do we intend to, I guess, be efficient with that use? So a lot of what you saw on Lorian's PowerPoint about the general fund fund balance is because we do still have some excess investment income and some excess ARPA replacement revenue that has not yet been taken out of the general fund. And that's totally fine. You hear deficit spending a lot like it's a negative thing. It's not necessarily a negative thing when you have robust fund balances. That's why you have that fund balances, so that you can ease the shock to a budget in any future year for some significant costs. But I did want to talk about, at the end of 2024, you all did approve $17.5 million to go into your CIP fund. Now, of that, we have two projects that we know already are on the radar for use of some of those funds. Obviously, Calm Care Crisis, I don't see Andrew in here yet, but he delivered that fantastic news to you, that the costs were coming in at about $25 million. I'm sure you'll hear an update on that later, too. What was authorized in the bond resolution for that project was $15.9 million. So we're looking at about an $8 million at least gap between what the Commission has already authorized and what we're already planning on in your future bond and interest payments. From this, we will cover that gap with those dollars. And then, as we've talked about, we already have about $13 million in bond proceeds for an administration building that have already been issued, and are ready to be spent at any time. And in fact, we, just a reminder, we are time-bound on that, 36 months from October of last year, to spend 85% of those proceeds. 100% of those have to be spent within five years. But we also know that depending on what option is chosen for an administration building, it's likely going to cost more than that $13 million. And so the additional nine-ish million that's sitting here, that's not already, we think earmarked for Calm Care Crisis, would be available for that administration building. So that's what those dollars are unofficially earmarked for now. The Commission also authorized $9.2 million to be transferred to the Technology and Equipment Reserve Fund. We know that the, as we talked about yesterday, we made the purchase for a significant number of pieces of election equipment. I saw Laura earlier, there she is. And we know that those have an end of life that's coming up in the term of this forecast. I think Lorian referenced that also. We also have grown the size of that fleet through grant funds and additional expenses the last few years, when we had some HAVA funds from the federal government for CARES money. And so also with inflation, we fully expect that the costs to replace election equipment will be more significant than the $6 million that we paid roughly seven years ago. So we have $9.2 million. It has not been officially earmarked by this Commission for that purpose, but that would be our recommendation to you at this point, would be to earmark those funds. And then as we have any surplus in the coming years from one-time revenues of investment income exceeds expectations, which we're hopeful, based on what Brent has told us, that those will be actually low numbers that we're counting on in the forecast, we would want to transfer that and use it to supplement either the TRB projects that you'll see as we go through this budget process, or use it for, I mean, you've already heard about EMS and their anticipated need to increase their fleet. We would like to have some opportunities to use these funds to do that same thing. Another thing that is not in this forecast, but is looming behind us, and I want us to take it very seriously, is this discussion at the federal level to eliminate or reduce federal funds. This Commission operates many programs, particularly through human services and aging, that are tied to those federal dollars. And if those federal dollars should go away or be limited for any reason, we need to make sure, I believe, that we have some kind of contingency plan. So one of the things that you'll likely see in my budget request to you in May is an increase in our contingency, or even the addition of a new contingency, that would give us the opportunity to provide a glide path, either out of those services, or a glide path to figure out alternative revenue streams. So that's not in the forecast. We don't know what's going to happen, but we know what's going to happen. We're likely going to hear all of this by April. So that will be right dead smack in the middle of your budget development process. So while that's not factored in yet, it's a really important consideration. So please keep that in mind. And then, Lorian, can you switch to the next slide for me? Okay, so this is a scary slide, I'm not going to lie. This is, if you look here at row 30, if the state passes its 3% cap, and if we assume that that goes into effect for your 2027 budget, and we assume that the Commission allows a flat mill levy rate through that time, no other changes to the forecast but for that assessed valuation, you can see that across all five of our county property tax-supported funds in row 27, we are well in deficit category, well beyond one-time operations or one-time costs for technology and CIP. So one thing to bear in mind with all of this, then, if that happens, and 3% I think is actually fairly optimistic, I think Commissioner Howell has done a good job of explaining that that's going to be the cap for properties. There will still be some that may be increased to 2% and 1/2%. Those will be allowed to grow that amount. There will still be some that decrease in value. And we know that, as we talked about yesterday with the county stats, and as Mark talked about Wednesday during his presentation, residential is where the bulk, the vast majority of our assessed value comes from. So this is a real concern, I think, for us, because it takes away, I think, a lot of the ability to even reduce the mill levy rate without affecting service. It certainly impinges on any ability to grow services, as we talked about with EMS, without having to pass along maybe some significant user fees. So I just thought that this would be useful. And then I had promised Commissioner Howell yesterday some information, and so I'm going to pass that out real quick. So this very first one, thank you, is going to be, I'm going to bore you to tears for a minute, so bear with me. This is what Lorian has had the joy of filling out under the property tax lid for those five or six years that we saw that the property tax lid was in effect yesterday. This is just for Sedgwick County. And so these are all of the numbers that they want us to take into account. But what I'm going to tell you is, the important part is on page three. So this first sheet that you have, the title says 2025. I'm going to have to put my glasses on. What? Oh, well, so it'll be below line 27. So this is the one that includes public safety. So public safety was one of the exemptions that was permitted under the property tax lid, where you could look at actual law enforcement costs, and you could look at actual EMS costs. You could also look at fire, but obviously, that's a different budget. That's not, that's a city-type thing. This form is used for both. So what you can see is, when we include the sheriff, the district attorney, courts, regional forensic science center, adult corrections, 911, county court, and courthouse police in this computed tax levy, we actually, last year, would have had an additional $12.6 million in property taxes that could have been imposed, where we still would have been under the lid, where you did not have to have a public election, based on all of the factors that were permissible under that old one. Now I have another packet for you, which is the same type of information, but this time we're going to exclude law enforcement, thank you, and EMS from this computation. So we're going to flip back to the third page again, and you're going to see that even under that scenario, if all of the other exceptions were included, the total computed tax levy that was permitted was $201 million. We actually levied $199 million in the 2025 budget, and the additional capacity still would have been $1.6 million. So with the actions that the Commission took last year, even without living under a lid, you still would have been under the lid, and you still would have had $1.6 million in additional capacity. Doesn't mean you had to, but you could have under this computation. So that is the information I wanted to share with you as a part of the forecast presentation, and I think Lorian and I are both very excited to take any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Or discussion that you might have.
Very good. Lorian, thanks for the work you did on this. And I remember, wasn't too long ago, we were talking about some pretty significant structural balances due to some one-time mid-year adjustments we had to make. So appreciate the work that's been done. I just have a couple of questions. Has someone taken notes about what, I don't think we need to answer some of these today. I don't think we need to answer some of these today. I think maybe this is some follow-up discussion, but a couple of things that I'd like to know. Again, you talked about earmarking the 9 million for election equipment. I think that's probably a good idea. But can you give us the timing and the cost of that election equipment? I don't know if we've got any updated cost of what that will be. You're making assumptions that it's going to be higher. I agree with that assumption, but can we get some sort of, maybe not a quote, but an estimate of what's needed and the timing of what's going to be needed so we know what that looks like? The second thing is, can we get a list of those federal grant programs and the costs? Could you give us a list of that?
I would be delighted to. Do you know that we actually produce that every year in your ACFER?
In the what?
The Annual Comprehensive Financial Report.
Oh, yes, yes.
So we are, poor Michelle is actually in the office right this second working on. It's called the SIFA, Schedule of Expenditure. So we will be delighted to get you that list.
Okay, that would help. And then lastly, and this is maybe a little bit of discussion here, but just your opinion. So if we have to live under a 3% cap and the 3% assessed value growth runs us into deficits, so our model is obviously built on something that's going to require grabbing more than 3% assessed value growth every year. 3% doesn't do it. It runs us deficits in the current model. What is the number that keeps us? We obviously know revenue neutral is not an option for such a kind of government because of a variety of reasons. 3% runs us deficits. Is it a 4% number? Is it a 5% number? Like, what's the number for our government?
Well, I think you saw the 5% on the prior, on Lorian's prior slide. You saw that that left us pretty well off. The important thing to remember is all of this compounds, right? So if there's fluctuations from year to year, that can make a significant difference. Right now, what we have forecasted in this one is that you would allow us to capture the 5% in 2026, this upcoming budget, and then the 3% in outer years. If we were to capture more of that this year, that would actually affect those outer years because it would allow greater compounding. I don't know what the perfect number is for you where it balances because the more we get into the outer years, the less certain these projections are. So I'm comfortable living with maybe the 26 through 28 years and talking about that with some clarity. But we haven't added in the EMS asks. I think Lorian will tell you how many, repeat again, how many business needs assessments you got?
We had about 70 of them and 80 positions.
And it totaled how many millions of dollars?
I think it was about 12 million.
So those are things that just for the 2026 budget, people are anticipating bringing to you, and they believe that those are, I mean, it came from a business needs assessment. We know that there's more discussion that needs to be had about 911. We know there's more discussion that needs to be had about EMS. Obviously, the sheriff has needs that he doesn't really get to pick which inmates come into his custody and what their medical issues are or what the cost of food is. So there's a lot of things that are going to drive this conversation that we can speak to, but without raising the mill levy rate, there's no cap that I think we could responsibly advocate for without knowing more about the commission's goals and what services you want to provide and/or reduce.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, that's good. I understand. Very good. Okay, any other questions?
Could we maybe? Could we also get a life expectation on the voting equipment to, you know, $9 million to where we can see how far we think it'll be in the future before we have to replace that again?
I think we certainly can. I think it was every 10 years was, because we have some, and Laura might be able to speak to this with more detail. We also are bound by whatever the Federal Election Commission Office allows us to buy because they certify the equipment that then comes down to the state and how often it has to be. So it's driven by things also beyond our control.
Do you know when we last did it?
2017. Supplemented a few in 2020 during that presidential election when we had additional CARES, HAVA funds, and we had the mega site at the arena. I think we bought another 100, 100.
Good, very good. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Lorian.
I don't really know why I'm moving, other than I guess this is where the clicker is, so this is where I'm going to stand. So what we want to talk about with you real quick is something that we had promised to discuss, if you remember. What? You can't hear me? What? That's crazy. Okay, is this better? Okay. That's really strange. So we had promised when you all talked about MAPD fee increases to come back and kind of talk about how MAPD is funded, but then because we're also talking about some potential consolidation of additional services going forward, we thought it would be useful to talk about a couple of the other models that are currently in use with the City of Wichita for some of our programs. We will be at a very high level for this conversation. Of course, we have in our local agreements and other agreements that are available that we can provide to you if you do decide you want more detail. But we're basically going to talk about these in the order in which they happened. So flood control came first, then MAPD, and then MABCD. And with MABCD, the subject matter expert on the consolidation happens to be sitting directly across from me. So if you do have questions on that, I will certainly be happy to refer you to him. So flood control is, goes by many names. It is the Wichita Valley Center Flood Control Project. It has been known as the big slough, slough? I don't actually know where's Lynn Packer. How do I say that? Slough? Slu? Oh, wow, I wasn't even remotely right. Okay. This is what happens when you read to learn things. You don't get a pronunciation guide. So it started, I guess the discussion started back in like the 1930s because of some flooding. It took decades for folks to get on board with it, and the project actually started in 1950, concluded in 1959, and that is basically ever since then, the city and the county and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers have been, I guess, working together whether they want to or not to ensure that this levy remains accredited and stays in good shape. So we, as Sedgwick County, actually have an intergovernmental services agreement that you all enter into each year with the City of Wichita to provide flood control operations and then also to provide half of the funding for the capital improvement projects that are done each year. And so for 2025, your budget includes 1.6 million for the operations. So that's the people cost that's paid by the City of Wichita. We pay it as a contract from our budget to them. And then your capital improvement program that you adopted last year includes $760,000 that is paid to the city for this particular flood control project. And what it says in the intergovernmental services agreement, the actual language is the city and county share equally the funding responsibility. So this is all paid through your county general fund. Now, there are years where we pay that funding over. This is the City of Wichita's budget for flood control. There are years where we pay too much based on their operations and they underspend their budget, much like Lorian talked about. We had how many tens of million dollars of unspent budget authority last year? 80 million? We had $80 million in our budget. They also have money in their budget that they don't spend. It's just budget authority, sir. Don't get excited, Chairman. So when that happens, they cut a check back to us in the amount of half of what is what we have paid them that they have not spent. So you can see what their budget looks like on the city side, and it actually shows you through 2028 what is projected. On the county side, this is how it looks for us to pay it to them. You can see that there is funding to, in the contractual line, that represents what is paid for the operations portion. When we adopt a budget, we adopt a budget with an amount in capital improvements, but then through the course of the year, and you'll see this in many places, it goes from capital improvements to transfers because we move it to the capital improvement fund and pay it from there. What you can see for 2022 actuals is that for the prior year in 2021, we overpaid them. They actually didn't spend $320,000 of their budget. So we got half of that back. So when you see revenues for flood control, you'll also see it in MAPD. It's because we paid them as we were supposed to, the full amount of what was expected. They didn't spend it. There's an audit that's provided back to us that then gives us the funding back. So it's not that they're charging fees and we're getting any portion of that. This program is not generating revenue because of the county. This is simply just the money that we didn't spend that comes back into your county general fund. So any questions about flood control before we move to MAPD? Oh, Commissioner Meister?
Couple of questions or comments. So this, it's been going on so long, it just kind of, in my opinion, it just goes on. It's just something we have to do. Have we, Tom, should we talk to our federal lobbyists to see? Have we looked at grants? Because this is a big project that was federally funded originally. So A.
I'm not aware of any, but I'm going to look at Lynn. Do you know if the city has pursued grants for any of this ever?
Yeah, could we put that on our to-do list to just look up if grants are available?
Sure.
And other thing, should we talk, let's talk to Jim to see if there's some federal help we could do at the lobbying level. And then my question, Tom, you can respond, but on your previous slide, do we spend a million and a half in, or a million four in salaries and benefits on the big ditch? Whose employees are they?
City of Wichita's. This is the City of Wichita budget page.
They're the administrator, I mean, the City of Wichita workers that we pay. And to your, I'm looking at Lynn, too. I don't ever remember historically, we've talked to Davenport about grant funding or any other, but we surely could. Talk to Jim about it.
He'd probably be responsible for us to at least check, kick the tires on it.
We can kick the tires.
I just didn't realize there was that big a number for salaries and benefits on this, plus contractuals. That's a lot of money on.
So, I mean, I'm going to say what Pete's not saying, like, a lot of damn money. Like, is that to mow the big ditch and to do, like, what's happening for 1.4 million?
I believe this is the maintenance of the big ditch, but I'm going to see if Lynn can maybe come down here to the podium and speak to that while I go get coffee.
Go to the next slide. Yeah, short story, it's a lot of money, without a doubt. I do know that Public Works over at the city is similar at operating the way we do, looking for grants. We're always looking for opportunities to save money where we can grab grants. The toughest portion of this, for the largest portion, it's operations-oriented, so it's continual year after year. There are not many grants out there that are focused on operations. They're more project-based. So however, we're always open. We're always looking at that. They, as well as us, are tuned in to FHWA and what's being offered through the federal highways. However, I haven't had a conversation with the current director over at flood control about this specific topic, so that's something we can't talk about. It's kind of, that's continuing.
Well, Lynn, if you could get some, just an idea, I don't, I'm not asking for an itemized breakdown, but I am kind of curious what goes into that operations budget. Could you also give an indication? I've heard some rumblings about what happens if we were to fail an audit for the levy, the big ditch levy and what that looks like. What is, what does the community need to know that if we don't maintain this and this doesn't pass an audit, what is the result to the community?
First, the biggest thing that's going to be noticed is insurance cost for homeowners is going to skyrocket because it is no longer a certified levy. Therefore, basically in the eyes of the insurance world, as well as Army Corps of Engineers, it's subject to immediate failure. Therefore, they basically look at it as if it's not there. It can't be counted on. Therefore, you will see a huge increase for thousands of homeowners with, that have never had such insurance rates will suddenly jump up.
Okay, that's helpful. It's a big deal.
I do, I can answer your initial question about what goes into that 1.254 number. So a couple of things to keep in mind. Public Works in 2025 and 2026 was allotted through discussions with, they were basically granted an additional raise above and beyond what the city received overall. So in 2025 and 2026, they will receive, have received already 8.5%. They will get another 8.5% next year for a total of 17% increase in Public Works pay. That is something that I am going to come around and talk to each of you about here soon because we were just at a point where we were caught up to them with pay and they, their union basically took care of that real quick and made sure that all their operators are, will be 17% above what we're paying by 2026. Also, that is include, that number includes every phone line, every computer, every, their overhead for their vehicle and maintenance. They operate a little differently than us, and I think Tom can speak to this. With MABCD, our code enforcement and central inspection collided. When they merged together, we learned a lot about how the city operates and the differences in overhead that's assigned between the city and county. And so there's a lot of things in there that we don't normally include in our overhead that is captured in that. So it's not only just the salaries, but it's all, I mean, every, they include every pen and paper and pencil they have, and we split that evenly with them.
As we discussed city and county consolidation, I just want to bring up, a couple of years ago, we had the BRECC project out there where the city and the county were both going to make allocations, and I think we dissolved that action. I don't know if there's any opportunity to pick that up in the future or what did we do with that allocation? What did the county do with that allocation for the money?
Tell me, ask me the question again.
It's a BRECC project. It was about 600 acres out west. It was going to take it out of the flood plain and do a lot for the cap scan. And it was a city-county where we both put together contributions, and I think we got denied, and rather than go try it again, we pulled back. I was just curious what we did with that allocation?
Yeah, go ahead, then.
So that allocation was in our budget, pushed out to about 2029 as of last year. And then after, for the 2025 budget, we removed it, just noting that the city had indicated that they were no longer going to continue to go after a BRECC grant, that we're going to try different avenues. So it was temporarily suspended at the time.
But it's still out there.
It's still out there. I will note the improvements, that some of the improvements that were going to be done with that project are actually part of the Northwest Expressway project. So they kind of bleed over each other, and I have suggested with Gary Jansen over at Public Works at the city that we may want to look at, you know, incorporating those two into a single project, the Northwest Expressway project, so it can handle both and move forward. And potentially by doing that, we may look better for our grant process.
Yeah, I'd love to have a further discussion with that, but I wouldn't want to wait for that flood control until we get to Northwest Expressway completed.
Okay, we will move to the one that started this whole conversation, planning. So MAPD is actually the only one that I can find we have an official in our local agreement on. But what we talk about with this one is that it's also pretty entrenched at this point. So you can see this was created by a joint city ordinance county resolution in 1973. So you can see this was created by a joint city ordinance-county resolution in 1973. That was then approved by the Attorney General's Office. The interlocal agreement most recently was approved by the Attorney General's Office and filed with our Register of Deeds Office in 2016. So it pretty formally codifies the operations of the MAPD as well as the MAPC. So the director in this agreement is specifically said that they are jointly appointed by the city and county managers, and that director is responsible for submitting a budget to the city and county manager each year for them to then present to you all the governing bodies through a budget process. And what it states in that interlocal agreement is that each will appropriate an amount equal to 50% of an agreed-upon budget. And then we turn around and make those payments to the city in quarterly installments. So similarly to flood control and dissimilarly to MABCD, these are, it is always intended that these employees will remain employees of the City of Wichita. The city is the administrator. That means that they pay all the people, they buy all the stuff, they do all of the day-to-day work, and then we get a copy of an audit each year so that we can see what their fees were and what all of those costs looked like. And then, just like you saw with flood control, those costs, if they are not all spent, if the revenue we provide the city is not all spent, maybe they bring in more revenues than they anticipate, or they have salary savings, which has been the case the last several years, then those dollars are refunded 50/50 to each governing body. So again, this is what the city's budget looks like. And this is for their planning. You can see this is what has been adopted for 2024 and 2025 on the city side, what they are anticipating bringing in from the county. But you can see a significant portion of that also comes from licenses and permits and charges for service. So overall, their 2025 budget is 2.8 million, and you can see that they plan in budget for an operating margin of $0. So again, this is the city's budget. You can see then that they plan to spend salaries and benefits, contracts, commodities and others, just like with flood control. And Lynn is right, there are a lot of costs that are baked into the city's budget for IT charges and things like that, that we do not see similarly on the county side. So again, on a county side, this is how it looks for us because it's a contractual arrangement. We just pay a dollar amount to the City of Wichita. And you can see here that in both of the prior actual years displayed in this most recent 2025 adopted budget, we actually were refunded some dollars in each of those years that just went back into the general fund. So what questions can we answer in terms of how MAPD is structured?
Questions on this one?
To MABCD. Oh, Commissioner Howell.
So just want to be clear, so in this last slide, the charges for intergovernmental, half of those came from the county, from our general fund?
Were the intergovernmental.
So all of that came from the county?
I'm sorry?
I thought, based on the first slide on this part of this department, 50% came from the county, so intergovernmental, half those numbers came from the county?
So the subsidy, the subsidy comes from the county. So all of this in intergovernmental is our subsidy to them.
So we're paying nearly a million dollars for planning?
Correct.
And then we get a small amount back the last couple of years?
Right.
Okay.
The charges, so the charges for service are charged by the City of Wichita and brought in. We, the way the city does it is they plan for a certain amount of charges for service to come in each year, and then they split the difference between the city and county for what they think it will actually cost to operate the department. So that's why if they wind up getting more money in charges for service, they needed less of our subsidy, and so they pay it back to us, if that makes any sense.
But there's still a net cost to the county of...
Oh, yes, you can, so let's, this is our county budget book, and let's look at 2022 actual. We actually paid out 692,000 in that year, but based on 2021 actuals, we received 127,000 back. So that would have been a net operating subsidy from Sedgwick County to the City of Wichita for planning purposes of what, 555,000, 65?
I guess I'm wondering why we don't adjust our fees there to reduce the general budget?
And I think that's why MAPD came and talked to you all earlier this year. They had a plant, they had a very active worksheet.
I remember that now.
And so, yeah, it was, right now, we're capturing about 20% of cost recovery. They had different options that would increase that up to 30%.
So I guess the other question is, I think having these, you know, co-located has been a benefit to everyone who uses those services. I'm wondering, in terms of the efficiency, is this less expensive than it would be had this not been co-located the way that it currently is?
I have never done that analysis, so I do not know.
We not have someone do some kind of an efficiency and a, you know, one of the arguments for functional consolidation has to be a combination of less cost and better services, if you will. And I think better services is co-location, that is better. The question is the less cost, and I don't know if this is actually more efficient, I don't know. Also, since we're not really managing this office, we don't really, we're kind of hands-off. We're trying to the city to do that. And I guess I'd like to know, you know, how do we know they're actually being efficient with the dollars? This is a great, you know, this is one of our textbook examples on successful functional consolidation. I'd like to have some analysis of this and find out, you know, how well is it working in that regard? We ought to understand that more deeply. So anyway, projected, you're showing here the same cost going out, even though we have the fees. I guess we addressed the fees with that presentation you talked about earlier.
Right, and I don't believe this commission hasn't yet approved that.
Pardon me?
This commission hasn't yet approved that fee adjustment.
Okay.
And if we didn't have the fees, then our general fund output would be greater. I mean, that's why the fees are really critical.
Right, I agree, but I just want to make sure the projection anticipates, if you will, action by the commissioner, or what would these numbers be if we actually do act on that?
Well, and I think so the city's costs will continue to increase. We would expect maybe, I would say, up to no more than $50,000 of an offset in a year when taking into account their salary increases, plus about $100,000 of additional costs. But I would, to Scott Waddle's credit, he does come in each year and present during a budget hearing his budget requests and talks about the joint city-county costs, what he's doing. He has to bring the same decision packages that he takes to the city, to Sedgwick County. So I do want to give some credit under this operation. It's kind of a joint funding agreement. So if we, I think we have the latitude to dig in and do that efficiency evaluation, if we would like to do that.
And again, I'm also just wondering one other thing, you know, since this was a functional consolidated office, why is it that the city is using city employees and city management, if you will, to manage the office? And again, they're providing planning services to people outside the city. Is there any challenge that might be, you know, that exists as a consequence of people who are...
I'm calling Justin Waggoner.
...centric, but they're talking about stuff outside the city of Wichita?
Commissioner Howell, Justin Waggoner, County Counselor. A couple of different things on that. First is, I'm not sure, I think it was, as Lindsay mentioned, 1973. I'm not exactly sure what the rationale was back then, but I think at that point, the city became essentially the administrator of the MAPD and the MAPC. I do think the county has essentially, they're under, when you have it in our local agreement under state law, there has to be one party that's the administrator unless you create a new entity. So I presume there was some thought process back then it had to be somebody, and it was the city. I'm not concerned, I have legal concerns that the city staff is managing this. There's a state law that says if you have, under KSA 12741 et cetera, that says if you have a joint planning commission, a joint planning department, you can do that. And then if you do that, you're supposed to have a true interlocal agreement, which we have now as of 2016. And as part of that, you're supposed to have someone be an administrator. So city staff is acting under the authority granted by the Board of County Commissioners on these zoning cases under valid state law.
And I'm sure probably 90% of the cases are inside the city anyway, but there are some that aren't. I guess I just, it just seems, again, I think it's fine to have one government do that service for, on behalf of both governments, that makes a lot of sense, I agree with that entirely. I'm just wondering about the thought that city management, city employees are providing a service to planning projects that are far outside the city limits of Wichita, and if there's any representation issues that comes from that. It's just an interesting question to me. Thank you.
I think it's, I think it's whatever the governing bodies decide. And we have many examples where, I mean, we had City of Wichita Environmental Health Issues doing work in the county, we have the sheriff doing work in the city in WPD. We have all kinds of arrangements where we're crossing back and forth between borders. It's whatever the governing bodies from both sides by resolution or law allow us to do, so.
On the fees, Scott Waddle came and presented, I think it was a couple of months ago, with a request, I think it was 8% increase on the fees, if I remember right, was that correct?
I think he was angling for 10.
Eight to 10, that's right. And the reason why we punted and asked for more time is because we got some significant pushback, and we had WABA, Wichita Area Builders Association, ask us to hold back so they can talk to their membership. We need to probably circle back up. If we're looking at some pressure on budgets, we need to circle back up and see if we can get less general fund dollars subsidizing. But it will be politically contentious, particularly with the development community, but I think we need to... Well, it'd be nice if the city would go first. Have they done this?
Tonya, do you know? I think they have.
Has the city had the conversation with planning?
They have not, okay, I lied, never mind.
And they voted to?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
I don't believe they voted for it yet. Scott, Scott is trying to time this.
Well, why don't Scott have the city, which uses 80% of the services, go first, and then we'll go second?
Well, yeah, it's coming back again. Scott hasn't put it away, the, I think he's working with WABA. I think there is a, what was he, after 10 or 20%? It was, to totally get away from subsidy of this, it would require...
I think it was 10%, right?
Yeah.
It was 10%. My big question is, I just, I think that we need to probably move this thing forward, so. And the reason why, just to be frank, the reason why we didn't previously was kind of political. So we need to probably just push through this and have a decision made on where we're at. We're subsidizing with property tax dollars, so we need to figure out a way.
Okay.
It is, it's just true general fund cash.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, yeah, it is. Okay, thanks, Lindsay, go ahead.
Okay, so next, and I think we've got, how much more left on time, Lori, on this one? Okay, so I'll talk fast. So again, we have the subject matter expert sitting at your table, so I'm not going to pretend to be the expert. But from a funding perspective, the work did begin in 2011 to merge the city's Office of Code Inspection and Sedgwick County's Code Enforcement together. A joint director was hired in November of 2012, Mr. Tom Stoltz. The county was established as the managing partner for this arrangement. And unlike the others that we've talked about, because there are many city employees who work in this function, it was decided that those employees would remain city employees until the position was vacated. At that time, the position would move from the city's staffing table to the Sedgwick County staffing table, and then any new hire would become a county employee at that time. So we knew, and I read some comments from Tom and some emails the other day, that this would be potentially a multi-generational transition just because of how long some of these employees can stay in these positions. Now, the one exception to this is neighborhood inspection. Neighborhood inspection is intended to remain a city function in perpetuity, but it is funded with some portion of MABCD revenues. However, because of prior litigation, that is capped at 20% of code enforcement expenses, though they have exceeded that in recent years, and that's one of the points of conversation that we've been having. WABA has been very patient with that and understands the situation, particularly as the city's pay pool has outpaced the county's pay pool, which creates some tensions in terms of just that proportion of overall expenses. So in 2017, we entered a funding agreement that we are still living under, where we reimbursed the city for actual costs on a quarterly basis, and we agreed to maintain their fund balance at 1.25 million because we are reimbursing. This means that they have cash on hand to always upfront those expenses until we can reimburse them after the fact. Now, one thing that has caused us much frustration is that that agreement was extended for two years through 2021, and it has since expired. And we have had no success in getting the city to the table to extend that agreement. We do have some significant changes that we have proposed that we think provide better financial protections to the county, and we just have not gotten anywhere. So this is one thing where we talk about consolidation that is of concern to me is we have a current, very successful in the community consolidation where our partnership is not being shown at its best. So I think this needs to be a strong point of bargaining on behalf of the commission with discussion of taking on any additional consolidation, is we need to work through the one. We've got, and I don't, Justin in particular greatly would desire this to actually be that interlocal agreement because right now, either party can exit the agreement with appropriate notice to the other. An interlocal agreement gives us greater security in that arrangement and structures that a little more efficiently. One thing that is pretty exciting is because there is, well, exciting to me, not exciting to you. Let me clarify that. The state did allow us to create this as its own separate fund before it had to live in the County General Fund, and that made it very, very hard to be able to show the builders and the folks in the community what the revenues were coming into this program and what the expenses were that were going out. State legislation allowed us to create their own fund, we're treating it as an enterprise fund. And so now, in your monthly, in your quarterly financial reports, anyone can see the actual performance of this program. And you can see what the fund balance is, folks can see what the planned expenses are. For example, they're planning to replace their software this year because it's on the county side, we'll be going through that RFP process. But I know that's a concern with cities, so that'll be a part of the conversation too, is making sure that's accessible. So because this is a county-managed fund, I wanted to show you the county budget page first. And I wanted to show you actually our budgetary account page. This is, if you get into your most recent quarterly financial report that was produced at the end of 2024, you can see exactly how much money is sitting in that fund today. Last year, they actually had a net change in fund balance of about 1.2 million, so they sit at 9.3 million today, which is just about their total budget. So they're 100% funded right now through their fund balance, which is fantastic because this is an enterprise fund. We want it to survive on itself, we want it not to have any subsidy. And right now, we can show there is no subsidy. Now, on the city side, I've got two slides for the city's budget. This is the building, safety and construction enforcement portion only. So this is what we are reimbursing based on. Plus, just for those components, plus neighborhood inspections. This is the portion of neighborhood inspections that is also funded from MABCD revenues. So you can see what that looks like. So you can see their total budget for neighborhood inspections is the 1.4 million, and that's what's funded from the MABCD side. There's also general fund, city general fund, for a neighborhood inspection that's not shown here.
Just to comment on the 20% funding that the city gets from this operation, is that was court-driven. The city was actually sued in the 1990s over basically taking the builders' money and using it for purposes other than building and construction. So that lawsuit is where the 20% cap and WABA agreed to it. The 20% cap for neighborhood inspections within MABCD was allowed. When we did the merger, county side, Ron Holt worked very hard to try to segregate the neighborhood inspections away from the building and construction merger and was not successful. merger and was not successful. So it's still part of Chris's shop today. But the 20% allocation from the building fund is court-driven, so we don't have a lot of discretion there moving forward. So I just want to make sure that you knew that we did not, we couldn't necessarily change that number even if we wanted to. And the only other thing, are you done, Lindsay?
I'm done.
The only other thing I'll, I'll mention, and it goes, it goes to this lack of agreement with the city on MABCD, and we have, and everybody at, us three have worked on this. I know Lori had spent a lot of time on this as well. This has got to get resolved. No matter what we do in the future, and if, if this commission sees functional consolidations, we're all part of the team on that. But there needs to be intergovernmental agreements on every single one of these. And I think that's where Justin's at, too. Operationally, administratively, city's slightly different than the county, and the beauty of the intergovernmental agreement is it brings clarity to all that and accountability, so we understand who's showing what and what expenses go forward. And that's, and that's critical to have. So either by joint ordinance and resolution or by intergovernmental service, that's the agreement. So parks, for example, if we're going to do something with parks, there needs to be an intergovernmental relationship there, an agreement signed between both entities. And the four things we always have to look at going into consolidations, once the commission decides this is the way forward, is you look at people, facility, fleet, and IT. When we did MABCD merger, we did not do a very good job of that. We merged, and then we went in and looked at people, and we looked at cost differences between staffing and the pay differences between the city and the county. That's a reality. We have to look at that. We did not involve finance to the table on that. We did not involve IT to the table on that. And to this day, we struggle with fleet management. So those things have to be looked at from the get-go, and we should have those kinds of decisions made before we do the merger, not after we do the merger. So we will work with the city on that. I, we are going to get this agreement done with MABCD. I don't know how we move forward with anything else until we get that done, that this has to happen, so.
Yeah, appreciate that, Tom. I would agree before any other discussions really moved that this has to get fixed. I, I had mentioned, when you made me aware of this, I had made mention to the mayor in our meeting, she had no idea that any of these things, these interlocal agreements weren't signed. So I guess the question is, how do you want us to handle this? If it's a staff-generated thing, it hasn't produced a whole lot of success in getting it done. If you want us to get it done with the electeds between the county and the city, I, I can assure you that it'll get done quick.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get it. Let's, I talked with Mr. Layton, actually yesterday at the chamber event. We're going to, we're going to staff this, because we have three things we're, we're staffing. We fix MABCD, get the interlocal, I mean, it's, it's fixed. Chris is running a great operation over there right now. The people, the consumers in the public like it. The consumers in the public like MAPD. They like a unified, one set of rules that manage, so that's working. We'll work out the technicalities of the agreement behind the scenes. The, the park issue, we're going to talk about, and even the opioid, the presentation that you all got, the opioid money dispersion, there's staff discussions that have to happen on that as well. So we have three balls juggling in the air right now, and we'll staff it, Chairman. I'll keep the commission aware of where we're at, and I'm confident we can get there with agreements on this.
One more thing. I don't think this is the funding part of this agreement, but there was another aspect of this agreement that was discovered to be flawed, and it took, I think the county led on this, and we've provided, if you will, a solution to the problem. I don't remember, it was when Councilor Yost was here, and it was Mayor Longwell at the time, and we provided, if you will, a solution to the problem. And, and after we, the commission basically approved it, sent it across the street, they sat on that for a couple of years. I don't remember the details now exactly what happened, but I don't know what happened, but technically, this needed to go before the state of Kansas for approval or something. And the original agreement with them was flawed in some way. We tried to fix that. You remember that, Mr. Justin?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Howell. I, I think what you're referring to is probably the MAPD, MAPC interlocal agreement, because that was entered into under Yost's county counselor, and that did take some work, and that, that was required by statute. So I think that's the agreement you're thinking of.
But the, the original agreement then, with them, was flawed in some way. We, we found the problem, fixed it, and then when we sent it across the street, it took, I think, two or maybe even two years or longer to get the city to actually just finish up agreeing to that agreement before we could send it to the state for reapproval.
You're correct. And they, they're, actually, what was flawed, it goes back a really long time, it was back into the 1980s. They tried to, they sent an interlocal agreement that both governing bodies met in an en banc meeting, approved, sent to the Attorney General's office, and for reasons that are not clear to me, because I haven't ever seen anything in writing from the AG's office in the 1980s, they declined to approve that agreement, which is a requirement under getting an interlocal agreement approved.
And I only bring this up because, and again, we're all trying to do what's right for the people. But when we have something that's really, should be non-controversial at that, at that point, and should just move forward, even that very final step took, I think, over a couple of years. We, we were not able, we're not able to resolve that. I don't really know what the problem was on, on the city's side, but there was a reluctance to agree. And we were in a very, I think legally vulnerable position, because it had to go to the state for approval, and we couldn't get that document to the state, because Wichita was dragging their feet on this thing.
And I will say that I think that agreement that was entered into really just enshrined what we'd already been doing for decades with the Metropolitan Area Planning Department, Metropolitan Area Planning Commission. And so I, I think it's continued. I don't think the users would notice any difference since 2016. It was just kind of dotting the i's and crossing the t's under state law.
I just wanted to bring it up, because I think history is important. We're talking about more functional consolidation. You know, we, we've seen what they did with records management, we saw what they did with radios. Now, last week, they had a celebration about something they're doing, I think, which should have involved the county. And I think that, you know, we have opportunities to functionally consolidate, but there, when, when given the opportunity, they're demonstrating maybe an interest not to necessarily do that. And now they're also critical of 911 and EMS, and to the point that they're beginning to, I think, there's, there's an effort to somehow duplicate existing services, which is going the other way. So we want to be very careful as we talk about these things, that I think that, again, functional consolidation does provide great opportunities, but it does require both parties to want to do that. I don't think they're the problem. I just think we, we have challenges necessarily getting them to, to agree with what, direction that things are supposedly heading. Thank you.
I think that, I think that any discussion, and I'll use MABCD as an example, we need to be more tenacious on this. I, I think we need to insist upon agreements. We have a number of things we worked together that didn't make Lindsay's slide. We have an EMCU partnership where we have sheriff and PD working together. We have SWAT teams we share. We have a, a law enforcement training entity that we share. So we have, these organically happen, because they're just good for the community. I think the onus is on us to make sure that as we work through these agreements, that there is, first of all, I think it politically has to be pushed. I think both sides have to say, both elected bodies have to say, let's do this. And there has to be unity in that. And then the staff has to be tenacious to make sure that these agreements, the legal agreements and the, and the agreements administratively are done. So I think we both bear a burden on this as, as we move forward, so.
Okay, up next, CIP updates with Tanya Cole and Andrew Dilts. Ready, commissioners?
Go ahead. Okay. Thank you for the introduction, Lindsay. Again, Andrew Dilts and myself, Tanya Cole, are here this morning to give facility CIP updates. I do just want to give a little bit of clarification on the CIP updates. What you'll be hearing this morning are more of the big space planning updates. So we're going to update you on seven projects, and that'll be the Regional Forensic Science Center expansion remodel, the elections office at Comatera Building, the main courthouse, courtroom's annex, juvenile services building, emergency preparedness center, and then two new CIP updates, and that'll be the comm care complex, and then the health department space merged to KU Medical Center. If we have this, we want to provide this to you, and that is the background and need, the cost, the timeline, and the status. So Andrew and I will be going back and forth on these particular updates.
We do have department heads here, if we have specific questions that Tanya and I cannot answer. Okay, forensic science. This is a DNA lab building, so a little backstory on this one. In 2003, we had an approved CIP for DNA lab addition for just over $7 million. We, we tried to purchase adjacent property to forensic science, which we were unable to do. Our target square foot for the addition was 8,700, and without the purchase of the adjacent property, we went back and tried to look at what size of building we could put on county-owned property, and it was basically reduced down to 7,000 square feet. And it, we omitted the changing room, laundry room, conference rooms, and deducted the kitchen size and removed some lab, lab hoods to make that achievable, which was not something that we wanted to move forward with. The expansion for the DNA lab is due to increased demand for lab services and advancements in science and challenges in preventing DNA contamination. By not expanding, we have an increase of case backlog, and we could develop quality control issues. We're also limited in the ability to leverage technology advancements. New for 2026 is a CIP request that will construct a facility on adjacent county-owned property. The preliminary estimate is just over $19 million and includes an allowance for remodeling the existing forensic science building. The new building will include space for DNA, firearms, drug ID, fire debris laboratories, allowing the existing DNA lab to be repurposed for toxology, medical investigations, and autopsies. The new building will modernize DNA workflow, accommodate robotics, and improve casework analysis. The remodel will address space and ventilation issues in the toxicology section and storage limitations, toxicology, and the morgue. When we were looking at this addition, we wanted to project 20-plus years on what forensic science would need. So currently, they have 43 FTEs. They're projected to grow to 40, 50 to 60 over the next 10 to 20 years. The existing building that they are in now, the electrical and data capacity is maxed out. And our new addition, we do have, we did include backup generators and UPS for everything that's critical over there. In our square footage on this project, as well as all the projects, we include common spaces like the janitor closets, mechanical rooms, corridors, all of that is included in the circulation factor. We've also allowed for a parking space for a golf cart-sized vehicle to transport evidence back and forth, and we have a small garage with parking and an unloading space at the new building. Forensic Science is located, the, the blue section there, that's the proposed of the new addition. That is on the East Ninth Street Health Department property. You can see that it's, it's basically building it in the parking lot there, the building, East Ninth Health is in the building to the south. Forensic Science is basically catty corner to the top left. You can see their parking lot and their building up there. And I will hand it over to Shelley, who has a few things to add.
Good morning. Shelley Stedman, Director of the Regional Forensic Science Center. And there were some key points that Assistant County Manager Leeds wanted me to bring to you today. While you were breaking, I littered your work area with some propaganda. I'm going to start with the bottom slide on the front page. I've got three slides that talk about the current conditions. The first is the population distribution. About 18% of Kansas population is in Sedgwick County. That population is served by the Regional Forensic Science Center, by our crime lab and our coroner services. About 21% of Kansas population is in Johnson County, served by the Johnson County Crime Lab and their coroner services, which are separate entities. And then the remaining 61% of the state is served by the KBI, by their crime lab. They do not provide coroner services. The next condition I want to discuss is the distribution of crime, because it does not match the distribution of population across our state. About 30% of the Part I crimes happen in Sedgwick County, and 40% of the violent crime happen in Sedgwick County. So while we're 18% of the population, 40% of the violent crime happens here. The slide at the bottom of page two talks about the final condition that I want to discuss, which is the distribution of space. And so if you just dropped in to see the condition, your condition is in, well, here it is. Johnson County Crime Lab and their medical examiner's office has about 95,000 square feet of space for the services that they provide. The KBI, in their combined space on the Washburn campus and their Great Bend, is over 117,000 square feet of space, and that doesn't count their small footprint in Yandotte County. And in Sedgwick County, we have just less than 32,000 square feet of space for all of the services that we provide. That's less square feet than the medical examiner's office alone in Johnson County, and they don't really even provide their own in-house toxicology analysis. So what that comes down to is you have a laboratory about a third the size, handling four times the volume of violent crime evidence in the state of Kansas. And the other things that Rusty wanted me to talk about is that this didn't start in 2023. We started working on this CIP in 2014, when I was working with the former director, and we started out with an architectural design that was two stories, because that's what would fit on the land that we currently own, adjacent to our existing facility. That design never really got any legs, and when we revisited in 2020, we went with a single-level design. And why we focused on the DNA lab, back in 2014, we recognized that a test-all legislation was coming our way, but more importantly than that, DNA has experienced the most technology difference since our original facility was built in 1995. When I started there in 1997, we tested blood stains the size of dimes. Now I can get a DNA profile off something that you touched. And when he's talking about the quality control, that requires special air handling and all types of infrastructure that our current facility cannot accommodate. So we're looking to build those into the new design. In 2020, we worked on some cost revisions that became stable in 2021, revisited the CIP in '22 and '23, and finally got approved for the 2024 budget. And I think Andrew has explained her struggles since that point forward. And then if you just look at the back page of the handout, the top is actually a photograph of what our building looks like. If you view it looking towards the northwest, that'd be the parking lot you park if you came to visit us at the reception area. And so if you just did a 180 turn, you can see the parking lot there behind the health department where they have all their storage containers. And that bottom actually shows you, that bottom image actually shows you the square footage of our existing legacy building of 24,000 square feet, our annex, which was added in 2010, which is 7,500 additional feet. And we are planning for that existing facility to be remodeled to accommodate autopsy services, the morgue, medical investigations. It will continue to serve for the toxicology laboratory and our administrative operations, as well as the transcriptionists that support our pathology division. The new facility would consist of the forensic laboratories, biology and DNA, drug ID, firearms, fire debris, and all of our evidence receiving would be directed to that, including our quality assurance section that oversees evidence, and our classroom, as all our staff can no longer gather in the classroom we have, and conference rooms, since our conference rooms in the legacy building have now been converted to office space. And we need conference rooms, because a lot more meetings now are taking place electronically, using Zoom, WebEx, and other apps like that. And so that's all I have. I'm here for questions before he moves on to the next project.
Oh, go ahead, Commissioner Bluebaum.
Thank you very much, and thanks for the tour here a couple of weeks ago. Would you, and you may have mentioned this, but what kind of revenue do we have coming in? Specifically, I'm trying to, other police entities and stuff, are we charging them fees or anything for toxicology or anything like that? Just curious what kind of revenue we bring in?
So we are a regional forensic science center, and most of our revenue would be the autopsy services that we provide to the contiguous counties, or let's say somebody from western Kansas has life watched to Wesley and dies here. We would probably perform that autopsy. And that can range from half a million to three-quarters of a million dollars a year. And that money was generally, it goes back into the general fund. It's not revenue to the Regional Forensic Science Center for us to use directly.
So are any of the local policing entities, are, are they charged anything for toxicology?
So are any of the local policing entities, are they charged anything for toxicology?
None of them in Sedgwick County are charged, and because the other police departments can use the KBI for free, they generally will submit their evidence to the KBI unless there's a backlog there. We do get some drug cases from Mulvane, because they're on the line, and it's just easier to actually, probably cheaper for them to pay for us to test their cases than it is to drive the Great Bend in back.
Okay, thank you. Andrew, could you go back? Sorry, I'm not seeing where this adjacent land is on this map here. I think you had it in the slide. Is it the parking lot across the street? Is that what we're? It's to the north, okay.
This right here is forensic science. There's an addition here, so this land we own for forensic science today.
Okay, so just...
This is the East Ninth Health Department. Here's the building. Here's the parking lot to the north. So we would be building in the East Ninth Health Department parking lot, basically a twenty-five thousand square foot building for forensic science.
Andrew, can you show us where the original plan? We were going to try to acquire private property.
The houses? Yes. The original plan, we were going to build, so we own this vacant lot here. We're going to build on this vacant lot with an addition here. There's an alley that runs with sewer easements and electrical all the way through here, so we could never really connect across here. So we're going to tie into the existing building here, build here. We're going to buy this property here, which is a residential home, but we were unable to buy that property. And so by scaling back the addition, we scaled back to seven thousand square feet.
Does it, and we are certain we can't buy that property. We've tried, I remember these discussions when I first got on the commission. There's not an offer, there's not, that would allow us to have...
We approached the owner of the property multiple times and even tried to just have a sit-down to negotiate and talk, and...
We'd have had to condemn it. I mean, we'd have had to take it, and I think that we didn't want to do that. Okay. Very good. And is it bond-funded, you're imagining, or bond funding?
So the original seven-point-seven million, I think, is what Andrew showed with that original, or seven-point-one million is what had been approved for bond funding and a project authorization. Now that this cost increase is included for the additional portion, we would have, we're going to have to come through another CIP process to you for that, that has not yet been approved by the commission. I think that's why you're talking about it today. And so we don't yet have a funding mechanism for that additional cost. But yes, as Tom and I were just talking now, what we would probably do is, the current forecast anticipates doing a second issuance for the admin building in an equal amount to the first, so that we would have a total of twenty-seven million. Now knowing that that is likely not a direction that this commission wants to go, to bond fund the second half of that, we would probably shift that bond funding from an admin building to this cost difference here. There likely would not be an impact to your financial forecast because of that, assuming all of those pieces fall in the way I just described. And that's a lot of assumptions.
And we do have this seven million already approved, so that would free up that.
I just want to add briefly, and Dr. Stedman can speak to this. The original project that started in 2014 was for DNA only. We tried to refresh that in 2020, starting in 2020, as a DNA only. And we tried to move forward with that, but then when we couldn't, talking with Dr. Stedman and realizing the needs across the entire operation, the district coroner's office, as well as the forensic labs, is where this design comes in, because going back, being unable to purchase that piece of ground probably was not the worst thing if we were going to prepare for the future, because going back and evaluating the needs of the entire center and not just that DNA, which is what the focus was in 2014, the needs are much greater as far as square footage. The district coroner's office has not expanded in decades. Equipment is not modernized. Refrigeration needs to be upgraded. And so this design takes into account the needs of the district coroner's office and the toxicology section and medical investigation, which all support that office. And that's all statutorily, the coroner is statutorily required. Toxicology and medical investigation are necessary elements to support the work that they do in that office with the volume of deaths that they investigate in Sedgwick County. And then the forensic lab piece, we needed to upgrade DNA. And that existing building, like they said, the electrical is maxed out, can't do anything about that. And so those other labs need to move into a facility that will facilitate them going forward in the future with advances in technology and science. And so even if we could buy that piece of property now, if we built a seven-million-dollar building there, we would be behind the curb, and we would not be prepared for the future in those other areas. So I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, that makes sense.
That would be throwing good money after bad.
Agreed.
That makes sense. So it's a big ask, but that's just the reality of the future need, so.
Okay, very good. Any other questions? Thanks, Dr. Stedman.
Okay, we're going to move on now to the elections office, 3639 North Comatera Street. So this will be, I think, a quick update for some of the commissioners. You have this history, but I did want to give this background for Commissioner Wise and Commissioner Bluebaugh. So we started looking for election space back in 2016, and the goal here was to look for a building that had combined warehouse and office space. And in 2023, we reviewed over sixteen buildings for elections. And what we ran into was, basically, in those sixteen buildings, we had not enough parking, building in poor condition, or the age of the building. It required too much construction to renovate space. Cost to purchase the building or to remodel were too high. The location was not optimal, not right size, or security was a concern. And then we found what we thought was the optimal building at 3639 North Comatera Street. It had combined space of office and warehouse, forty-six thousand square feet, one-hundred-and-twenty-eight parking spaces, four loading docks, and one ground-level loading dock, four entrances into the site, heating and cooling in the warehouse. It was a single-tenant space. We felt that it had close proximity to downtown at K-96 and Rock Road. It was a very well-maintained facility. It did have, or does have, ten thousand eight hundred of additional storage space that I mentioned down below. There is, there are two metal storage buildings split between forty-eight hundred square feet and six thousand square feet, and they do have security cameras on site, and there is a bus stop there. So the county commission approved the sale, and we closed on the building on or before June 2nd of 2025 this year. The total purchase, or the total project cost for this, is a little over five-point-eight million. Four-point-five of that is in the building acquisition. So that five-point-eight goes to, of course, the building acquisition and then cameras, access controls, so that's badge access on the doors that the election commissioner will want access control on. Will do some minimal remodel. Will work with the election commissioner on how she wants the layout of that, the building for her office space. Will need to get networking out there. She does want a fence on the site for staging of her trucks. Will, of course, put signage out there, and will have to move her out there, FFNE, furnitures, fixtures, and equipment. And then, of course, in any project, we do have contingency. We spoke with the election commissioner, and she indicates that the most convenient time for her to move will be after Thanksgiving due to the many elections that she has this year. We are looking at having records management occupy a portion of the office space. Their program need is fifty-seven hundred square feet, and there is approximately about fourteen thousand additional space of office space in there that could be utilized. That still gives the election commissioner the office space that she needs. And then we are reviewing emergency management, PPE, and then other potential needs for the storage building. And those are the, the picture in the middle, those are the storage buildings that we have. Oh, let me back up. Any questions on elections building before we move off of that one?
Yeah, thank you for the update. I recall that the, the middle picture there, the storage units, I mean, those are nice buildings as well, but that there was not a, that the elections had no need for those. So, right, so they can be used for anything.
That's correct.
And then, but for some reason, I thought the building itself, though, was going to be an elections building, and this records management's going to co-locate there, is what you're recommending?
That's correct. So the, when we reprogrammed elections, they need about fifteen thousand square feet of warehouse, and it was about seventeen thousand of office space. And the office space that is in addition to what's at that, that location is about fourteen thousand in addition of what elections need, their need is. So what we're trying to do is figure out what other needs there are for space needs, and that would be a good suitable tenant for, at that particular location. Records management seems like a good suitable office to have there with elections. I think there would be one staff member there, and they, with that loading dock that they have at ground level, that would work for records management. So I think they would probably take up just about under six thousand square feet at that location. So we felt that that would work. And then that takes that need off of the admin building, about six thousand square feet off of the need for that space at the admin building. And then, and then you still, there's, so you take six thousand off of fourteen thousand, that's still additional space at that current building.
Okay, well, my memory was saying that when we first were challenged with moving this needle a few years ago, Secretary, Secretary of State Schwab was highly concerned with a number of things, mainly around security. I thought the goal was to have an independent building that's just secured and everything else related to elections. And if Schwab and the election commissioner is okay with co-locating other departments in the building, I assume there'll be tremendous security, separate entrances, blah, 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 blah.
Yeah, we'll make sure that, I understand the security need, and we'll have cameras in the, in the building, exterior and interior, and then, of course, I mentioned the badge access control for her, what she needs for those particular rooms that she needs to have badge access.
All right, well, we've got a great opportunity here. I just don't, I don't want to go all in and then say, oh, by the way, Scott Schwab, we're co-locating some other departments in there, and I hope you're okay with that, because he was very serious about homeland security and breaches.
I know that, I know that the election commissioner reached out to Secretary of State on that, and I don't know if you've ever heard anything back, if there was, there cannot be another office in that building.
His letter dated from 2023 stated that was a huge security risk co-locating other departments within our space.
Okay.
Okay, well, I think we ought to run that to ground as we're looking at that, you know, yeah. What's that? Oh, I don't know.
Laura, Commissioner Howell is asking if we can get a copy of that letter.
Yeah. Yes, I did talk to, I don't remember if it was Mr. Caskey or, I lost his name. But anyway, there's, there's one guy up there that does, he's a security person responsible for security for our state. And I talked to him about homeland security and all of that, and he, he was actually quite surprised by the argument that we had to have separate space. I don't know that he agreed with that, so I don't know if there's conflict up there in that office. I don't know, I don't know. But I think having a copy of that letter would be very helpful. Thank you.
Okay. I think that's all I had on that one.
Okay, so the main courthouse annex, a little background on this one. A couple years ago, ARPA funded county admin offices to move out of the main courthouse and lease space at the Ruffin Building. This allowed us to expand District Court, District Attorney's Office, and Sheriff Judicial Space. The remodel of the main courthouse include the addition of four courtrooms, magistrate offices, and the expansion of the DA department to move into the main courthouse, leaving the main courthouse annex vacant with an available almost seventeen thousand square feet. At the end of 2025, Sheriff Offender Registration Unit, the lease was not renewed by the landlord out at Harry Street Mall. ORU has been operating out of the main courthouse annex, the second floor, basically ever since the beginning of the year. Last year, we had just under one-point-four million approved in a CIP as Phase One. This was the focus on Sheriff Offender Registration Unit, with an additional almost one-point-six million approved in 2025 as Phase Two to focus on the rest of the annex. All of these programs are continuing to consolidate adult programs to the downtown core. Phase One focuses on Sheriff ORU constructing their space on the first floor, as well as a remodel of the second floor restrooms, because we don't want to get into, we don't want to finish out that space and be working in that space as we redo the plumbing and the ceiling for the restrooms up above. And then Phase Two will include a office space for courthouse police, as well as move in pre-trial services, drug court, and veterans treatment court on the second floor, as well as part of the first floor. Phase One construction was awarded to Icon for just over nine-hundred thousand. We have two-hundred-and-ten calendar days for final completion, which puts us approximately at the end of September, and we're working through the contract right now with legal and purchasing, get that finalized and get that clock started. I'll pause for any questions and then continue the next one. Juvenile Services Building. A little backstory on this one. Juvenile Field Services and Home Base Services previously leased space at Harry Street Mall. After relocating within the mall in the last few years, the landlord did not renew the lease for 2025. JFS has, has been operating out of the Munger Building as of the beginning of this year. And Home Base Services was absorbed into county facilities while relocating some DOC staff over to Ark Valley Lodge. The juvenile residential facility is located on the, the south campus that we have. It is sandwiched between juvenile detention, juvenile intake assessment center, juvenile courts, and juvenile DA. In 2024, we had an approved CIP for a new building that combines juvenile residential facility, juvenile field services, home base services, and evening reporting center. The efficiencies gained by doing this is all four programs are brought together under one roof, one roof, allowing for efficient staffing and coordination between clients and programs. It also allows all four programs to share resources, such as conference rooms, workspaces, restrooms, and lobbies. The Sedgwick County clients and families will also benefit from a campus setting for all these juveniles, juvenile services. Here is the site. For this red roof here is the current juvenile residential facility with some spill over here with the gym and a classroom. This red line is basically the site that we're working with to try to remodel for or construct a new facility here. And here's a street view of the building as it stands today. This is the current approved CIP. We have just over two million in design that was approved in 2024, and we have just over twenty million approved for construction in 2025. It consists of a two-story building just shy of fifty thousand square feet and removes the existing juvenile residential facility. And here's a rendering at the bottom to kind of show what that image would look like when it's said and done, with one lobby space here, one entrance for the entire building. Here's a floor plan of what that site would look like with the different programs and how they would all fit together. And then I would say last year, there was some talk about possibly keeping the juvenile service, or juvenile residential facility and what it would look to add on. And so we're coming back to you today with this, and then here in the next, I'd say a few weeks, a couple months, we'll come back to a staff meeting to discuss further. But this is, this is the option to look at, keeping the juvenile residential facility. So we still have that approved, two million dollars in the CIP for design in 2024. If we were to look at building on to the existing JRF building, we, our construction budget would be just over sixteen million, and our square footage would be shy of forty-eight thousand. By keeping the JRF structure, we would basically have five building additions onto this building. Two of the additions would expand the JRF dorm wings. One addition would expand JRF offices... would expand the JRF dorm wings. One addition would expand JRF offices and lobby. One addition for JRF laundry, and one addition for two floors that provide space for JFS and home base services. Here's a rendering of what that building would look like. Here's the existing building with an addition here that would include a lobby and offices. We'd have a wing here, a wing here, a new addition here for laundry, and another addition here that would tie on to the two-story addition back here. We'd have one lobby for this portion and one lobby for JRF. Here's a floor plan of what that would look like. The blue sections are the new additions. The yellow is what we would, is what is existing today that we would remain in place. Do we have any questions? Do you want to go to the next one?
No, I would just say you're coming to us in staff meeting on some of these things? Did you say when?
That, that is my understanding is that we'll, we'll come back to you with this to, to discuss further in a few weeks.
The biggest thing, I know Steve's over here too, the biggest discussion on my end on this is just making sure that before we finalize things is that we have a real robust discussion about some potential opportunities in regards to what services we'll be providing in there. I know what functions we'll move in, but what are service opportunities? But also some of these discussions we've been having, since camera mental health may not be an option, but what is the option that we have with the crisis units and the state legislative money? I mean, there's some robust conversations happening right now on the side that I just want to make sure we understand them before we finalize design.
We're, we'll bring it back to you. And what you're referring to, Chairman, we had discussion about this the other day. It's almost like two tracks where we're going to have to take, we'd like to take care of this juvenile crisis, mental health component, which I think Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, or Andrew, correct me if I'm wrong, we're looking at some JDF facility remodeling, which is a separate project away from this. So, okay.
Emergency Preparedness Center. A little backstory on this one. In 2023, we applied for a DCIP grant. The grant required that we were construction ready. So, we purchased land near Meridian and MacArthur, as shown in the, the image on the right. In 2024, we were not successful in, in 2023. So, we applied again in 2024, this time for two grants, the same DCIP grant and a Senator Moran grant. Again, we had to be construction ready. So, this time we took it a step further and we had construction documents completed to actually build the building. So, we have a new CIP submittal because this has not gone through the CIP process previously as far as the, the formal year schedule. We did do a CIP amendment previously on, on the land purchase. But this project includes constructing a new facility dedicated to emergency management in the Health Department. Emergency, emergency management will conduct their daily operations from this new location equipped with storage space and personal protective equipment and emergency response equipment. Additionally, a new emergency operations center, or EOC, will be established within the facility, enabling local governments to respond effectively to catastrophes. The Health Department will benefit from onsite storage for community-wide vaccines and a designated space for mass treatment and vaccination efforts, ensuring the health and safety of the community. The public safety building is currently limited in space and relocating emergency management will enable public safety operations to expand without enlarging the current footprint. The Health Department is not adequately equipped to respond to community-wide pandemics, and this new facility will provide a dedicated location for health to effectively treat and care for our community members. Multiple grant submissions have been made to fund the construction of this facility. However, none of them have been approved so far. Not undertaking this project may have significant impacts to 911, emergency management in the Health Department. Public safety will be unable to expand their operations in response to the growing needs of the community, potentially leading to excessive wait times when calling 911. Emergency management has made efforts to consolidate equipment across the county, but they're constrained by the limited space, resulting in, in increased response times during emergencies. Additionally, the Health Department must often scramble to rent space to vaccinate the community during pandemics, which can lead to higher expenses and delays in establishing operations. Our proposed budget for this project is just over 19 million dollars. Included in that 19 million, we have just over a million that we've already paid for land and construction documents. We've also included approximately 1.5 million for street utilities, design, and construction. So, basically, this is your special stacks. To get this building up and going and have the traffic flow that we would need, we would need to build the adjacent street next to it, which would discharge on to Meridian. So, an additional just shy of 18 million is required to complete the project from what we have today.
Okay. So, historically, we had said that we were, this project was dependent upon the DCIP grant. And now, we're gonna, we're not, we didn't get the grant. I think two years in a row, or maybe three years in a row, we didn't get the grant. So, now we're gonna, the staff recommendation is just to put this inside CIP and move it forward without the grant?
I think, especially the lay of the land today with federal grants and what's happening at that level, I think if the commission wants to move forward with this, I think this is the only alternative forward.
And one of the things that Lorian mentioned this morning was the business needs assessment. One of the things that I suspect, and Rusty can speak to this if he'd like to, but 911 is looking to add a significant number of positions over the next few years as they continue to shift to that dispatcher call taker model. If that truly happens, we must get emergency management out of that building. That is the only way it will work. And so, this would be the home for emergency management. We also, in this last year's budget, have allocated funds for PPE, for e-emergency management to be kind of, regardless of whether there's a pandemic or not, our staff need protective gear. So, we have about 150,000 dollars in the budget to purchase that on a yearly basis. And we need somewhere to store it. Right now, it's being stored in temporary space that we may or may not be kicked out of. So, there is a need for that. And then, one of the things that we did see, like it or not, during the COVID pandemic, when we were doing the testing and the vaccinations, was we were routinely moving spaces. It was expensive. It was hard for staff to deal with from a logistics perspective to continue to move. It was confusing to the public. And so, that's why we need to have the discussion. And the right way to have the discussion about moving forward is to put this through your typical CIP process. Now that we have been unsuccessful with the grants, and as Tom says, with uncertainty about federal funding being available for this through some kind of earmark or something, it's, it's decreasing. So, we just need to have the conversation. We have land. We're construction-ready. So, we need to, to make the call. So, that's why you're, you're hearing about this now, but it will still come to you through a CIP process for additional discussion.
On, on the land purchase, I, I see, you know, it's all tied in with the expenditures for land and construction documents. What was the, how much did we pay for versus the construction documents? I thought it was around 400,000 maybe.
That's correct. So, we just paid, we paid just over 400,000 in design for construction documents. And then, the land purchase was approximately 630,000.
Okay. And then, we went ahead and pulled the trigger on the million and a half to do the specials for the?
We, we have not. So, the special, yeah.
Okay, so all we're into it is?
One million.
Okay.
I think that we're probably going to need to move forward on this project at some point. But if we are going to pay for this without a grant, I, I think we need to pare the building down a little bit. I see it on the design here. There's, you know, there's the six lanes for the vaccinations and stuff. And again, I'm not saying we don't need that in another pandemic, but we lived all, all this time, we've never had that problem. And let's be real, we, we got through the pandemic better, very well. We did, we pivoted. We found solutions to the problem. We have the land. There's, there's ways of doing this without necessarily having to have a permanent brick and mortar structure, if you will, to do this, waiting for the next pandemic. I think we, we can do this essentially without that piece of this puzzle. And I think the storage, we should look around the county and find out other places where we can do some storage potentially. But if we're going to pay for this building, I think we need to pare the building down a little bit in cost.
Sorry, I have to be on my tippy toes. Julie Stimson, emergency manager. One thing I want to clarify with those lanes is when they're not being used for drive-through, that will store our equipment, our emergency lights, our generators, and some of our disaster response equipment. Thank you. So, it is serving a purpose even if we're not doing a actual drive-through for vaccinations or medications.
So, this will come to us in CIP. Is this worthy of another more elaborate discussion? I think I need to revisit this in a pretty.
So, we'll, we'll have a funding plan for you at your budget hearings in May. And then, like Tom said, we'll have all of those Tuesdays right after. So, I think it might be best to let us get through a CIP committee ranking process and discussion, if that's okay. And then, maybe we can workshop it on a Tuesday.
The only thing I'd want to say on this is this facility, and Julie can talk to this too, this facility is important for county operations because we have 20 cities. And what's beginning to happen, and somebody brought this up this morning too, we, we're beginning to have cities create their own operational components within their jurisdictions. And that's problematic because catastrophes know no borders. When we have a tornado or whatever it is, a storm, a pandemic, it crosses borders. And it's, as a county, we work more efficiently if we're all under one roof where we're talking. That's really important. And Julie administrates and coordinates that. She's got connections with Kansas emergency development, or emergency management. So, as, I always think about things like this is what's the county's roadway or what's our wheelhouse? This really is our wheelhouse, and it, it actually should be. It makes sense that it is. And it's problematic, I think, when we have our cities going their own direction, because in a time of mass catastrophe, now we'll have five operation centers working. Nobody knows what everybody else is doing. And to me, and I'll let Julie talk to this, but that's problematic from a management perspective because we don't, we're not communicating then. So, this is important. We were hoping to get the grant. If not, and I'm not disagreeing with Commissioner Howell, I think we look at the footprint and what this looks like, and we have more robust discussion. But can you talk to that just a little bit, Julie?
Sure. Can you clarify what, what topic?
Different command centers.
Oh, yes. So, you know, our whole role is resource coordination and getting the right resources to the right place at the right time. And you're absolutely right. If we've got multiple operation centers, if you will, coordinating resources, we're going to have redundancies or we're going to have gaps. So, we certainly want to have a consolidated effort for that. This also, this center also provides a joint training center too, to get our partners together, to get the collaboration together before disasters happen as well. So, this is a multi-purpose facility, even when we're not doing a disaster response.
So, Julie, Rusty, and Tom, you might be able to help me with this too. Whose authority statutorily is this to provide emergency response? Who, who, is this our?
Yes.
So, we have a core service prerogative to do this, but the other cities don't, I mean, they're doing this because of their own operations internally with their own public safety. And so, I mean, is there?
And, and which is fine to a small scale. I mean, certainly not every, you know, everything that happens in a city is going to require countywide coordination. But for the larger scale incidences where they need our help or hire, then absolutely, we need to be under one roof.
Julie, which shows doing an emergency operations center for fire, I think, and please, have you been in those discussions? Do the, are you aware of what they're doing?
I have not, but I am aware. I do plan to go out there. I got the invite to go take a look and stuff out there, so.
Okay. Could you let us know kind of thoughts of how this would work with our emergency operations center? Thank you.
Absolutely, yep.
Rusty?
You kind of hit on it. I was just going to point out that as a subdivision of the state, Sedgwick County is the emergency, Julie is the emergency manager for the entire county and all of its municipalities. So, we, we do have an obligation. If there's a disaster anywhere in the county, it has to go through Julie. She has to make the request to the state. Obviously, the commission is informed, and you may be declared a declaration. But any asks for, any asks for support from the state or beyond the state through FEMA or any other federal organization has to start with her, and it has to make its way through the chain, regardless of which municipality this happened in, in the county. So, we have an obligation. In fact, Lindsey talked yesterday about when we contracted because of the recession, we found ways to be creative in our funding of our operations. And one of those was emergency management, where we funded the emergency manager with grants. And the program suffered, not because of the people in it, but because of the, the cuts. The program suffered for years and has recently been rebuilt in the last few years. And health is a significant part of emergency response, whether it's flooding or tornadoes or any other kind of disaster, man-made or otherwise. Health is always a part of that. So, emergency management and health work together. Health has specific grants that are emergency response-related, and that's where this facility was designed. There's always room. Obviously, we can, we can talk about design and cost, but co-location makes sense in those programs. So, that's all I wanted to point out. We, we can have further discussion.
Before we have our next conversation, could you, I mean, this is a state statutory, there's some statutory obligation here. There's state opportunities, state grants. We've looked at federal grants, obviously, but are there state opportunities for assistance on this? And we don't have to do that today, but when we have that next conversation, I think it's worthy of it.
We will. I will tell you, almost exclusively, emergency management grants are done at a federal level. Even, I think, the states' funding that they get is, is, they rely on significant federal funding as well.
Thank you.
But we will look.
Okay, the next two projects, I will tell you, are not as precise as we like to get on CIP projects, but we did want to, to start the introduction on these projects. So, this project is, we're calling it the COMCARE complex. So, just a little bit of background, COMCARE programs are currently in seven locations. We've got adult services lease at Harry Street. We have center city lease at Second Street. Children's Services just moved recently to a lease at Woodlawn Street. We've got outpatient services at a lease at Amaden Street. Then we have COMCARE Administration at the Ronald Reagan Building on Third Street. We've got offender assessment program lease at Moore Street. Now, this will move into the new crisis building on Topeka. And then, we have Community Crisis that's currently at Main Street. Of course, that will move into the new crisis building on Topeka. So, when I started in project services in 2012, I want to say we had probably close to 30 leases. And now, we, we currently sit at eight leases. The philosophy at that time was if we had grants that were paying for leases, we were okay to be in lease space because those grants could eventually go away, and we're in lease spaces. Over time, we tried to consolidate leases, and basically, it's for these reasons below. Lease costs continue to rise. We don't own the asset. What we find is that maintenance upkeep and responsiveness to facility begin to decline over time. And then, this is kind of particular to COMCARE. In some instances, we find out later that COM, the landlord doesn't necessarily want to renew the lease because of COMCARE's program clientele. And then, of course, just in what I mentioned, COMCARE doesn't necessarily want to renew the lease because of the location suitability of space. And again, because of maintenance upkeep and the responsiveness from the landlord. So, as you can see in what, you know, I'm showing it in the map there, COMCARE programs are spread across the county due to space availability, space availability at the time that these leases are coming up. So, this kind of came out of, a little bit of wanting to have efficiency for COMCARE, and a little bit of out of frustration of constantly having to look at leases and seeing that this is just spread all over. Programs are spread all over the county. So, what we looked at is, is there an opportunity for COMCARE to be in one particular location for all of these programs? So, what we're introducing this year is the opportunity to come out of all of these leases. And currently, an annual cost for all of these leases is just over a million dollars. And so, what, what this would do would reduce four long-term leases and then free up space in the Ronald Reagan Building. Now, this is where it gets not very precise, because we are still working on this. So, just bear with us a little bit. What we think this building would consist of is approximately 75 to about 80,000 square feet. Still working on those numbers. Preliminary estimates, and now this would be for a new build, we would still consider, of course, if, if there could be any existing building that would work for this. But a new build would be around 36 million. Again, we're still working on those numbers. So, just bear with us on that. We, we wouldn't know until the time that we're ready if an existing building would be available. But of course, if it would be, we would look at that and then want to understand what those remodel costs would be. The earliest that we could consider with lease expirations is 2020. The earliest that we could consider with lease expirations is 2028. So then what that would do is we would have two Comcare facilities. You would have the Comcare Complex, which would take, let me go back here, that would take your adult services, Center City, children's outpatient, outpatient and admin into one building. And then you would have your Comcare Crisis Center, which would be, of course, Crisis, and then your offender registration program in Crisis. So you'd have two Comcare facilities. So just wanted to mention that, that that's something that we're looking at. We will introduce that and of course, you know, that would be up to you if that's something that you feel, you know, you'd, you'd want to consider. Lindsay, do you mind if I throw to you with this, how the financing of this would work? If that would be general fund or where that would come from?
I don't have the answer to that yet.
Okay.
But I will be delighted to research that before we figure out a long-term plan.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Then this one, I think, is a really good opportunity and we wanted to introduce this. This one is, again, we don't have a whole lot of information at this point, but this is the Health Department relocation to KU Med. So this would take the Health Department, that's at Ninth Street, and the Health Department, that is the West Clinic on West Central. And the total space needs for, for this is 50,000 square feet or 55,000 square feet for growth. And I'm telling you, this fits just like a puzzle because KU Med Center, their west building, which is their pharmacy school, has 52,000 square feet of space. I think Dr. Menz reached out to Tim and Adrian and let them know of this opportunity that would open up for space, but it doesn't open up until early 2027 when the Biomed Campus opens because the pharmacy school would move out and into the Biomed Campus. So here's where we get a whole lot of unknowns. We don't know what the CIP cost would be as far as A and E fees, what a modest remodel would look like, you know, and then contingency, of course. So we still need to define what the scope of work is, what the budget would look like. We still have to tour the space with our facility staff and with our on-call architect. What I can tell you is that we have two CIPs on hold, knowing that this is a possibility for us, and that is the Health Department Flooring CIP at 153,000. And then immediately when we heard this was a possibility, we stopped the West Clinic remodel and so there is 2.6 million that we have not spent on that particular remodel. So I think this is a great opportunity. West Clinic would then, there would be no one in the West Clinic and then there would be no one in the Health Department. So that becomes two buildings that would become completely vacant. So that's all we have for CIP and then happy to answer any questions on those.
I was hoping on the last page we'd have like a summary of all these projects that, unless you did that early. Did you do that early?
I'll have to go back to the very front. Oh.
Break.
Break.
Well, okay.
Were you looking for something else?
There were seven projects, but we didn't have, we don't have numbers next to, anyway. Well, we can do that math anyway, that's what.
We'd be happy to put a summary sheet together for you.
This is a large list, I think. So you're asking us for priorities or just, you're just for our information?
At this point, I think we're preparing you so you're not stunned in May.
Okay. Well, thanks for the stunning information this morning.
Unless Tony wants to correct me, I think honestly, the purpose of this is just to let you know, there's still, even as we go through and you hear decision packages and you hear the conversations about the operations, there's still a lot of infrastructure and facility needs that are coming your way.
Well, that's probably, because some of these had some grant money, pending grant money, how much would be bonded.
And you'll remember my pontification recently that we're going to have the NCAT debt fall off in this beautiful building in 2028. And you saw that there is a significant, well, assuming we're allowed to capture 5% assessed value growth in each of those years, that there was some surplus projected in those outer years. A lot of that is because that NCAT debt falls off. And so we will, in order to make sure that we're preserving our assets and accommodating the, the needs of the, the core, we're going to have to plan for some additional debt and stagger this in. So just want you to be prepared for that.
Well, I think, you know, defer to others, but, so if we had a, maybe a summary page including, you know, what's grant applied or how much percentage, blah, 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 and then what would be either cash or bonded and, and then if we had a projection on if this would just be a lateral move for staffing, for ongoing staffing, or if it would also involve increased staffing, I don't know, over time.
I think if you're okay with it, we'll have that in May as a part of the, I mean, it will be enhanced, but what we would have is the funding plan along with everything else that you all have already approved. And we can also note in that what we think will be for expansion of staff so that you would have those additional operating costs as well or not. So obviously, the EOC and all of that doesn't inherently include additional staff, but it is to accommodate growth in 911, so we'll flag that. Comcare Crisis, I presume the expansion will involve additional staff over time and I think you'll hear that from Tim later. And then obviously, the Comcare Complex and Regional Forensic Science Center both also include most likely growth and staff.
Okay.
Some is already budgeted, but not a lot.
I, I look at this list and I think that the last three bullets are just to prep you for potential future discussion. What's missing on, unless I missed it up here, we have an admin building situation too, that's got to be in the, in the reality area here. So Regional Forensic Science Center, Election Office, Main Courthouse, Juvenile Services Building, Admin Building, those are in the pipeline now that we have to manage and work our way through. EOC, Comcare, Complex, Health Department, space merger, all to be determined by this commission. On the regional, unless there was other questions specifically on the Regional Forensic Science Center, and Shelley's gone, but I wanted to mention this while she was here. The, the, and the DA is not here, Keith's here from the Sheriff's Department. I, I think they rely very heavily on Regional Forensic Science Center here locally. So the part of government that is growing currently is criminal justice, Sheriff's Department, courts, and unfortunately, then Shelley is a byproduct of that and Regional Forensic Science Center. So I just wanted to say that on her behalf, that she's having to grow because of the On the Election Office discussion, we, we had, I, we had talked about many times the shared use of that space. I'm a little bit taken aback by the conversation today. We have, at best, we're getting conflicting information from the SOS office, whether we can merge or not. I will tell you, if we leave that extra 6,000 square feet up there, the mathematic of that is if we would take and now have to put into an admin footprint, records management, depending on whether we get an existing building or a new building, you're looking at a million or $2 million more dollars onto the, onto the admin footprint. So we had thought from a staff level that from the state level, we had, shared space was okay as long as we secured this through the use of cameras and controlled access, et cetera. In the current spaces we have today in elections, both at the historic courthouse and down on Stillwell, those are shared spaces and we can do a lot better on security there. So I feel like we've had this conversation, I think we need to, I've, I've had no one from the SOS tell me directly that this was a no-go, but it, if it is, if it is a no-go, then we can just leave 6,000 square feet of space up there empty and then we'll have to put the footprint back together for the admin building to include records management. Tony, is that how you see it?
That's correct.
Okay. So there's some options there.
If I understand correctly, the, if I understand what you said earlier, Tony, you're talking about separating, physically separating the records part from the election part. Is that, did I miss that?
Yeah, that would be correct. So we would have badge access on the doors that the election commissioner wants badge access.
So they're not really meaning, in other words, someone who's on the record side can't just walk into the election site or vice versa. They're essentially two buildings that are connected like a duplex.
Yes, we can certainly do that, yes.
I'll tell you that, if that, I wasn't really thrilled about this particular choice anyway, primarily because of location, but if this becomes a barrier, I'd like to maybe just, hate to say this, but open up the discussion again and maybe look for a better spot. But anyway, I'll just throw that out there. I'm not against the idea of reconsidering if this is, if this is a barrier, but. Did you, did you give us a, I know it's, it's very high level, but is there any type of estimate on the Health Department?
No, there's not.
No idea, right?
No, because I'll be honest with you, we just haven't had an architect go in there and look. We've not really, I mean, we've, I think Andrew and Tim and maybe Adrian walked through the building, but we just don't have any conceptual idea right now of what it's, what it's going to look like.
It does seem to me that the facility we're talking about taking over here would be, I don't know the numbers, I assure you, see the space needs here on the sheet, but the KU building is much, much larger than this.
Oh, it is.
It's way larger, right?
Yeah, it is, but we're just, we would just take the west part, so it's, it's one of the newer parts of the building where the pharmacy school is.
I would throw out there just a piece of history there with, with all the discussion on 29th and Grove. I, I bring up the idea that at one point in the past, we had environmental health and we don't, there doesn't exist in Sedgwick County at this point. I think that's the conversation we need to have and I think it ties into this discussion. And then just by, without even counting the money really needed for the Health Department, if they do include money for the admin building, just guessing here, we're looking at potentially, again, if you did the EOC and everything on that list, without counting the money for the Health Department, we're talking somewhere north of 130 million dollars pretty quickly. So there's, there's a lot going on in Sedgwick County and we have a lot of bond questions to get through. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Town West, do they have electricity office?
So I do, when I just, since we do have some time on this, we're not scheduled to have lunch till noon and it's about 11:10 because we thought you all would have a lot more to say about CIP. So I'm going to use some of that time as a point of privilege. You're good for now, Tony. I'll call you up if I need you. So in your fantastic 900-ish page budget book that has fantastic content, I want to show you something. And that is, you have not only your current plan, what you all, or what this body approved last August, so it shows the juvenile services at request of commissioners, the Budget Office has also now included every single project that is still active. So it includes everything like your elections building, the admin building, what's funded with that, all of your road and bridge projects, everything of significance. And so what I think, and I think Commissioner Howell asked for this yesterday or maybe the day before, maybe what we can do is go through and pick some of these projects that are greater than 5 million, as well as some of the things that you heard about today. And we can do some staff meeting conversations about these projects on, and the status. But we do have also a parks master plan that we're going to need some direction on from this commission particularly related to potential consolidation. Right now, what you'll see is that a number of projects are on your watch list from the parks and that is because we want to do this space master plan for your park facilities and understand what those needs are. So that's not even included in anything that's programmed yet. So we will need to understand from you all too, some direction on if, if we're going to talk about parks consolidation, where that fits in this, particularly if the conversation is to try and do something for the 2026 budget, which I have heard so far is part of the goal. So if, I'm sorry? So the current plan, the 2025 through 2029 plan starts on page 697. And then the currently approved, so everything that has already been endorsed by a commission and actually authorized for funding starts on page 708. So one of the other things that we'll need to talk about is, if you recall, the, we had promised to come back to you on the climate control. I'm going to call it that. It's the BAS system. It was multiple millions of dollars that were cash funded last year. We did the ones for, I think, the jail, but we still have the main courthouse, the public safety building and some of those to discuss. And so that's going to be another big demand on you all to figure out whether you're comfortable proceeding with those options. Oh, lunch must be coming soon. Or if there are other things that you would like to see done. So we've hit some of the highlights today, but you do still have a significant number of challenges that are coming to talk through. Just want to refresh your memory on some of those. I think they've done a great job of summarizing the new needs and the current status, but you still have some old ones that we're going to have to address and do a deep dive on. And it's relevant for this budget retreat because we're all competing for the exact same pool of resources. So if there are questions, if there are projects you have questions about, that we can prepare for and do deep dives with you as a part of the CIP budget conversation in May, or if there are workshops we can do, it would be really useful for us to know that, particularly as it relates to past projects. The Regional Forensic Science Center one is going to be a big lift. You've got 7 million authorized in a CIP, moving forward with that and that, you know, more than double the budget. Obviously, a high priority need, but how do we want to pay for that? And then distinguishing, I think, one of the other things we're going to have to talk about, although we know we don't like the language of core versus non-core, we need to start considering that as a part of your CIP conversations as well so that from a staff perspective, we can understand your priorities. So sorry to talk so much, but this is a golden opportunity to talk about these things in a budget context. Do you want to talk about an admin building at all, since you've got time?
Well, on, on the CIP piece of it, I, I didn't bring, I should have brought my CIP booklet. I apologize that way. I had an idea. I, it doesn't feel like we can wait till May to have that discussion based on kind of what you're, I know you're having your CIP, no, thanks.
Orient.
I mean, there's a lot on the CIP, but I think that it doesn't sound like we can wait until May. Am I getting that drift from you that you want some decisions on this before you go into your CIP hearings in May?
What would be useful before CIP hearings, because we are about to start our CIP committee meetings, would be an understanding from you all if there is an expectation of prioritization for, in some, I, I really would love to spend some time at some point talking about how you want to distinguish core slash mandated from maybe what has been considered non-core or discretionary, because I think those words have an effect on your staff and I think it's hard for, for morale. So we need to have that prior to discussion.
And as we talk about this at staff, instead of using level one, level two, level three, core, non-core, that kind of vernacular, it's how it's funded. Property tax funded or do we need, everything we do from STEM to starting that book is important. And if we don't do it, somebody's going to suffer. So it's all critical, it's all important. It's a question of how you pay for it, how the people pay for it. So I think when we have this discussion, I'd rather, instead of using core, non-core as property tax or other type of revenue stream to prop up whatever it is we're talking about. So that's the conversation that we've tried to begin to have as staff, because we've been through this a couple of times now, where you begin to identify core versus non-core, essential versus non-essential, and that is hell for morale. And that's saying that some of the things we do are not important and if it wasn't important, we'd have cut it five years ago. It is important. It's important to our, to our people, it's important to you. It's a question of how you want to pay for it. So as we have, go forward in this conversation, I'd like to talk about using, whether it's property tax funded or not. So instead of core, non-core, is that cool with you? And we have not talked about that, so.
I, well, we'll talk more.
Okay. Yeah, I think that, oh, I think that's really important. Obviously, we want to talk about core and we want to talk about things that we do and don't do. I, I think everything we do from the county side of things, for the most part, Tom, is incredibly important to the community. I think the conversation that I, that we've had internally with staff and such is, is there a better way to do some of these things or a more efficient way to do some of these things? Is there more shared services? And all of this, the backdrop of all of this, as we're serving 525,000 people and many of these people right now, if you look at all of our emails, are really, really... right now, if you look at all of our emails, are really, really concerned about the rising cost of government. And I, I don't, so I, I think, yeah, we should have a discussion about how we balance what we do, and how we maintain incredible staff, and retain and attract the 3,000 employees. But there's a balance between the services we provide and the cost it's costing to provide it. And I'm just going to tell you now that we have a community that's incredibly frustrated with local government. So, and it's, and I don't, now, in my view, I don't think all of that's justified, but the messaging that what Mark Clark delivered to us on Wednesday was not a property tax increase, is hard to deliver, when you have the media saying that Mark Clark just said we're getting a 9% property tax increase. It's just crazy. That's not what he said, and that's not, but I don't know if any of you else have followed the comments on, on media here recently. So, it's part of that as a messaging and a communication, but all of that feeds into a narrative that the community is very worried about where we're at with, with property taxes. So, so we have to keep that in the back. All of this is, many of this is needed, all of it is important. We just have to determine what the cost and what we can do for the community at this point in time, so.
And that's why, I think, to your first question, in terms of what you expect from staff to deliver to you in a CIP, which, I mean, personnel are very, very expensive, but capital improvement is way more, to help us know if there are things you've heard or things that you see in that book as you go and look at those pages, if there are priorities that we should focus on, that would be really useful for us to know as we score projects and put together a plan. You have most of the members of the CIP committee in this room right now. We want to be responsive and put together a plan that is meaningful to you all and doesn't require a ton of shifting between May and June. So, I don't know if it is helpful to come back to a conversation in a staff meeting. I don't know when the commission feels like they'll be prepared to have that conversation.
Yeah. I kind of just, the elephant in the room is the admin building. It depends on what we do with the admin building. If we, if we do Plan A with the admin building, it doesn't allow a lot of capacity to do a lot of the other things. If we do Plan B with the admin building, I think it allows us some capacity. The elephant in the room is the admin building, and I think we've got to get some clarity of what we're doing with that.
Well, you got 37 minutes. What do you want to talk about?
We've had some executive sessions about admin billing, which we cannot talk about.
That's why I was feeling the lawyer behind me.
They can talk about the general concept, though, of how much money we want to allocate to it and those kinds of things.
Well, that's a fair, that's a fair statement. So, we've, through the last six months, we've heard a number of, all this, 20 million. If we can do admin building for less than 20 million, then that becomes a threshold of green light or red light for some of you. So, is that?
That's what I want to talk about. That's, so, right now, you have an approved CIP that contemplates a $27 million bond-funded administration building. Of that, we have sold bonds for half, and that is currently sitting in the bank. We have a hard timeframe where we, our bond council tells us, we have 36 months to, I'm a lawyer too, guys, calm down. We have, I can see the stress back, back from these two. Not going to do anything I'm not supposed to do. So, we have the, the money in the bank, we have 36 months to spend 85% of those dollars, 100% within five years, and we have to show reasonable efforts that we're making due diligence and decisions. So, we need to make a decision also in this CIP plan about, do you really want to bond fund 27 million?
I, I, correct, and I know that we have the 17 million, and then my thought all along was that we were going to use some of this ARPA revenue replacement dollars, but I saw a plan to take the 9 million and put it towards election equipment. So, in my mind, I'm trying to figure out where the cash is coming from.
So, there was, I'm going to go steal the clicker, and we're going to go way back in your presentation. The $9 million was moved to equipment replacement, but you had 17 and a half million that was moved to your capital improvement fund.
Okay.
And of that, a portion, we think, needs to be used for the comp care crisis building.
Yeah.
But that also then still puts us, sorry if I made anybody seasick there. So, we have the 17 and a half million that's been allocated to the CIP.
Okay, I see it. Forget me.
So, one of the conversations that we need to have is, we've heard estimates of upwards of $40 million for a new build. That has been public discussion. We know that in our CIP plan, we have 27 million that is bond-funded, that has been approved in a public meeting. You have sold bonds. We have bond proceeds of 13.25 million sitting in the bank that we have a time limit on. So, we have a combination of a project that's been authorized, and when I say authorized, I mean that in the legal, technical sense, right? We have to issue a project authorization before we can sell bonds. And then we sold half of those bonds, because we knew that we would have a cash basis issue with all of the projects that are going on. So, where we need some direction to be able to come back to you and for our team to be able to do their work to bring you a project, is to understand what dollars do you want to allocate through the CIP. If you want to cap it to the money that's already been bond-funded, plus some portion of these dollars that have already been moved into a CIP fund, that is fantastic guidance to us.
Yeah.
And that can give us some direction to come back to you. But we do have a board that has changed since we've last had a big conversation about this, and it would be very useful to us to know kind of where you all sit with what you're comfortable with, knowing that we're currently in a lease, that lease is being paid for with general fund dollars. We do know that that was planned to be funded through ARPA through 2026, except we ended it early. And so, now those costs are baked into the forecast for some portion of the future. But then we have, in your debt service costs, the anticipated second issuance of those funds. So, when we come back to you with a recommended budget, as we move through this process, recognizing that now we have some legal obligations to start taking some action, it would be useful to have some guidance. And maybe today is not the day, because you're not prepared for that conversation today.
No, I think we've been talking about this for-
But we're talking about CIP, and we've got time, and if I'm going to have the opportunity, I'm going to take it.
Well, I appreciate it. I, I'll just, I'll talk out loud, which might get me in a bit of some hot water, but when I look at the projected CIP facilities, and I think about, I mean, I really wish the admin building would have been done long before I got here, but I, I think about the Regional Forensic Science Center, I think about the elections office, the main courthouse annex, juvenile services, like those are things that, in my mind, go well above a new admin building, because those are services to the community that need to happen, and they shore up some significant gaps. In my, where I'm processing mentally is, is the community wants us to spend $40 million on an admin building, and I just, I can't get there mentally. Like mentally, I cannot, in this economy, with the way, the feedback I get from my constituents is, I just cannot rationalize that they want me to vote in favor of spending $40 million on an admin building in lieu of some of these buildings, or on top of some of these buildings, which I put to have more priority. So, that's just kind of where my head's at. Maybe I could be swayed, but it'd be tough to sway me off of that.
I'll comment, a couple of questions, but I, I do agree with the chairman's last statement. Even the, the comp care complex presentation was 75,000 to 80,000 square feet, similar ballpark, $36.7 million. So, I think we're independently confirming that this project for an admin building new would be in the 35 to 40 million-ish world, if we need that kind of process. So, I really struggle with that. Did I hear you say that if we just encouraged you to say 13 million is the cap on, on the bond, then we would know that and we'd work from there? Is that what you said?
Any guidance we can get from you all at this point would be useful.
Okay. The other, and then one more question. If we, if we did something at the 25 million-ish or 20, 25 million-ish, what would be the interest payment annually on something like
So, right now, if we're assuming a 4% interest rate, then we assume that's $400,000 of interest on every $1 million of debt issued.
Say that again, it would be-
But that's higher than what we would truly expect to get. About $400,000 on every $1 million issued over a 20-year term is what we have calculated that to be in the past.
4 million? 400,000 per?
Per $1 million bond issued, for a 4% interest rate.
So, if we bond 13 million, it's?
But you're paying it over 20 years, right?
3 million a year.
And remember, we're, it, I'm, that's a round number, because remember the way your, your debt policy is structured, you pay off 60% of the principal in the first 10 years.
That's true.
And so, that actually reduces the amount of interest that you're paying. So, I'm using a round number just for simplicity, conversation sake.
And I, and I do appreciate that, that, when I learned here, that the county does take a more aggressive approach to debt payment in the, in the, not a traditional 20-year.
Right.
But still, the first few years, it'd be the 3 to 3 million-ish or more in payment.
So, if you're, if we think of the 13.25 million that we just issued.
Okay.
And we've got about a 3.3% interest rate on that.
Okay.
The way it is set up now, I believe we're paying 1.6 million, or we expect to start next year paying 1.6 million per year for that debt service with the way it's structured. Obviously, that's going to fluctuate year over year, based on that repayment schedule.
So, the public would be aware that we'd be paying, we're paying 900,000 a year lease today, and we'd go to 1.6 million. So, okay, well, that's, that's a yearly comparison. Okay, can I just ask one respectful question? So, on the, on the bond that we approved, I, I learned, I didn't pay enough attention, the word administration building is in that bond?
Yes, it's in the project authorization and in all the official statements that have been issued.
Can the bond, so people that are investing in buying county bonds that are AAA rated and all of our history and everything else, do you think that the, that the bond purchasers would care if it's a physical building that's an admin building, or a physical building that could be juvenile centers and blah, blah, blah? So, my question is, is there any way that we could eliminate the word admin and just put buildings in that bond legally?
So, that question, I have asked that question of bond council, if we could redirect those funds to other approved projects, and the answer is, he's never seen it done. We could, but it's going to take a whole lot of administrative work, and he's not sure that it would be approved because of the way we have to go through and get everything. He can't guarantee that it would be approved to change the use.
Okay. Even if it's, from my perspective, I think we ought to run to ground on that issue. If they came back and said, hey, it's, you're going to have a half million dollar penalty to redo that, I think we could consider paying, paying a penalty to get this, so we can focus.
So, so right now, we sold it as tax-exempt debt. So, so what I was talking about just in general, could we, could we change to project authorization? But now, we're getting into some different minutia, and so that is whether it's tax-exempt or not. So, when we talk about tax-exempt debt, again, just for everybody in the room, tax-exempt doesn't mean that it's property tax exempt. It means that the people buying our debt-
The investors.
Who then get our, right, who then get our interest income, don't have to pay federal taxes on that. So, that's what tax exempt means. So, if we were to use that debt in a way that was not eligible to be tax-exempt, we have been told that it will cost at least six figures, maybe seven, to potentially reissue that 13.25 million dollars worth of debt, to use it in a different way. So, that would essentially be the penalty. And under that circumstance, it would be challenging, I'm not, I'm not going to speak for our municipal advisor, but when we talked with him about this hypothetically in a general situation, it, there is likely going to be an effect to our credit rating, if we have to completely reissue the bonds.
Okay. Well, we had time to talk about this, so I'm-
No, I'm glad, I'm glad we're having this conversation publicly. I think it helps to have a, no, it doesn't, yeah. It's your money, and you, you have to make the hard calls, so it doesn't hurt my feelings. Ask whatever you want.
And when is the 30, last, last question, when's the 36 month that we have to spend 85%?
IRS.
What is it?
IRS rules.
I know, but when, when is that date?
Oh, October of, let's see, we issued it in 24, so October 27.
October 27?
But we have to show reasonable efforts and due diligence in that time. And Justin can back me up on that.
I, I don't want to talk about any, any proposal that's being thought of right now. That's not real. I do want to talk about kind of a pie in the sky discussion, though. There has been a number of years that we've heard the idea of, you know, county and city kind of co-locating into the city hall. I, I'd like to at least talk about that on a very high level, to talk about what that would look like. Again, there's, I think the public would like that, that, that perspective, seeing a city and county working together. There may be a political benefit to actually being in one building in that regard. I think shared space would obviously be the auditorium down on the first floor. Otherwise, though, I think that the cost of relocating city offices would, would be borne by the county. Other words, they would have to displace a few, three to four floors of that building for us to move in that building.
That's my understanding.
And I think that there's a pretty high cost to that, and I think that needs to be understood somewhat. So, maybe some advantages to be co-located, but there's also, it's not, it's not free. They're not offering us, if you will, there's no proposal that I'm aware of that would say, you guys can simply just move in and get free space. That's not, that's not real. If there, if someone thinks there's a, an idea of moving in there somehow going to be less expensive, I don't think that, I don't, I don't view that as likely. I think it's going to be as expensive as any, any other option we've even, we've ever discussed. I think that even buying, or building a brand-new building, for example, or channeling former Commissioner David Dennis, you know, he looks at the, he calls it lifetime costs, 50 years, what's the, and, and again, you, a new building would have less operational costs, because it's more energy efficient perhaps, and you capitalize on that on a 50-year view. But even, even comparing, comparing that proposal to, you know, a city hall footprint for the county, county seat, if you will, I don't know that that's actually any less cost, because I think displacing several, three, four floors of that building, just throw that out there, I think it's going to be, again, another, another bond question and financing question, I think in the neighborhood of 20 to 40 million dollars to do that. So, it's not cheap. I don't know what that would cost. If anybody has a better idea what that would be, I don't know.
I have no idea.
I guess my point is, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to distract ourselves by thinking that's a lesser expensive option. I think we need to understand, I don't want to slow down necessarily on our, on our admin building discussions. I think at the end of the day, staying where we're, where we're at right now also has a cost. And so, every option out there, every option out there has a cost. Doing nothing has a cost. Co-locating with Wichita has a cost. And so, I think at the end of the day, the, the least expensive cost should be what we're driven towards, and there is an answer to that question. I don't think we need to sit there and, and rehash the entire discussion for the last 10 years to, to kind of make, make progress on the solution to that question. Doing, doing nothing or constructing, constructing new, we, we have some ideas what those things are. That's been presented in staff meetings in the past, so I think that's public knowledge. What we don't have right now is, is some numbers on what that would look like to co-locate into city hall. And again, I don't know what that would cost, but I can just imagine displacing that many square feet. We need 80, 84,000 square feet, whatever, and move that much out of city hall and find them a new place somewhere in the, in the community, that's not free either. And we would have to pay for that cost, I'm pretty sure. So, anyway, I guess my point is, I don't want that to slow us down. And the idea of doing, you know, the idea of saying it's a difficult decision somehow is less expensive to the taxpayer, it's not. If our goal is to minimize cost to the taxpayer, then I think to act on the, the less expensive option sooner than later is actually the best option. Thanks.
I get you what you need?
No.
Yeah.
It's not even closed, right?
Well, and, and to be fair, I didn't know that we needed that today, but it is something that it would help, I think, constituents and help staff to understand where, where the budget sits. This is a budget retreat. Um, but to understand financially where your guys' heads at are on what's acceptable helps us prepare options for your consideration.
Yeah. Lindsay, how much debt capacity do we have? I mean, what's the dollar capacity?
Unbelievably, a, a lot, couple hundred million at this point because we have paid so much debt down. We're at about five percent of our state legal margin, and what I tell you is actually what you're allowed to have under our, our more conservative debt policy. And especially once NCAT pulls off, that will be even more that's available to us. I'm not saying we want to use it all. Uh, I would never, I don't think advocate for that. One of the things that we just got, we're about, we're about to sell bonds, I think I talked about this yesterday, we're about to sell bonds next week, um, two weeks, excuse me, and we just got a brand new AAA rating. And one of the things in that report, in additional deciding your exceptional financial management, was your low planned use of debt was actually something that was lauded for. Um, the, like I said, the admin building is in there, uh, at twenty, roughly twenty-seven million. So, um, they know that that's on the horizon, they know the community base, or community services building for juveniles is in there, a lot of those bigger ticket items are already in there. So, um, even with that, that was still something that's been lauded by an objective outside person whose job it is to look at credit and debt.
Come.
I'll give you a more precise number.
I'll just tell you, when you're talking about facilities, different facilities don't mean bigger government and more staff. In fact, it should not. So Sheriff and I have discussions all the time, but if we could disbuild a jail today instead of the jail thirty years ago, he could build a jail today that could save staff because of technology and security and the changes in building designs and structure, you can build an efficient building which saves taxpayers' money long-term because FTEs are expensive. So whatever the commission decides, uh, be sure to, I, I don't think the message we're sending is we want to grow government, want to shrink government as best we can, and if we can use building and technology to help us do that, all the better. So don't consider what you want it to look like today, consider what you want it to look like in thirty years. That's the, that's the discussion when we're talking about these kinds of dollars and these kinds of projects moving forward. So we'll work through them. Um, I think there's some, some issues in a pipeline that we'll have to address. I don't know how to unreconcile, and Lindsay has talked about this a lot, I don't know how to unreconcile the bond sale from October. It is a train going down a track that we will have to deal with. Uh, but there are a number of options in front of the commission over the next few weeks or months that we can consider. And, and we'll continue to have that discussion. The other, the comcare campus and some of the, I think if you can't justify in your own minds that we could utilize this campus for efficiency and better customer service and saving long-term dollars, then I don't know that we should go down that track. Uh, but those are all considerations you can talk about, not only this year, but next year.
Yeah, the, the admin building conversation in this setting is incomplete because there's significant things that we can't discuss that are in the pipeline and discussions that we've had that I think are relevant discussions on the costing of this. As I'm looking through the thirty text messages I've gotten from our lawyer sitting behind me here, then I, um, but, so there's just a lot of discussions are in that pipeline, but I, my point in all of it is, we, we've got to come to a conclusion on that here within the next few weeks, in my view. Like, I think that we, we need to come to a conclusion on where we're going with this thing, because if we would have done this eight years ago, we would be saving ten million dollars.
This is changing the topic ever so slightly, but, uh, there's been, there's been some recent discussion about a regional fire training center that would be county-based, and that's not on the list today, but I was just wondering if that's something we should be talking about at, at the retreat today.
So the Fire District has made me aware of their CIP request that's coming in. I think it totals about four point four million. They do have that amount in their Fire District Special Equipment Fund. It will come before the CIP committee, we will discuss it, but that'll be another thing where we need, uh, understanding from the commission about the, we've talked so much about functional consolidation, and one of the things I have shared with, um, Chief Deputy, or Deputy Chief Nelson is, before I think the CIP committee can vote to support that, we need to understand if there is the political support to move forward with that, or if there should be some kind of joint approach as we talk about consolidated services, um, and what's reasonable to expect from that. So it is on our radar, it is going to be considered through this upcoming CIP, and um, we will need to understand from the commission if, if you want us to table that for a while, if that should be a watchlist project while you talk through consolidation options, or if that's something you want to see move forward in a future year of the CIP.
I'll just say that functional consolidation, fire training, in my opinion, is low hanging fruit. I'll also point out the 2016 Contract on Law Enforcement Training Center, which I'm sure at least one commissioner remembers that. It does include, if you will, the framework for consolidated training at the Wichita Regional Fire Training Center, but it's, in practice, it doesn't really work well there. There's reasons why I think it's more political and perhaps, you know, desire to actually do that is somewhat lacking, I think, on one side of the equation there, but, um, I am looking at, you know, I like, I would like to know more about the opportunities on that site to work with Wichita, to, if you will, invest in what they've already got in place and, and try to build the, build a better relationship with Wichita so we can truly have a regional fire training center. That, to me, there is a political opportunity there. I think that we are basically walking away from that vision by doing our own thing. And if we do our own thing, I think we need to reach out to the communities around us and ask for them to actually essentially partner up on a much more robust regional fire training center. And I, and I pointed this out to, uh, some of our fire, uh, leaders, if you will, that when I first became a commissioner, there actually was a plan to purchase land and build a regional fire training center. In fact, there was actually paper plans to do that. And we, we walked away from that, I think, um, unfortunately, I think there wasn't su- support from the commission, but there was plans to do that at one time, and that was more remote, uh, I think it was out west somewhere, northwest, to have a, uh, a regional fire training center that was more, um, community partners like potentially Augusta and Andover, uh, other, other, maybe Hutchinson would have, you will, some, some training at that site. So there was a plan at one point, and unfortunately, because I think Derby's frustrated, they actually started building their own. They actually have a site now that's got some training stuff on there, but I think it's not too late to maybe reconsider what they're doing and maybe pull that in as a, as a community partner. I think there's opportunity here, and I think that, uh, we ought to be reaching out to Wichita specifically, asking them to reconsider, if you will, our relationship for, for, for fire training. And I envision, if you will, classes with Wichita and Sidgwick County at the same room at the same time, trainings side by side. That's what should be happening at Law Enforcement Training Center, and I think right now, that's actually not happening. I think Sheriff has a class, and WPD has a class, they're separate classes. But ideally, they should be training together at the same time on things that are common training for both governments. They should be training in the same room with the black and blue uniforms at the same time. I don't know why we're not doing them together. So I feel like we have opportunities to do a better job at functionally consolidated training on law enforcement, but I think our greater, greater opportunity is even fire. And I'm not really thrilled about the idea of just basically, um, walking away from what I think is, uh, a vision for how we should get along much better on this topic. And I think if we're going to spend anything like four million dollars, we ought to be trying to do this with Wichita.
I appreciate that. Lindsay, the bill, the facility CIP that we have now is about just shy of fifty, about the, just north of fifty million. Could you get me a number of what, I, I, my, the debt policy I'm aware of, but can you get me a number of what you're comfortable with adding to the five-year facility CIP and what that does for bond payments and what that?
Just in terms of debt or also including cash?
I would need both, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I need both, and, and what that does. What was the ratio you said, uh, dollars per, well, remind me the bond.
For which part? Oh, four hundred thousand, if you assume a four percent interest rate.
Correct.
Which I'm afraid we're going to start getting there with tariffs and things, uh, driving up inflation a bit. So, um, four hundred thousand per one million of debt issued over a twenty-year term.
Okay. So if you can get me, I, I don't, I'm looking at the list, facilities list, if you, I'm looking, I need a dollar. Like, what are you comfortable with within our policy for debt?
So what, if you're okay with it? Can I do it on a per year basis? Because the number changes once we pay off NCAT. We're also going to pay off the spirit.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And some of those things. So if you're okay with it, I think we can show you kind of what a model would look like.
Yeah, I'm getting, I'm getting caught up in the project, and I need to stay focused on the dollar number.
Yeah.
So.
Well, and that's one of the things we try to do very hard, and I think we've talked about it over the years, is we try and keep a relatively stable debt service levy. Because again, like we talked about yesterday in two thousand eight, after there was the mill levy increase to fund two different CIP projects, commissioners lost their jobs, and we're not going to, we, we don't want to set you up to ever have to be in that position. And so that's why we try and have these long-range conversations so that we can try and phase those in and keep things relatively stable, so there's no shock to the system when we do have to do a project.
Okay.
We want to have low debt, but we also want to have good facilities.
Well, yeah, I mean, and Tom's point, uh, is well received, so I just, I need to stay focused on the number and not necessarily the project. And if you can help me understand that, that'd be helpful. Hi, Tanya.
Good morning again. I just wanted to give you an update. We talked about this yesterday, and that was House Bill twenty-eighty-eight, which is that fast-track permitting bill. Heard from Jason this morning that he is going to talk, uh, to Chair Bowers on the Senate side and see if they can't do a compromise to ninety days. Um, he had a conversation with Scott and thinks that that might be a workable solution. So just wanted to mention that, that that's going to be kind of our next step on that particular bill. So I think it's a good solution. That's all I had.
Let's do lunch and then maybe reconvene in a half hour, with or without lunch, and we'll keep on plowing. Okay, we will move on to the afternoon agenda. Sheena is going to talk, uh, briefly about elected pay policy, and then we'll move right into, um, Scott Newland and the zoo discussion. So Sheena?
Hi, Sheena.
Thank you. How's that? So I've been asked a few times to talk briefly about our elected official pay and retirement policy. This is policy, personnel policy four point two zero zero five. This was adopted in December of twenty twenty-two. This policy applies to ten elected positions, however, it only applies to eight of the compensation plans for those elected positions. The district attorney and the sheriff, uh, the pay is not applicable in this policy because they are on their own pay plans. And you might recall that we've made adjustments to both the sheriff's compensation and the district attorney's compensation, um, back in twenty twenty-four. So again, um, there's eight elected positions that are affected by the compensation, but they all are applicable to their retirement plans. Currently, the policy states that if the compensation level for general employees is three percent or less, all elected officials will be included in that compensation. If that level is greater than three percent, elected officials will receive a cap of three percent unless the board approves it in budget discussion in a public meeting. And again, as I mentioned, the sheriff and DA are not included of, in this portion of the policy because they have their own pay plans, and you have made separate adjustments for both of those individuals. So what we are seeking today, um, is feedback from the commission about this policy. Do you want a policy? Staff would welcome the opportunity to work with the board to modify the policy, um, and just get your directions for moving forward so we know how to make these adjustments for the budget cycle. So with that, I am opening up the floor back to the commission on those next steps.
Hey, Sheena, could you give some, how did this come into play? This is a recent policy, right? This isn't, how did, a little bit of background and context, how did this come into play?
There was never a policy before, so this was a brand-new policy, and because we had no direction on how much an elected body should receive, it was put forth that way.
Okay.
And it is a relatively short policy.
Well, I, I'm just, my view, I, I mean, obviously, the sheriff has his pay plan, the district attorney has his pay plan. Our row officers are here, the clerk, treasurer, and deeds, they run departments. I mean, I, I, if, I know we're going to talk about this and move forward and try to either amend or remove the policy, I'd be in favor of the latter, just removing the policy. I don't, we're tying the row offices to the county commissioners, and I'm just not sure that's inappropriate. Uh, I, I don't think it's appropriate, so I would, I would be in favor of just removing the policy and moving us forward. Any other thoughts?
I concur with, with the chairman that, that, I think it served its purpose originally, well-intended, but if, if, uh, I just don't, I'm in favor of, of removing it as well, just to, we can handle our own pay as we, as we do, and we can let the, the other electeds figure out how we're going to handle that there.
Chairman, if it's okay, um, could, is it possible to let staff have a shot at this for some modifications? We'll bring you back some options, uh, to consider in the future, and, um, we do it in two-two ones, or we could, ultimately, it has to go to open meeting before we do any change, but is it okay if we have a shot for amendment?
It's going to need a vote, right? We're going to have to vote on this to?
Yes.
To change a policy, so, okay.
Yes.
Which it might be, it might be good practice to rescind it and then allow staff time to modify and bring it back, or the other way around, however you want to do it.
Are you saying you want to mod, I'm hearing they don't want to modify, I'm hearing they're just going to call?
Well, I mean, two commissioners said, well, there's no modification needed, that we would just remove it. Um, I don't, I haven't heard from the rest of the board, but.
And even to rescind it, we would take it to the board, and you would have to approve it to rescind it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't want to be the only person here that speaks this way, but this is a discussion that's gone back a number of years. I think we, we ought to have a better history of what's caused this policy to exist. I don't think we've had that information presented to us as to how we got here. I mean, I've got to be looking at the history of these offices and see what's happened over the years. Again, channeling Commissioner David Dennis, he was pretty big on the idea of, of pushing this forward for a reason. And, um, you know, most recently, I, I had, I had said, if the, if those offices want to be, um, treated differently or separate, then I want them to make that request in writing so that we have some cover, because again, this is property tax dollars, and I'm concerned about, you know, simply not having a policy. I think we ought to have a policy, and I don't know that I agree with just removing it, I think we ought to be more thoughtful on exactly how we got here and why, but.
I think part of, and Sheena can correct me if I'm right, wrong, I think there's a couple of really good reasons why this policy was created. First, I think for a very long time, commissioners did not see any salary increase, um, due to budget cuts. I think there were three or four years at a time where commissioners didn't see increases and other elected officials did. And I think eventually it got to where different commissioners were making different amounts of money based on maybe some commissioners choosing to take pay increases when they were offered, others not taking those increases. Then that caused some discrepancies when a new commissioner was brought in to that old commissioner's spot. And so there were some budget adjustments that were made. I think we, we may have started, when I was budget director, may have started right after when Lorian became budget director, but we started budgeting the actual, like the highest possible cost for a commissioner in the budget regardless, so that way a commissioner could choose to take it or not. But then there were, there were differences. Some commissioners, uh, would then choose maybe later in the year to take a salary increase that they had foregone earlier in the year. So there was some, um, I don't want to say manipulation because that sounds worse than it is, but there, there wasn't consistency, and so it made it a challenge for us to budget and communicate wages and all of those things through open records requests. Also, there was a change, I think, in how retirement was handled. Certain commissioners may come in with other retirement options that they would try to choose to take that then would create challenges for HR and administering those programs. So the idea was to standardize this, and then through that discussion, I think it came up that, um, commissioners thought that, you know, if you ran for office, it was public service, and so there should be some. And so there should be some recognition that it's public service and balance all of your wages together. So that one office doesn't exceed another. Also, though, recognizing that those row offices in particular have deputies and there were some compression concerns that a deputy could move into a position over time where they start making more than the elected official. Obviously commissioners set a budget that has dozens of employees who make more than them. But you're a five member body that sets policy. I think the idea was those row offices conduct business and have those deputies. So I think that's kind of the history of what we were trying to solve through this and make it more equitable. But I also think that it has had unintended consequences. And so I think that's why we, we have to continue to revisit this and we promised we would.
Would you qualify the unintended consequences that you think maybe?
I think the unintended consequences are we have now tried to say that all five of you are making the same amount. It has some of the unintended consequences. For example, we talked about the compression. So this most recent year, there was a five percent pay adjustment for those deputies. The policy set three percent for all of you in those row offices. And so the, again, speaking to the compression, I think those deputies were entitled to the five percent. The elected themselves were entitled to the three under the policy. And I'll let Sheena speak to anything else on that front.
I would also add that there are IRS limits on the retirement contributions as well. And so that has set up some issues for us.
That's right, that's right. Well, in my view, I mean, you have the district attorney and the sheriff, they, they go in step with their departments, correct? And yet we have three other elected departments.
That's true, but the DA and the sheriff are, I think the DA is statutorily tied to a federal judge.
Yes, so there are regulations that we have to set a minimum for him. But also remember that the DA has two pay plans for, one for his attorneys that you all approved and then his DA general pay plan, if you will. And that was adjusted. So both sheriff and the DA are on their respective plans.
Okay. Well, I, I, I would say that obviously we're going to have to take this at a BOCC meeting. There'll be another discussion internally with the two, two one. I, I'm, I would, I have no problem with rescinding the policy. I have no problem with re, even keeping the county commission on a policy. I just don't think that the clerk, the treasurer and deeds should probably be tied to the county commission. I think it's reasonable to separate them, uh, no matter what. So I, I, we're going to have another conversation because this has to go to a BOCC vote. I think those are the two options that I'm interested in looking at, rescinding it altogether or just having a policy just for the county commission. But I, the clerk treasurer and deeds, I think it's fair to say that they can be separated, so.
Yeah, and we would be very open to moving forward that way.
Okay. Okay, so we'll handle this here pretty quick, I guess.
We'll work on it, okay.
Thank you.
Scott, you're up.
Scott, before you get started, can we get a quick update on these elephants?
You sure can. So we are in the birth window for Simounia, our, our first female. We actually started taking daily blood draws two weeks ago. And just like in humans, we're watching for that LH hormone to drop off the charts. And as soon as we see that drop, we'll be within twenty-four to forty-eight hours of delivery. So we are, we are, we are there. We're, we were hoping that nothing happened during this cold weather this week because that obviously has some other challenges for us. But real exciting times, so we will hopefully have some big updates for you all real soon.
Commissioner, might you like to have a ribbon cutting and we do the elephant birth?
It'll probably happen at night, so I don't know if we'll be able to organize that, so.
We, it's important to move on now, Scott.
Well, thank you guys for inviting me today. When I was preparing this, it's, it's not a, a great presentation in terms of where, where the information that I'm going to show you. And then when Tom sent out his kind of note to all the staff, it made me actually pause and think, is this the time for me to even present to this group? But I do think it's important that I share what I have to share with you today. Because I think everyone needs to really know what's going on at the zoo in terms of our CIP, in terms of the property, in terms of, you know, the, the facility that we are all proud of here in the county. So I'd like to just start, especially since we have a couple new commissioners. Every year we make a CIP budget at the zoo that we follow. And so for the last couple of years, we've done some major work on exhibits out at the zoo that needed repair. So in twenty twenty-three, you could see we spent about one point three million dollars. On the other side of the slide, you can see kind of where the funds for, for those projects all came from. We did get a SFOG grant, the shuttered venue operators grant in twenty twenty-one as part of all the kind of COVID money that was coming out and available. And so you're going to see SFOG come up in a couple of slides that we use those funds to reinvest in some of the facilities that needed to be repaired. So you can see in, in twenty-three, we, we had a busy year. We had about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in contingency projects. At the zoo, when we say contingency, that just absolutely means things that we were, were not planned. We always put money aside for when that HVAC system goes down, for when a pool breaks, for when we have, you know, just things that break out at the zoo that we, we have funds set aside that we can address those things. In twenty-four, again, we were able to put quite a few funds towards repair and we spent about a million and a half dollars. And you can see we spent the last of our SFOG money that year. And we started a couple of projects, so Penguin, you're going to see comes up here a few times. The Penguin exhibit is nineteen years old and it has reached some parts of it, its functional lifespan. So we've had to make new investments in like the wire mesh that is on top of that exhibit. We had some drain lines that had collapsed, various things that are just going on at that exhibit and we were putting funds towards that. So bringing us to this year, we have budgeted eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for our CIP work this year. And you can see the projects that we've kind of set aside. One of the things, though, that happens, it seems every year after the budget cycle is we get a plan, we set our teams out to get bids and start construction documents going, and then the unexpected hits. And this year in January, the second week of January, when we had those really cold temperatures, the acrylic panels at the Penguin exhibit cracked. So the Penguins are off exhibit right now. They won't be back on until we can figure out how we are going to address this problem. This, again, exhibit's nineteen years old. It's lived a, a rough life to this point. And we've got some solutions on hand, but we're not really sure exactly how much those new panels are going to cost. We've kind of estimated that this is probably about a three quarter of a million dollar project. So there are opportunities for us to go back to the donors of that exhibit and have them participate in funding some of these repairs. But I bring this up just to show you that we can really, really work on a budget and really get it hammered down to try to knock out some of the projects that really need to be done at the zoo only to have something else happen in a year and that kind of throws everything kind of in, into a spin. So obviously of this funding for this year, we are operating with the, the cut that we agreed to last year. And we're looking for donors, probably more so this year than we have in years past to try to help us reach some of these goals. So what I wanted to kind of talk about today was this five-year plan. We do have a five-year CIP list that we keep at the zoo. And as projects are done, obviously they go off the list and new projects come up. Right now, for twenty-five to twenty-nine, we have about a hundred and eighteen projects that we've identified that are important for the zoo. And you can see I've broken down from electrical to HVAC. We've got some buildings that need some significant roof replacements out there. The total cost is about seven and a half million dollars in those projects. As I interpret a five-year plan, I should be having to go through that list every five years. Meaning hopefully we're accomplishing everything we've put on that list. To realistically do that, we would need to spend about a million and a half dollars a year just on CIP repairs and have that contingency for those things that come up on the side. So the real question that we, we ask and we're, we're asking, you know, my bosses, our board, we're kind of working, you know, together, is how are we going to tackle this? What, what is the plan? How do we make sure that we're being fiscally responsible? Yet we also are taking care of this asset that, you know, collectively we've built for fifty-five years. So what does that look like? What is the future of this partnership look like? How do those operating agreements in the future support us taking care of, of the facility? So I looked at this in three ways. Right now, with our current operating agreement, we usually typically spend or budget, I should say, about eight hundred thousand dollars a year for the CIP line of the budget. So if we're thinking of this list as a five-year goal, it's really going to take us nine years to complete that list at this amount. If we're only funding it at, at this level. If we continue on with our budget that we have for this year, it sets us back even further. So at the current level, we're looking at a fourteen-year kind of target goal just to get the task done that we tried to identify for that five-year window. It doesn't take, you know, much to see, we're going to be kicking some of these problems down the road over and over again. And I know all of you are aware with your own budgets, that just keeps getting more and more expensive. So a project that we put off even a couple of years might be five to ten percent more expensive when we decide to tackle it. So that's another concern of mine is if I'm being responsible with the money that the county provides to support the zoo, I want to be able to tackle projects when it makes the most economic sense. And right now, we're not actually able to take advantage of some of those things. In a perfect scenario, which we don't have and we understand that, like I mentioned earlier, we would need about one and a half million dollars a year to get all of those projects done. And that would be under our current agreement, each side of, of the operation would need to pitch in about seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year. Which is something that I don't know that either side is comfortable today saying, yes, we could do. But again, this is just kind of an ideal scenario and maybe something that we could look for as kind of a target if we want to keep the same operating agreement in the future. So that's kind of the picture with, with our CIP right now. It's, it's not a rosy picture. I will tell you from the most part, if you come out as a guest, you probably don't see this. This isn't from the guest perspective, something that the zoo looks like it's in rough shape or that exhibits are falling down. A lot of this is back of house, support areas, things that are just, all of the buildings that are fifty-five years old and have kind of served their useful life expectancy. The other two big things that are kind of on the horizon for us are a couple of really significant CIP projects on buildings that are pretty much, they're going to be a, a financial toilet for us. If we keep putting money down, we're just flushing money away. That is the Velt and Savannah Building. So for those of you that are familiar with the campus, this is one of the largest buildings in the center of the zoo. It's also one of the original buildings and it is the building that is probably the most in need of completely going away. It really does not serve the needs of the zoo or the staff or the animals any longer. You all know, every five years, we go through an accreditation process with the American Zoo Association. In our twenty nineteen accreditation, this building was cited as does not meet modern zoological standards. That is something that I'm sure in our upcoming inspection will probably be noted again. And what that really means is that it, it means that for rhinos, for hippos, for giraffe, for the things that live in that building, standards have improved and standards have gotten strict and that building just no longer meets those standards. So you could look at that really simply in the amount of space that we have per animal isn't really where AZA would like to see us be. We've done some cost analysis with a couple of construction partners here in town who have given us huge price tags to renovate that structure. Being how it's constructed, it's fifteen inch solid concrete walls. There's a lot of things about that building that were built in a way that no one ever intended to expand it, to renovate it. So from a cost perspective, we are better off investing in, for these animals in a different area of the zoo. And most of you have seen in our historic master plans that we have an area on the backside of the zoo that we'd love to develop. And that's where these animals would eventually go. But as you can see, that development comes with really large price tags. And that's not a number that I'm asking from the county. That is just a number that we're going to have to figure out, how are we going to raise those funds if this is a project we decide that we're going to do? The other one, our Australia and South America area, this is a completely off exhibit building. Unless you've been on a behind the scenes tour with one of us, you probably don't even know this building is here. But they were, both structures were built in the nineteen eighties. One of them is actually a building that we moved in from Hutchison. For those of you that don't know, we used to have a breeding farm in the Hutch area. And when we closed the breeding farm down, we moved some of those structures in to the facility. And one of those buildings is an original building. They are just both in really need of renovation. They house about a third of our mammal collection and over half of our bird collection. So these are significant buildings in terms of our husbandry operation. So they're going to need to be addressed here in the next few years. So how do we tackle that? So we have a lot of, of, of challenges that, that we have facing us in terms of our, our structures out there, in terms of the property. And I just felt it was important, even though we are in, you know, pretty significant budget times, that we're, we're transparent with this and that everyone knows kind of what's going on out at the zoo. And we have this information that we can use to come up with novel solutions on how we're going to tackle this. My, my final slide is real simple. My request to the budget this year is that hopefully we can have that funding level at the four hundred thousand dollar mark. That doesn't fix our long problem, but it helps us from not following further behind. So that's what I had today. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Scott, thanks for that update. For some historical perspective, the CIP at four hundred thousand was the historic CIP until last year? And then we cut it to one fifty, is that correct?
When you say historic, historic means different things. Tim, do you want to come and speak to it?
When we renewed the operating agreement with Zoological Society in twenty seventeen, we put in, we, we fund the staff that are taking care of animals out there, so a hundred and twelve and a half FTE. And then we put in four hundred thousand, the, the agreement was that we would split CIP project cost with the society up to four hundred thousand dollars. And so they put in four hundred, we put in four hundred. Two years ago, they increased their share. We, we were capped at four hundred and so we've been at that amount since twenty seventeen now.
Twenty seventeen, okay. Any questions, commission?
Thanks, Scott. So this four hundred thousand on this slide, is that the same four hundred thousand that's back on page sixty-six? That one?
No.
Yes, correct.
On the right inside there? That's your request? Just wanted to make sure.
Okay, other questions?
This is good. I think that we, you know, some of the things I've been saying, Scott, is that we have to have a longer term discussion about funding revenue, funding models, things that, you know, we as a community and we as a commission and a county, how we fund some of these significant assets that we own, the zoo. some of these significant assets that we own, the zoo, in Truss Bank Arena, which we're talking about next, Exploration Place. You know, you've heard a lot of discuss, you and I have talked about this. You've heard a lot of discussion about some of the angst with property tax dollars. And you and I have talked about, hey, how do we get creative in making sure that these assets are, have secured funding longer into the future while also protecting property tax dollars here at the county? And I just want to publicly thank you, you know, you've been at the table, having those conversations with me and encouraging me in some of these regards. And also throwing up some caution flags in some areas about what's in the best interest of the zoo and, and the community. So these conversations are going to continue, uh, long into this budget year, uh, and beyond. Um, but the zoo is loved. It's a beloved, uh, asset that Sedgwick County has. The community loves it. You guys do a great job. Um, so I, um, I'm encouraged to keep talking about what revenue source is correct, stable, um, and allows you to do the things you need to do long into the future. Um, so we're going to keep that conversation going. And I'm sure we'll talk about this in the budget, uh, for the CIP, so.
Yeah, awesome.
Any questions for Scott?
Good luck with that elephant.
Yep, thank you.
The only thing I do want to clarify real quick is this actually won't be through CIP. Because of the management agreement we have with the zoo, it would be a contractual allocation that we give to them. So you will not see this in the county's CIP. This will be in your normal operating.
Yeah, I meant in the budget process. Yeah, sorry.
Sorry, I just want to be clear that for new commissioners especially, that they have their own little unique system over there at the zoo and.
And Lindsay, why don't you publicly, I mean, how do we fund the zoo? 112.5 employees that go through our general payroll and then this is the extra on top?
Correct.
On top of what we pay for buildings and?
And so when Tim talked about that funding agreement from 2017, um, back what we used to do was we would allocate all of the money for personnel. Typically it was underspent because of salary savings. And then we would write a check for that balance to the zoo at year end. So they would get any of those dollars, um, at the end of the year. So this kind of formalizes and guarantees some funding to them for this specific purpose. So it isn't just kind of depending on what happens with their personnel through the course of the year. So I think this is a much better funding model than what we had, um, up until this point.
Okay.
You know, the only other thing I think the commission needs to think about, and AJ is not here yet, but it'll be the same discussion with the arena, is what is the vision for the commission on the zoo? Do we expect it to be a premium showcase event center kind of concept? I mean, do you want to keep it at a premium level, which I consider today, I'd look to Scott, but I consider the zoo in premium condition today. Um, there's growth out there, there's things happening. Um, is that, is that the vision of the commission? Because if it is, then I think back to the chairman's point on some type of, then the revenue that we're talking about today is not going to be enough. Uh, then I think we have to have a serious public discussion about revenue stream for zoo and, and I'll let, I don't want to ruin AJ's entrance here, but same way with the arena. If we want to keep these at a premium level, then I think that's a discussion that needs to be had. And so, or if there's not, if, and I, nobody wants to be the one at the table saying, now give us a class B zoo. I, I know that's not going to happen, but, um, to keep this zoo at the level that we have become accustomed to in this community is a sacrifice. Um, and we're going to have to figure out, I don't think that whether we're talking 250,000 of CIP or 400,000 of CIP from Sedgwick County is not going to be enough to, to move this into the future. So just think about that, um, and discussions in the future on solutions.
Just curiously, do we know the history of CIP? When did that start? Did this go back to before the change to the five-year funding agreements that started in 2001, or was that before that?
So it's bounced around, uh, I think a lot of different ways over the years. Uh, this most recent iteration, yes, was the most recent funding agreement that the commission approved, uh, 2021? Am I thinking about that right? 2022? Okay. Um, so, uh, but these have always been our billings. There is a, I think we've talked about it. I think Commissioner Meitzner referenced it in one of his sales tax conversations earlier this year. There was actually a public vote to support the zoo, um, with some tax, property tax dollars. So I think it has always been, since Sedgwick County Zoo has been formed, that this has been our property. We have always paid the property insurance on those facilities. Um, it's been the long-term operating agreement in addition to the management agreement that these are our facilities and our properties. And so I think just inherently that means that it's our CIP.
And just as a reminder, what's our commitment to the zoo this, uh, current budget cycle?
Uh, the costs of their FTEs, uh, all of those personnel costs plus $150,000.
But do you know what the number is?
I sure can tell you in about two seconds.
How much? I think it was 9.6 million is what I remember.
It is 9.3. Very close.
So just as a purpose of discussion, so I've been an advocate for 10 years now that returning the zoo to a flat mill levy equivalent gives them stability and dependability and actually is in their best interest. And we've not done that. We've, we've done this in all kinds of different ways. But if you gave them the equivalent of the 1.359 mills, which they had before 2001, that gets them, this year would get them to 10,000, a little more than $10 million this year. So it actually would be an increase in their funding. And again, I, I don't know that it has to be property tax dollars because again, it's all the same to us. It doesn't really matter where the money comes from right now, but I would, I would suggest we dedicate, you know, sales tax funds to this purpose. And to me, um, I think that it, it protects them. I think that if they know they get those dollars regardless if they have 112 staff, 120 staff, that's up to them. They can choose how many staff they want. Question is, do we trust them to operate, maintain and, and, and do the best they can for the, the zoo? The people of Sedgwick County, if we trust them, then a block grant is based on a mill levy equivalent, in my opinion, encourages them to know exactly what they're going to get and to be efficient and invest dollars over time, however they like, take care of their, take care of the facilities as part of the agreement that we have with them is they have to take care of facilities. But again, I think that, um, that mill levy equivalent gives them the stability and dependability that they would like to see in their funding stream. And I think when they moved away from, when the county commission moved them away from, from a flat mill levy equivalent in 2001 to a discussion and, and a, and a ever-changing commitment to the zoo, it has not worked out in their favor. In fact, it had not been for the extra gift of 5 million for the elephants this time and 5.3 million in 2014 and the 6 million for the front gate. Had it been for those three gifts, they would actually be, they would actually be, uh, much better off with a flat mill levy, mill levy equivalent. We've caught, we've caught them up to where they should be by three separate extra decisions to, to, to fund them additionally. But that's, in my opinion, political and they would have already had the money by right had they had a flat mill levy, mill levy equivalent funding stream. So I just think, again, I'll, I'll bring it up again. Please don't attack me. I think it's in their best interest to have that relationship with the county. I don't know why we're not talking about what's best for them and, and the idea that we would trust them uh, with that, uh, with that block grant rather than us paying them, as we do today with first specific employees.
I, I appreciate Commissioner Howe's opinion on this. I, I'd say there's a couple of bridges that we had to cross. One was, we had to cross the bridge internally with the commission, I guess myself. And in the community was, okay, what's the role between Sedgwick County government and the zoo? And I've been convinced that we have a significant role. This is our zoo. This is our, whether I agree or disagree that parks and cultural arts are core services or not, it's irrelevant. This is our zoo and it's a great zoo and we have to make sure it's a protected zoo. So that was the first bridge. The second bridge is, I do think they need formulaic funding. I think that, um, City of Wichita has a program where they dedicate 1.5 mills to their cultural arts programming. It's strategic. Is it 1.5, Tom? What it? 1.0, one, one mill. It's a dedicated mill. No questions asked. Here's the mill. This is formulaic funding. They don't have to come and negotiate. I mean, this is what they do. Um, I, I may be pretty loose in that description. Maybe the two city guys, the previous city experience could help me with it, but pretty loose on that. Okay, good. The point being, it's dedicated, it's formulaic, it's strategic. My only contention is I don't, I think that we can do this outside of property tax dollars. I think we've got to find a way to do this strategic and formulaic that's offside, out of, out of property taxes. Um, that, you know, 30% of the people coming into Sedgwick County, this pool tax, this sales tax where 30% of the people that participate in our sales tax are from outside of Sedgwick County, coming to visit his zoo. So I, I just think that I'm, I'm all aboard with, the zoo's ours. Let's make sure it's great. I'm all aboard with strategic formulaic funding. I just think that we need to look at an opportunity to do this via sales tax and not property tax dollars.
Can you hear me now? Okay, um, I think the other concern I would have from a block grant perspective is these FTEs are on our staffing table. So they're receiving county health insurance benefits. They're on capers through the state. So to block grant to the zoo and then to have the Zoological Society take on those employees and everything, um, would take, I mean, it would be nuanced obviously because now you're changing the, the dynamics for those employees. So that would be the only, I think, well, I shouldn't say the only, the most significant hurdle to block grant funding would be that those are actually our employees right now.
And I understand that. I still think it's best for everyone, including taxpayers. I think the employees could work for the Zoological Society. They get the, they get the funding. They get their benefits through the Zoological Society. It'd be retirement and it'd be sick leave and vacation and all the things that employees deserve and, and expect. Again, I don't know why, again, why we can't have a conversation about how to do it differently. Again, I understand they've got capers today, but I mean, things do change. There's got to be a way to make a change if we feel like it's in the best interest of taxpayers and the best interest of the organization and the employees, if you will. I want that, I want them to take, you know, be taken care of, but I think they would be taken care of. The Zoological Society would have the funding to provide those, those salaries and benefits to those employees. I, I don't know that that can't be, can't be done. I think it could, I think it can be done.
Just on the concept of a designated mill levy amount for, for anybody, for anything, and we have this discussion, you and I do. Um, are we talking about carving a mill or some form of a mill out of our existing budget? Are we talking about above and beyond a mill now designated towards you? That would be, I don't, you don't need to answer it now. It becomes a question. I'm always hesitant to designate mills for certain entities because it takes away the flexibility of this commission in times of crisis management or just operations of government. That's kind of why we go through a budget every year to determine who gets what. In the world of priority, if we take, if we give mills to the zoo, and I'm not saying they're not worth it because it's a premium destination, who do we take mills from? Unless what you're referring to is to create an additional designation for mill for the zoo.
Okay, so right now we've got 19.6 million dollars that are 50% of our sales tax. It, it's more than enough to take care of our zoo. And they're a fund-first organization from sales tax funds. So I, I would say that we're going to, we're going to have sales tax funds to fund our zoo, the equivalent of 1.359 mills. If there's a, there is a zero sum game, game of dollars in that fund. And, uh, I don't think we're going to get below the, the money needed to provide the 1.359 equivalent to the zoo through sales tax dollars. I'm not advocating for new sales tax. I would do that if it's a property tax reduction, but I know I can't keep that conversation packaged. So, uh, if you separate the question, am I advocating for a new sales tax that's not necessarily tied to property tax reduction? Absolutely not. But if, if we can keep it packaged, I think it's a consumption tax dedicated to cultural and arts thing in Sedgwick County that ultimately would offset part of that 19.6 million dollars. I'll take that back. Part of our property tax funds. To me, that, that is absolutely something we should be talking about. And, um, again, you, you want to say what's best for the zoo. Again, this, this public-private partnership has been fine. But ultimately, we don't have any way to, um, verify any efficiencies or anything like, you know, we don't, we don't operate the zoo. We trust them to do that, to do that. Yet we are funding the employees, you know, and, and I think that actually it would be, be in the zoo's best interest to have the funds and let them manage the zoo to the best of their ability. I think that they have, uh, like it changes, it changes how they, how they manage the facility and manage the organization if it's money that's in their bank account all the time. I just think it's best, it, it's best for them actually to just be trusted with that fund. And I, I don't think this would increase taxes at all. It does, it does block up some of our funds. I get that. But the zoo is that important? Nobody, nobody here is going to stomach the idea of cutting the zoo, including me. Uh, so let's be clear. I think at the end of the day, we're going to fund the zoo. The, the question is, do we just trust them with the funds and let them manage the zoo? I think we could, we should and could do that.
One of the questions we would have to talk through is if we give them the funds, right now, right, all of those properties are ours. They're Sedgwick County's. We also pay the property insurance that's paid from the risk management fund. That's not paid for through this allocation. And so I think there are some additional complexities that would come about because of that. And Sheena has texted me to remind me that when employees are not vested with capers, it becomes a much bigger issue, um, to transition them. So I, I just, I don't want to make it sound like this is just a, something we could cleanly do through a, through a, like overnight budget process. There's going to be a lot of complicating factors, as there are with everything when you talk to finance.
Well, I appreciate it. And the conversation's important. I, I really feel like we're heading towards a trajectory of an inflection point, a big decision point. I think that what we're hearing from Scott and what we're going to hear from AJ with Interst Bank Arena is that is this going to require, um, additional revenues to keep this as a top-notch? And is, whether that's through public-private partnership or all-private or formulaic funding? I think I'm seeing the writing on the wall. Um, and some of this is Lindsay in my ear the last year telling me that, hey, what's coming is, is going to be incremental revenue. We're going to have to look at $400,000 a year may not cover in CIP, may not cover some of the big things that we need to get done. I'm not talking about the, the, the projects. I'm talking about the maintenance piece of what we have. And I think we're going to hear something similar from Interst Bank Arena. So I, I just think that we're heading down a trajectory that this conversation is going to be forced on us and what that conversation looks like. And the balance point's going to be, do we keep this thing short? Or do we really try to make these great assets even greater and what that looks like? So. But I, Commissioner Howe's idea about formulaic funding is, is a good idea. Just how do we draw this thing up? I think AJ's here. Hey, there he is.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and do an introduction for AJ and maybe get handouts from him so I can pass him out. I'm going to have you go to the podium, AJ. Um, so AJ Beleski is the general manager of Interst Bank Arena. Uh, I am the contract administrator for the arena um, because it is primarily a financial relationship these days. And so, um, we do have a contract with ASM Global that includes them managing the facility itself. Thank you, Pam. Uh, and therefore AJ maintains kind of an asset replacement program for us. Just so you all know, the way this works is different than the typical budget process. Our management agreement with ASM Global says that they will come to us by October 1st of each year with a budget, a capital improvement plan and kind of an operating management plan for the upcoming year. So this doesn't go through your typical budget process just because of how that management agreement was structured. So, uh, what I have asked AJ to do today, and bless his heart, he has done it very well. Um, he's going to tell you all about the needs and wants for Interst Bank Arena. And so typically what we see in their requests are the needs. And AJ has been a great partner with us to read through these each year and kind of whittle down the list to what we think the reserve fund can manage. Um, just for the new commissioners, notice we have a unique arrangement. The first $400,000 of operating income is retained by ASM Global, uh, for any given year. Um, that's basically the management fee that they earn and then everything else is split 50/50. And that goes back into the fund. We also get a dollar fifty of tickets that are eligible for it, uh, facility fee in our most recent management agreement. That dollar fifty comes back into the county. And then we are contractually obligated to match that on a dollar-for-dollar basis. But right now, that is the only general fund expense that we have for Interst Bank Arena. Everything else has been maintained through the arena reserve fund with that supplemental, um, operating income and naming rates. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to AJ to scare the pants off of you about all of the fun things that are coming up at the arena to keep it a premier facility.
Thank you, Lindsay. Appreciate that. And just ran into Ron Holt yesterday at the chairman's lunch and I said, thank you for setting us up for success. And this group, the county, did a fantastic job. And Lindsay mentioned the arena reserve fund. Here we are, celebrating our 15th anniversary. And we're still using that fund. It's, there's still dollars left. And I, I know it's not as large of a. It's, there's still dollars left. And I know it's not as large of a balance as it was back at the beginning, but that's just a huge kudos to this organization for setting us up that way. So just wanted to kind of review some of the major projects that we've done since we, since we opened in two thousand and ten. We're trying to keep that new car smell as long as we can. So you see some of those projects listed up on the screen. One of the largest ones, we renovated entrance C. I remember, again, with Ron, there was always this joke. If we get the NCAA tournament, can we renovate entrance C and make it twice as large because we're gonna need two-way traffic and all this? And so the, the day we got awarded it, I turned to him and then we started this conversation with the county. So we, we completed that. That was two point one million dollars back in seventeen. And then in two thousand and twenty, I'd like to say we planned this, but what better time than during a pandemic to do some major projects? We replaced the scoreboard that year, the scores table, and then also added electronic LED signage outside each of the entrances and each of the lobbies, which helps us with information, upcoming events, but also allows return on investment there as we sell those areas for sponsorship. We also, another major win coming out of the pandemic, we worked with Lindsay and the county on this. We were able to replace twenty-five-hundred of our retractable seats. So the first eight or so rows around the arena floor, we were starting to have the conversation, how are we gonna do this? We're gonna do it in stages. We'll do it one year at a time, north, south, east, west. And then shuttered venues operating grant came along. We were able to apply for that and we received a total of ten million, but five million of it was used to replace those seats. So that was a big win because it didn't need to come out of the arena reserve, something that would have otherwise. We installed a new perimeter sidewalk lesser on the dollar amount. I think that was a hundred and fifty thousand. But from a safety standpoint, we now have a sidewalk around the entire perimeter. And then also bollards. So a lot of conversation right now with what just happened in New Orleans on January first, the car incident there. That's been happening for a while. Luckily, we've worked with the county. We planned ahead. We put these bollards in back in twenty-two and some other ones in eighteen. And now we don't have to worry about that as much for some of the larger events. We also installed our new point-of-sale system, so a lot of money recently on technology. And then also the sound system was replaced. And then we just completed a Wi-Fi upgrade. That was about eight hundred thousand dollars. That was last year. So we feel like we're good going into the tournament. There's been a lot of work done. Pretty much everything you can see by the years, all the projects on that list, last time the tournament was here was in eighteen. They were supposed to be here in twenty-one. We all know how that worked out. But they were last here in eighteen. Look at all those projects that have been done since they were here last. And so this time when we host it, it'll be about, it's about selling the next one and getting the next one down. So we are, we feel like we're set up really well and we appreciate the partnership of the county and putting us in that position. So future projects, as we look ahead and some of the needs, we handed out our entire asset replacement plan. So this goes twenty years out through two thousand and forty-five. It's got all the details in it. Some of these, as, as you guys know, as we get further out, some of these are placeholders rather than specific items. But you'll see a lot of specifics on this list. But some of the major ones, vertical transportation is expensive, elevators and escalators. We have six of each of those in the arena and they don't usually get replaced completely. They last quite a while, the actual elevator itself, but there is a process called modernization of the elevator or the escalator. And so that's what those costs are that you see on the screen there for each six of them. We have those in our plan. I believe it's in like twenty-eight, twenty-nine timeframe. And we will, we plan to stage them out so we're not doing them all in one year. Another expensive piece of our operations is hockey ice. It's a, it's not cheap. There's a lot of maintenance involved in it to keep things going. And so replacing the actual ice chiller, the machine that freezes, it's ammonia-operated. It allows us to take the heat out of the floor and chill it so we can build the ice. That's a, a large ticket item of one point five million. And then the ice floor replacement itself, I'm not looking forward to, but it has to be done at some point. That's all the tubes that go underneath the concrete that have the ammonia going through them to, to chill the, or take the heat out of the concrete and chill it. So each of those adds up to about three million between the two of them. And then the last large item, again, about thirty years life expectancy. So again, we're celebrating fifteen for about halfway there, but three million dollars for the, for the roof itself. So just kind of summarize, um, numbers-wise, what we're looking at, what we just talked about. And this is a summary, high-level summary of what you see in the asset replacement plan that you have. But over the next five years, again, that includes, a lot of that's that vertical transportation. About nine point five million is what we're looking at. And then as you go out to year ten, we're closer to ten million. And then as you get to twenty years out, um, we are, our total is twenty-two million. Now, what that, that's capital request. So Lindsay talked about that process. Each year, we submit by October one, by contract, our budget, our operating budget and our capital request. And then we have a conversation generally throughout the fall about which projects we want to pursue, which ones we want to approve. And then going into the next year, we look to pursue those projects that are approved. Twenty-two million is our, is what we're asking for in total. And then on top of that, we have averaged probably closer to a hundred and fifty thousand in emergency repairs requests each year. So our management contract with the county says if something exceeds seventy-five hundred dollars a project or five thousand as a purchase and it's not a normal maintenance item, then it's an emergency repair. And so we've averaged about a hundred and fifty. We plan on that number probably going up as the building ages. Again, we want to keep that new car smell as long as we can and it's been a great partnership with the county to do that. You know, we've, I feel like together, we've done a great job of keeping the building looking really good. We get comments, and I'm not just making this up, pretty much every show that comes through, Figure Skating was just here, NCAA tournament, I guarantee we'll hear it. How nice the building looks, how clean the building looks. So we owe that to this organization to allow us to do these projects. But that's what we're looking at as far as cost over the next twenty years. And then when you add the estimated four million in emergency repairs, we're looking at about twenty-six million total through two thousand and forty-five. I will say I shared with Lindsay, first time I've ever gotten this question, I was giving a presentation to West Wichita Rotary last week and we talked about celebrating our fifteenth anniversary. And somebody remembered that the Coliseum, I believe, was about thirty-three years old. And they said, well, have you started talking about when you're gonna build the next one? And I said, no, we haven't. And we're halfway there. So, uh, but generally, that building was thirty-three years old. Now, I'll tell you, I'm not saying we need a new building by any means. We don't. But there can be other things besides just building a new building. There's, there's arenas out there that are much older than thirty years old and they just continue to reinvest in them. So anyways, we'll have that conversation way down the road, but I thought it was funny that it just came up. So any questions on, on dollar amounts? And we'll talk a little about, a little bit about needs and wants here on the next slide. So just a few things. So out of the twenty-two million, as far as what we determined, about four point three million of that are wants. So things that really don't fall into the maintenance, they would be nice to have. But you see carpet and furniture, just keeping, keeping the building looking nice is what that's all about. And a lot of that is in the suites. So right now, we have the same furniture. We have replaced the carpet in the suites since we opened with the same furniture in there as we had when we opened in two thousand and ten. Converting the concourse to LED lights. So we converted, you probably saw this on the list earlier as one of our major projects that we've already completed. That was in the arena bowl. So one thing that the tournament will see when they're back is our lights are LED. We can switch them on and off. It doesn't take ten minutes for them to warm up anymore, that kind of stuff. So that's good. But potentially converting the rest of the arena, the concourses, the service level, all of that to LED would be a nice thing to do. It's, it's definitely a trend in our industry. A lot of buildings are doing it or if they're building new, they're installing LED lights to begin with. So that's one of our wants. Signage and storage has a lot to do with just keeping some of our areas up to, up to speed. When the building opened, we had the Budweiser Brew Pub. We've added a lot of destinations throughout the building. So a lot of that three hundred and fifty thousand is related to some of the restaurant-type areas throughout the facility and keeping those looking nice. And then the want that I've always wanted personally, but we haven't, haven't accomplished it yet, but I like to say it's not if, it's when. But as an LED digital board on Kellogg, anybody who's familiar with the Kansas City area, I think it's when you take I-35 out of downtown, you'll see a digital billboard there that's devoted to the arena, T-Mobile Center. And it's just got their events, their sponsors, that kind of stuff on it. It would be awesome to have on Kellogg and that's our estimated cost for that because there is so much traffic, obviously, on that road. We have the billboard. It doesn't quite, I'd like to say it reaches Kellogg, but you gotta, you gotta look pretty well to see that. So this would be right in your face on Kellogg, LED board to advertise all of our upcoming events and also, again, sell sponsorships on. So that was about, oh, you don't get to break it. I'm kidding. So that was it for us for the arena, but definitely open for any questions.
Yeah, AJ, thank you. And we, again, on behalf of the commission, we just want to appreciate and tell you how much we, we're grateful for the relationship with ASM Global and your guys' organization. You did a really good job. So we, we really appreciate it. Very transparent. You work really well with our team. So thank you. Um, I, I, the only question I have is I'd like to know an update on the reserve fund. Oh, you're ahead of me.
Well, Commissioner Howell was actually even ahead of you. He was pointing at me. It's one, it was one point nine million at the end of last year. We do, I had told all of you that we did not expect any operating income last year. And actually, thanks to Justin Timberlake and a lot of, uh, older millennial women, I think, and, and men who might be in the room.
Any JT folks in here?
We nailed it. We understood the assignment. I did my part. And we actually now have a, a small amount of operating income. I say small, a hundred and fifty-ish thousand dollars that's coming into the operating reserve in addition to facility fee income. So wonderful news for two thousand and twenty-four that was unexpected. So we love when those fun acts come to town. We, we spend our money well. But real quick, could I ask you, AJ, one of the things that I think has fascinated me since I've become your contract administrator is the tightening competition for NCAA tournaments and hosting events, things like on the women's side. Can you kind of talk to how many venues are out there, how many win bids? And how that landscape has changed for you in order for us to try and secure those things to come here?
Yeah, a lot of what we do, I wish we were just waiting for the phone to ring and it was that easy. It's not. We're not waiting for the phone to ring for anything, whether it's a concert, comedian, or the NCAA. And so the, there's always competition, no matter what event we're going after, there's, there's always competition. You see a tour get announced. They don't, they're not as extensive as they used to be. Artists used to go out and play sixty dates and now, hey, our world tour got announced and you pull it up to see it and there's eight cities. So it's just very competitive. Same thing with NCAA. So we just bid on twenty-seven and twenty-eight, probably messed up the years here. We did not get those. But the reason and the NCAA, usually we, we get a letter that says, thank you and we'll try again in two years. But this one, they were very specific with us and they said, look, you guys have the event coming in twenty-five. We're doing this in two-year cycles now instead of four-year cycles. So because you've got it coming up in twenty-five, we're not gonna award it to you that quickly, but it will be back. And so we will be, I think it's next summer, we will bid for twenty-nine and thirty. So they're doing, again, two-year cycles. Now, there's only eight locations, eight cities, eight venues that get awarded each year. So eight cities host eight teams for the first and second rounds. So next year, when they go out to that cycle, there'll be sixteen sites. That's how competitive it is. Originally, their minimum seats was ten thousand. I think the county anticipated that going up to fifteen or it was twelve-five. They anticipated it going up to fifteen, which is reasonable to think. Instead, the NCAA dropped it to ten. So the reason being was on the west half of the country, they were having trouble getting bids at the time. And so they wanted to open it up to more venues. But we have obviously a great number of seats. I can tell you, everybody in this room probably knows how successful the tournament was in eighteen. And we have just a few hundred seats left for each of the sessions for this year. So no matter who, what team's there, what team's not, tickets have been sold, even if Lindsay's team, KU, isn't there. So we'll see. But it's, it's looking to be successful this year, just like it's always been. But yes, extremely competitive bid process for NCAA and the fact that we've shown, you know, last time we got a couple complaints on the sound system. We did the north entrance right in time for the tournament in eighteen. We've been very transparent with NCAA. Hey, these projects are being done for you. Now, we tell them that, but the cool thing is every event that we host benefits from them, right? The chairman's lunch yesterday used all the new LED digital displays in the building and it looked really good. So they, NCAA might be the driver for it, but all the events get to use it and it, it sets us up very well for success. So yeah, it's highly competitive bid process.
Our policy on when we get, when we, I don't know, profit share on our share of the operating agreement, is our policy that that goes to the reserve fund? Is that what we?
It's legal. I mean, it's not even a policy. It is, right now, that is statutory. That's basically how we set it up from the get-go and with the court measure. So, um, and I would argue, since it's an enterprise fund, we wouldn't be able to divert it.
Sure. Okay, good. That's good. Okay, any other questions for AJ?
I'm just wondering, we, are we satisfied, you know, this is gonna be going to property taxes pretty quickly? I don't remember how much was in the reserve fund when we got started. It opened in two thousand and ten. What was reserve fund at that time?
It was fifteen million when we opened in two thousand and ten.
So we've gone through that, roughly about a million dollars a year. And just looking at the CIP list here that AJ's presented to us, it's about, it's just a little bit less than a million dollars a year on average. Not for the nice to haves, but for the half-to-haves. And so that million dollars a year, this one point five million, or is that the number you gave?
One point nine.
Okay, that'll be gone in a couple of years. So what's our long-term plan? Are we, are we planning to make this a property tax-funded, maintained building? Are we gonna try to do something differently that's gonna generate some additional revenue to take care of this, this set of property tax? What's the long-term plan?
Well, so AJ is the, he, he operates the arena at our behest. So it's not his job to come up with a plan. It's our job to come up with a plan and.
Well, just, then I'll tell you, my colleagues, I think we need a plan. I don't think we, I don't think we should.
And the facility fee was a wonderful way to, the dollar fifty that we match has been a wonderful way to extend the life of the fund. But yes, that's exactly why you ca, he came to this budget retreat is because as we're talking about upcoming needs and as you are talking about consolidated services and revenue diversification, this and the zoo have to be on your radar.
So I, I would rather not wait until we run out of money to start the plan. I think we need to start that now, this year, this year. So I think we need to talk about what that's gonna be, but I, I don't, I don't ever plan on supporting property tax dollars to do what we're talking about here today.
I, I think that, now that, now that AJ's done and we've heard from Scott. And it's, it was a moot point while we had this fifteen million dollar cushion to rely on, but it is becoming a germane point now as we, as we end the life of that. I think the one thing, and I've talked to some of you about this before. These two attractions, the zoo and the arena, bring in outside people to this community to enjoy events and culture on the backs of the taxpayers of this county. It would be nice, when we're talking about a revenue stream, to increase funding for the arena and for the zoo if you could capture some of that through guest tax or other methodologies which already exist in this community. The problem is Cedric County has never gotten a share of that. I think that is a political discussion for the commission and the council to have back and forth about what we can do better regionally. We have to look past cities and look regionally now on how we can manage this better. So that's number one. And number two, I agree with you. I think property tax is a non-starter. So then it comes down to guest tax or sales tax designated for this type of activity, for these two especially, which are, and we all run assets, right? Every city has asset, the county. But in, in this region, there's nothing bigger than the zoo and the arena, not even close. Exploration place is kind of a, they're in a halfway zone that's a city-owned property, but a county facility, that has a history that's very unique. But this is clearly ours. The taxpayers of Cedric County built this. The zoo is clearly ours. The taxpayers of Cedric. The zoo is clearly ours, the taxpayers of Cedric County built this. It's a state attraction that is being carried on the backs of Cedric County taxpayers right now, and I think we need to change the math on that. So that's the political discussion, I think, that we need to be having, and I agree with you, Commissioner, it needs to be sooner rather than later.
I think if we ask our taxpayers, you know, do they want us to use property taxes to support the zoo or sales tax? I think you'll find, generally speaking, there's a lot, there seems to be fairly good support for that. If I ask them, I want to use property tax dollars to do this, I think you get a different answer. A.J., I love what you do, I love the, I love the arena, but at the end of the day, it doesn't have the same political support, I don't think, that the zoo currently has. I'll just say that. And I just, that's my personal opinion, I guess, but. The part of the problem is, there's a lot of folks in this community who have never even been to the arena, you know, they, they, they vote for it, a lot of the things that are there, they can't afford to go to. There are some people who really enjoy it, and they spent a lot of money going there, but there's other people don't get to enjoy that. The zoo's a little bit different, it is a, you know, folks take their grandkids, there's Wednesdays where they're cheaper to get there, there's free days, there's other opportunities for people to enjoy the zoo that are just different. And I think that the idea of using property tax dollars to support the zoo, I don't think there's any question, that's what we're going to do, we've always done that, it's always going to continue, in fact, it started out that way. Interest Bank Arena, I think if, if the question included, eventually, we're going to have to prop, you know, to support this with property tax dollars, if that was part of the initial question, I'm not sure people would have necessarily supported it the way they did. And so I just think it's, we're changing the situation a little bit now. It was, and by the way, the fifteen million dollars was really nice that we had that extra money. I have to tell you, I think it's been fantastic to have that money to get us to this point, but I just don't know if the, if the public thought at the time this would be a property tax-funded, you know, property tax-funded responsibility, or if this was something that would basically be, would be self-supportive. I don't think they, I don't think that question was out there that I'm aware of. And so I just think we're moving this into an area now that's very uncomfortable, because people are so mad about property taxes. They're, I mean, they're so angry, I can't tell you how angry they are. And if I start saying about using property tax dollars to take care of this arena, I don't know that, I don't know sure that that's the best answer. So we've got to find another solution. Thanks.
A.J. and Scott, thanks for the presentations. A thought, so years ago, there was a lot of turmoil about funding at Century Two or whatever, and you remember John D'Angelo and his group got together and did a little bit of an economic impact on events? And it was really, it helped change the trajectory of, and the impression. So I know you both, I think you both are on Visit Wichita Board? Are you on it, Scott? And of course, there's revenue, hotel revenue generated that goes, you're familiar with that. I'm wondering if we could take any, can you, could you do per event, and could you, Scott, do on your ticket sales to tell us, and your, A.J., for sure in your case, ticket sales, you can tell us outside of the Cedric County zip codes, fifteen thousand attended and X were from, probably even out of state in some cases. And same with you, Scott, can you, can you data mine, data mine your ticket sales to say how much comes from outside? And maybe we could throw, use that D'Angelo model, says, you know, when you're here, then you do, you know, ten dollars in gas or whatever, I don't remember it all, assume hotel or not, doesn't matter. And maybe we change that trajectory of, this is why we need outside other support to help maintain these events.
Yeah, we actually worked with Wichita State in two thousand and ten, I'm sorry, twenty, as part of our ten-year anniversary to do an economic impact study, so we already have one through the first ten years. We could, we could work to do that again, to get an updated version of it, for sure, that tells you how many people are coming from outside of the city, and also, it gave us the economic, economic activity that the arena had generated.
Well, then, as Tom was saying, it might take political support, you get us the data, and then a few of us do the politics of campaigning with the cities and with Visit Wichita, et cetera, to say, hey, you know, what can we, what can we do to assist, especially just on, we're just talking about maintenance and upkeep, basically. Anyway, just a thought.
Hey, can you clarify, we get a portion of some ticket prices, clarify what that is?
So in the most recent management agreement that we signed with ASM Global, they designated a dollar fifty of their facility fee that would come to Cedric County. Now, there are some limited shows where we cannot, the promoter won't allow that fee, but where it is permitted, ASM collects it, it's, I go and look at their financials every month, I get to see exactly what that figure is, and then, once the audit is complete, which should be next month, then we get a check from ASM Global, one check for operating income, one check for that facility fee, and then if I'm on top of it, I work with Lori and to get, if you remember, that budgeted transfers program in the finance budget has budget authority there to support a transfer into the arena reserve fund as a dollar-for-dollar match.
Okay, that makes sense.
And I think we planned on, and it's also come to fruition, that's generated about two hundred and fifty thousand a year from the arena before the match.
On average.
Very good.
Just from the arena, yeah.
Okay, other questions? Okay, we're good, A.J., thanks. Appreciate it.
Hey, just, I don't get very many times to talk to this group, so just thank you for the partnership, going all the way back to two thousand and eight, seven, I think is when we signed our agreement, so just, we appreciate it. Never worked in a building where it's been this great of a partnership with the client over the years, the arenas that I've worked in, so just really appreciate it.
Great, A.J., thank you, sir, appreciate you.
I'll pay you later, A.J., for saying nice things. There was, dang it. Oh, and I heard that you're going to have a group of WSU Tech kids out at your facility tonight? Do you want to tell them about that real quick, since we're in the facility? I think it's cool.
From what I heard, sorry, this mic is a lot louder than that one. Anyways, they're going to get a backstage tour of monster trucks this afternoon, and then they're going to get their very own touch-the-truck session where they get to get in a gravedigger and look under the hood and see how everything works behind the scenes at Monster Jam, so that's going on today.
Last formal presentation of the afternoon.
Okay, Tim Kaufman is going to talk senior centers now, so if everyone wanted to take a seat.
Thank you, Lindsay. Here we go. Thanks, Commissioners, this afternoon, we're going to talk a little bit about senior centers. It's going to be pretty high level, but I've got some options available for you. This is the big picture on aging services, so there's fourteen million dollars. The bulk of that comes from the feds, some of it comes from the state, and then there's a smaller amount that comes from Cedric County, and there's an aging mill levy. That is about three million dollars, so about twenty million dollars of the total that we spend on aging services in Cedric County comes from aging mill levy, and this is how we divvy it up. Senior centers is on there, that's going to be the primary focus of our talk, but I'll touch on some of the other stuff that we do as well. This is the senior center funding agreements that we have in place based on the budget that was adopted last August. So in 2025, these are the funding amounts for the different senior centers. And we've also, within the last two months, done an assessment of all the different senior centers. So we went out and we talked to all the senior centers, and we looked at some management information stuff that we offered to, in 2023, we gave all of the senior, the large senior centers, but not the senior clubs, a software tool that allowed them to track people that came through, get an average daily population number as well, so we've got that data for the first time. That's updated, yeah, that's, that's the stuff that happened in 2024, and we just did those interviews this last month, but that's the updated number. So on any given day, there's an average of four hundred and eighty-seven people at those eighteen senior centers. Many of those show up to have meals, because there's meal, there are meal sites at thirteen of those senior centers, but we'll get into that as well. So we spent about seven hundred and seventeen thousand dollars on senior centers from the aging mill levy. While we were out, we talked to them about the money that they received from the cities that they're in, and there are eight different cities that contribute money to their senior center. It's about six hundred and eighty to eighty thousand dollars, fifty percent, or seventy-five percent of that comes from four different senior centers. So there's ten senior centers that don't get any money from the city that they're in, and there are another four that get a very small amount from the, the city that they're in. So we are, we continue to be the primary funder of senior centers, and they're really designed and driven by local choice, and so that's, it's a little bit different, as I've got this together this week, there's all kinds of parallels to other things that we've talked about. We just talked about two different arrangements where we've got, we own the facility and we give money to another party to run that. In this instance, we don't own that facility, but there's this impression among those four hundred and eighty-seven people that go, that it's a county obligation and that sort of thing, and so it's, it's a unique situation and a unique arrangement that we've got with our partners there. So what do they do in those senior centers? They are really good at socialization for seniors, and we know that socialization is important as people age, it helps diminish the opportunity for health, negative health impacts. Socialization is important, we know that it's important. They do that through a number of different programs, exercise, education. Thirteen sites are congregate meal sites, so that means that they offer their facility to another organization who provides the meal, and those meals are paid for with, mostly with that federal funding that we showed on the first slide. So the senior centers don't cook the meals, they don't deliver the meals, with a few, they have some special events, they have parties, that sort of thing, but the meal sites for folks are funded through other mechanisms. Here's the things that we do, other things that we do with that mill levy money. So we've got a number of different contracts with people for community-based services, we've got a number of contracts with people for in-home and in-home services. So there's about six hundred thousand dollars right there that we spend on interventions for folks to make sure that they don't go into a higher level of care. The goal of aging services is to allow people to age in place, and we don't, we want to help them defer going into a higher level of care for as long as we can. And so these are two of the areas where we do that, again, with aging mill levy money. And then the department provides a number of different services as well. Sometimes it's because we couldn't find a vendor to do that work, sometimes it's because we've got some expertise, but these services and the services on that last slide are things that we know keep people from going to a higher level of care. An example here is short-term case management to help someone apply for benefits, or a minor home repair, a ramp, or some grab bars in someone's home can be the difference between going into intermediate or nursing care or staying at home. And so these are really low-cost, but there's lots of them, individual interactions with people, interventions to keep them in their homes. Talk a little bit about the larger ecosystem, so again, Older Americans Act is federal funding. For us, it's about four point seven million dollars. It's pretty limited, pretty narrow in the things that will, it will fund, and we get that through the state of Kansas. The state of Kansas also funds the Senior Care Act, and so there's about two million dollars there, a different set of services that are paid for. And then what we've always tried to do over the last forty years is use aging mill levy to fill gaps that those other systems don't pay for. So as we think about populations and increase, lots of different parallels, the last week that we've talked about stuff, yesterday, we had EMS come in and talk about their call volume, and it explodes. One of the reasons it's exploding is because of this right here, we've got, we continue to see senior population increase, their need for services increases, they call ambulances more. We know that there's going to be a continued increase in the number of seniors. The fastest-growing senior population right now is eighty-five plus. We know that right now, it appears that in the next thirty years, the number of folks that are over a hundred years old will quadruple, so the demand for services is going to continue to increase in that regard. And so we know where we're headed with this. We do, the Department on Aging does a needs assessment, and they do an area plan for those federal dollars, and so they do surveys, they do focus groups, they do literature studies to figure out what's the best way to spend that federal money. They apply those same, the same things that they learn there in a way to spend the state dollars, and then it also informs what we do with our aging mill levy plan. So it's research-based, it's science-based, and it's thoughtful as we go through, and we try and make changes. Changes are hard for all of us, I think as we get older, they sometimes get a little harder for us to accept, but that's kind of where we're at. We also partner with lots of different organizations in the community to help deliver services. Certainly don't see all of the services being delivered by the department or by the senior centers. We've got seventy different partners that we email once a month to talk about what we're doing and what they're doing, and there's a large network of folks out there trying to care for older adults. So our current senior center allocation process is homo, it's a little over twenty years old now, and when it was implemented, it was implemented because there was dissatisfaction in the way senior centers were funded. And so the county managers at that time asked us to come up with an approach that would satisfy folks, and we did for a while, and it won an award back in the mid-two thousands for the model that we'd implemented. We've got seven different funding levels, we've got seven different corresponding contractual expectations that we evaluate people against every year in that regard, but it has not kept pace with costs of inflation. We're spending more than we did in two thousand and five, but not a lot more than we did in two thousand and five. And so, again, those communities that haven't invested at all in their senior centers really look to the county to help, and even the communities that invest a lot of money in their senior centers continue to look to Cedric County and the Department on Aging to increase funding for their senior center operations. And we are, as I mentioned, we're still the primary funder for senior centers in Cedric County. We do offer technical assistance, we, as I mentioned, we spent money to get them all management information systems, we do some programming and advice for them in that regard, but, so we partner with them in a lot of different ways. And again, I would say that the service delivery that happens in a senior center is prevention-oriented rather than intervention-oriented. You know, that conversation comes up in a lot of different ways. We talked earlier, last week, I guess, we talked about the opioid settlement money, how much do we spend on prevention, how much do we spend on intervention? That's a difficult question, and we're always looking for advice. So we've thought again about, is there a way to do things differently? And we think that there could be ways that we could do things differently. I'm going to talk about three different options. One would be a fee-for-service model, another would be where we would become much more involved in the operation and take away some local control. And when I, I'm going to talk about local control a little bit, I'm talking about in that community or in that senior center, that's the local control that I'm referring to. And then another approach would be to do a block grant and increase local control and really have the county back out a little bit from that process. Any of these could be paired with flat funding or decreased funding. Right now, to submit a decision package, we would be expected to also identify a cut, a corresponding cut somewhere else, and I just can't see anywhere else in the budget that we would want to do that. So that's part of the context that I used as we talk about these next three options. If we were to, we could implement a fee-for-service process, we could take the money that we spend right now for senior centers, we could develop prices for the services that were, we recognized as important, as services for seniors, we could set that price, and then we could make that information available to folks and see how, who wanted to respond. They've got expertise that, there are certain things that senior centers do well, some of them specialize in things we could certainly... Some of them specialize in things we could certainly buy from those organizations in that way. It would probably create a setting where there's a reduction in an array of services. People may have to travel a little bit, go to different senior centers to get services that they're looking for. But that would be one option, is we could go from the grant process that we have now, the contract process that we have now, to a fee-for-service approach. Another approach would be to increase our involvement. We could continue to provide a contractual amount of funding, but we would become much more involved in the process on how that money was spent. Again, that would be a loss of local control. So we would be telling, we would be approving purchases, we would be approving activities that were going on in the senior center with those county dollars. Senior centers would then have an option, while they could either generate their own, they could find alternative funding sources, maybe the city that they're in, maybe grants, if they wanted to offer things that we didn't identify as high priority. So that's another oper, that's another approach that we could take if we want to change up what we're doing now. And then lastly, we could go to a block grant approach where we would just say, much like Commissioner Howell just described for the zoo, we would give each senior center a flat amount of money and say, do good with this money and we'll, we'll kind of monitor what you're doing, but give you control in that regard and back away a little bit. Again, that may require organizations to identify additional funding if they were wanting to expand their array of services. But the real question for today is, how should we prioritize spending for older adults here in Sedgwick County? What's, what's, what are our priorities? And again, from my perspective, it's a balance between prevention and intervention. Do we want to continue to spend money in the ways that we have? Or do we want to acknowledge the fact that we're going to continue to see an ever-increasing segment of the population over the age of sixty that are probably going to need interventions to help them remain in the home? Or do we want to continue to fund prevention options being done by good partners? Senior centers are good partners, they do good work, but the focus is primarily prevention rather than intervention. So that's really a, a policy question for the commission. Lots of really smart folks in the Department on Aging that have opinions on that, but really looking for some direction as well. So be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Tim, for the presentation. I feel like you've given that presentation a few times. I have, I do have a couple of questions. Aging services, we spend fourteen million. Aging mill levy, we spend three million. How do you determine what goes under the aging mill levy category and what's just a part of the overall aging services budget?
So those fund, the, the, the other eleven million dollars are much more tightly described. So the, the federal funds, there are seven different acts under which we can spell them. There's a taxonomy on how we can spend that money. So we spend that money the way the federal government tells us to. We spend the state money the way the state, the state limits what we can spend it on. And so those are, that's the bulk of the money. Then we've got three million dollars in aging mill levy, and we use that to try and fill gaps. Senior centers are one of those things that's a gap. You cannot spend federal, Older Americans Act money on operations of senior centers. So if you look across the state, and I think if you look across the country, senior centers are funded primarily with local dollars, that you just can't spend federal money on
Okay, that's helpful.
Senior centers. So lots of just different categories like that.
Can you go back to slide eighty-one? That's the senior center funding and participation. You had mentioned this is an updated assessment. Do you know, there it is, average daily unduplicated participants, these are updated numbers, you said?
Yes, they are.
Do, where these senior centers are at now, are they on, in the correct funding formula? Do we, did we give any analysis to that? Do we have any of them that are not where they're supposed to be, based on the funding formula that was frozen in twenty nineteen?
Yeah, if these were the only two criteria that we used, there are, there's a misalignment. There, one of the things that happened in the pandemic is people got used to staying home. You see it in restaurants, you see it in movie theaters, you see it in senior centers. Nobody has bounced back to that pre-pandemic level, including senior centers. And so now we know that the criteria that we had identified in the past is probably, we, we've got folks that aren't, that haven't bounced back yet. And so if we were to apply these numbers to the current, to that old formula
There'd be cuts.
Which we're trying not to use, there would be cuts, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Well, this is information that I've come into the last couple of years, obviously, and Commissioner Howell's been doing this for a little bit. And Commissioner Meister, any other questions on senior centers?
I was just curious, Commissioner Howell, what are a hundred and twenty-three people doing down at Derby every day?
I'm sorry, say that question again?
What are a hundred and twenty-three people doing every day down at the senior center?
Well, actually, this is a, and that may not be the right number. One of the challenges they have is getting people to check in, so there's a lot going on down there. They have exercises, they have nutrition programs, they have socialization programs, transportation programs. They do home health, I'm sorry, home safety checks. They do a lot of, they do all kinds of things down there. But to be clear, Derby, City of Derby puts in about double what we do. On top of that, they also still charge fees to the users. So there's a lot more than a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars going into that. And I would say this is nationally-recognized senior center. They are, they are one of the ones, I think, that have the highest level of services anywhere in the nation. So it's really quite, in fact, in fact, if you didn't hear the news yesterday, they're in the process of actually building a brand-new center. I don't know exactly the details of that, but that's coming, up and coming. They're going to raise an, an old church, I guess, and build a brand-new building. So anyway, there's a lot going on. Let me also point out that Derby does draw people from outside the county, as well as all over Sedgwick County, go to Derby Senior Center. So it's a destination, if you will, that people from west Wichita, west Sedgwick County will go, go to Derby. They do track the residences of those folks. If you want the data, we can get that to you. But it is, it is, they've been at that level of funding for probably more than fifteen years-ish, since that formula came out. I think they've been at the highest level. One of the arguments, may I, Chairman, may I continue? So one of the arguments that we've heard since I've been here, and that is that they're, these are flat-funded subsidies, if you will. And of course, in the last twenty years, there's a lot of hap, that has happened that causes their expenditures to go up, and we've not recognized that with any type of adjustment in their funding. In fact, a few of them, before twenty fourteen, a few of them would climb up that ladder of funding through that formula. But really, in twenty fourteen, everything was kind of frozen. And then that stayed that way for a number of years until I think it was twenty eighteen or nineteen, I'm not sure exactly the year. But there was a motion basically to freeze funding and to no longer follow the formula, which is interesting because we've, we've continued to use these thresholds for funding. In other words, there's kind of a hold harmless approach. If someone's been receiving that level of funding, they continue to get that level of funding. And then last year, I think we adjusted three of those through an amendment to our budget. Hayesville, Mulvane, and Clearwater got a slight increase last year. That was af, after about three years' worth of effort to get that to change. So Mr. Chairman and others, you know, this goes back to nineteen eighty-two. There was a, a ballot question that said, shall Sedgwick County levy up to one mil? There's actually two questions. The first one didn't make it to a ballot, but the second one did. And the, and the question at that time was, shall Sedgwick County levy up to one mil for a service program for the elderly? And the way that's worded, I believe, it's intended to be a block-granted fund. And the word "service program" doesn't really have a definition in that question. But I have nine articles, I'll be glad to share with anybody who wants them. I have nine articles, I went to the library, went through the microfiche, microfiche, I call it, and pulled articles from nineteen eighty-two to see what was the, the intent of that question. And I have data from both sides of the equation, people who were rallying for defeat of the question, as well as people who were rallying for its passage. And generally speaking, the elderly folks of our community were trying to get it to pass. And the people who are smaller government people who were trying to not have a tax increase, and it was viewed as a tax increase. They were rallying for its defeat. And interesting, our, our, our chief counselor, not Justin, but before Justin, one of the commissioners asked him to interpret the, the actual question. And they interpreted the question. And I have a, a letter from our chief counsel that said that that plain language to be interpreted just established a limit of one. It did not mandate any actual mill levy. So the range then with its passage is zero to one. So what they're saying is these elderly folks were actually advocating for a limit of spending. I don't find that to be plausible. That doesn't make sense. That's the legal definit, legal understanding, basically, on plain language of the question itself. And you're telling me that the people who are small government people were, were rallying for its defeat, that would limit their taxes? That doesn't make sense. So anyways, it turns out, it does say up to one mil. And one thing that the, the articles talked about at that time was the creation of an aging advisory council, if you will, that would help direct the funding up to one mil. And the following year, this was after this was done, we had over, over point-eight mils, like it was point-eight-four, point-eight-two mils that was dedicated towards senior programs of Sedgwick County. Now, we had programs before that. There wasn't one like this, was the first time this had been done. There were other programs before that that had been funded through the county. But this was essentially using new tax, if you will, to take some of that burden. And again, it was about nineteen, about twenty seventeen or so, twenty, I think it was twenty seventeen, right before budget deliberations, one of the commissioners came up with a list of the fifteen ways we spend money in this part of the budget. And they, and they listed them in terms of priority, one through fifteen. And the last priority on that list of fifteen was senior centers. And again, that was something that a commissioner and a staff person put together. That wasn't like we voted on that. But that's been referred to over the years, saying that senior centers are low priority and everything else is higher priority. I would argue that the other fourteen items on that list have other sources of funding as well. Things like Meals on Wheels have state funding, and might, actually, maybe it's federal pass-through funding. But there's funding from other sources for those fourteen programs, whereas senior centers are completely funded through, you know, the money we give them is completely funded through property tax. And so the question I have is, you know, I view that nineteen eighty-two question, we could repeal that, but I, I view this as a mandate. I think that up to one mil should be available to be spent for helping seniors. And we have a growing population, in fact, I've got charts to show the population growing from when that question was passed for the next hundred years. And I can show you the projections are that we're going to have a vastly much older population in Sedgwick County. That's our trend right now, is we have an aging population. And the number of people aged sixty-five or over in Sedgwick County is going to be, I believe, over twenty-five percent or so here in about fifteen or twenty years. My point is, when this was passed, it was about half that. So it's a grow, it's a growing part of our population. And anyway, so this has gotten highly, I'd say, highly political. It's been political since I've been here. It's, I, I think there's been two arguments. One argument says that these senior centers are wasting money, and they should just pay for themselves. We shouldn't be paying for socialization programs. I would tell you that senior centers do a lot more than socialization because that's how, a lot of these fourteen programs are delivered through senior centers. Transportation programs, home safety checks, you know, they do, they do health assessments, they do vaccinations, they do, all kinds of stuff happens at senior centers. And so if that senior center did not exist, then I don't know where those services would be, would be serviced from. So I, I would tell you, there's that, that aspect. It's interesting also that when Sedgwick County passed its mill levy question, that Wichita backed out of providing service, of, of funding to their senior centers. They do tend to provide spaces for them to meet in, like Linwood, Linwood has a community center, I guess, in Linwood Park or something. But these folks will meet in those locations. And Wichita provides, if you will, some space, possible utilities and other things like that. So there's not like a zero cost to Wichita. But they don't subsidize them the same as other cities do. Every other city on this list provides money from their city budget to keep the senior centers up, whereas Wichita does not. And anyway, the second argument is that there's some inequity on how this is doing. Now Derby gets a huge amount, and again, it's because it's a very popular senior center. And the argument has been, you know, David Dennis isn't here, but I'll just argue on his side for just a moment, that there's inequity because of where the money comes from and where the money goes. He feels like it's unfair to District Three to have, basically, provide a great share of the government tax burden, and yet the money flows to other side of the county, feel like it was inequity. And my argument back to that was, the money is being spent where people utilize the services. And I think that, you know, Oakland, for example, I don't know that I would ever argue that there's not a need in Oakland. And, and again, they also draw people from far away, far away from Oakland that come, come and use that senior center. And the Improvement District is providing funding to the senior center there in Oakland in the, in the Improvement District, or frankly, they're, it's not, not a city, it's a very, it's a very small organization, and they have a very small tax base. And so they're providing about, remember right, about twenty mils of property tax from their Improvement District. I mean, I'm probably way off. What's the number of that? Eight, ten? I don't know. Anyway, it's a lot. It's eight or ten mils, maybe I'm, I'm way off. I can get you the exact number if you want. But they're providing like, let's say, ten mils of property tax from Oakland Improvement District to keep their senior center open. And they were talking the last couple of years, if we don't, you know, see an increase in funding, they would have to close that senior center. And anyway, so having said that, there, there's a lot to this discussion. I don't know if I agree with any of the proposals to change funding. I think that the funding formula took years and years to create that. There was incentives to provide more services to more people. The, the aging community rallied and, and worked with the commission and actually pressured the commission for numbers of years to get that formula in place. And we didn't really have any public hearings or anything like that when we, when we froze that, it just happened during a budget cycle. So it was done essentially without a lot of public awareness. So I don't know that I agree with changing what we've done here. I think the formula actually has value. I do think that the numbers probably need to be adjusted for inflation just a little bit. I don't know that they're, these are exactly the right numbers. Again, if you want to change the way the funding works, I think there should be a hold harmless clause. None of these centers can actually withstand reductions in funding, or I think we're going to cause them potentially to close their, close their service centers, their senior centers entirely. Let me see, anything else I want to say here? The fee-for-service model, I have a question, I guess, for Tim. What, what, can you give me an example, what do you mean by that exactly?
Sure. We could ask all the senior centers how many wanted to do an, an exercise class, and we could set a price for exercise classes. And then they would just submit an invoice at the end of the month to say, we offered eight exercise classes, and there are eight people in each, and we'd pay them for sixty-four units of exercise.
Okay, I have, I guess, one more comment, and I have one other question. And that is, the comment is, the aging advisory board frankly does not drive policy at all. I think we're missing an opportunity to use them to determine, if you will, the best way to use the dollars that are in this department. I think that they ought to have a greater role earlier in the budget process to help determine how that money is allocated for these ser, these services. There is a, you know, a regional representation on that board for a reason. I think they ought to have a greater role in helping us determine how to allocate those funds. And second of all, to my first, one of my first comments was, I believe this ought to be, you know, mill levy, the mill levy funding that we do provide, I think ought to be considered, you know, block grant-type funding. But I understand part of that fund is going to the aging department, if you will. We're using it for staff and for vehicles and for operations of our aging department. It's not all going towards programming, if you will. So if, if you look at the cost of programming that comes from aging mill levy, I think you're not seeing the right number. The, the program is only a portion of that mill levy equivalent. So I, I guess I'd like to say, I'd like to challenge us on how we represent, if you will, this dollar to the public. I don't think it's accurate. If you want to comment on that, please, please do so.
Commissioner Howell, I know that we've talked before about the advisory council and their engagement. And so as we prepared this presentation, we did talk to the advisory council last month about what ideas they had. And they are, I would say, based on the, the lack of suggestions, they may be satisfied with the current environment.
Okay. Tim, I appreciate this presentation. I know, Tom, I've kind of, in my mind, you're hiring a new aging director. We don't currently have an aging director, is that correct? Okay. So in my mind, I thought that I would just kind of wait on this conversation until someone is in that position and sit down and in my mind, I thought that I would just kind of wait on this conversation until someone is in that position and sit down and after they get a good feel for the department, sit down and visit about the formula. I do know, I Tim alluded to it. Right now, there's senior centers on here to where if they were on that twenty-nine formula that's been frozen, they would have a reallocation here and many of them would go down. Um, I know Park City has a brand new senior center that's coming onboard their building. It's right across the street from an assisted living facility. So those numbers are going to go up. So I mean, I just, I think that we need to have a real conversation with whoever comes into that leadership role in the aging department. Um, as to what they foresee and, and I think we can get a little bit more creative on it, but but that's all the information I need at this point in time. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay. Appreciate it, Tim. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, that is all of our presentations. And now is the, for the last few minutes here, or as long as we need. Um, I think this is commissioner's chance, and we have three other electeds in the room. I'd like to have them have a shot. At some point, we can give them a shot now, or we can give them a shot after the commission speak. So, electeds? Okay, come on, come on.
Well, I wasn't expecting to be put on the spot, but, so I just want to give you an update on that Senate Bill one nineteen, which is the treasurer's office, Trevor's treasurer's bill. On February eleventh, we went to the Topeka and we testified before the Transportation Committee in the Senate. And there was some, there was a lot of positive feedback, but some negative feedback because in the end, it essentially takes sixteen million dollars away from KDOT to fund the treasures over the, over the, between, from the state of Kansas. But, um, so after that meeting, they got with me and asked me if I would reach out to Ty Masterson. I did get in touch with Ty Masterson. Um, and asked him if he would move our bill over to Ways and Means because they felt like if it stayed in transportation, it would die. Um, Ty has moved it now to Ways and Means, which is where it's setting. I just looked and it's not scheduled for your hearing yet or anything. So that's kind of where we're at right now. We're hoping that it does move forward and can get, get out on the Senate floor and get voted on. So then we can move it to the House. We've always had luck in the House. So we decided to start in the Senate this year since that was where our holdup has always been. Um, it sounds kind of positive at the moment, but again, that, the big question is, is how's it going to make up that sixteen million dollars that essentially what our reallocation is going to do is take away from KDOT. That's where we're at.
And Brandy, can you, uh, I know we've had a couple of discussions, but can you let everybody know how many like new treasures are in the state and timing and things?
There's been some talk too about the treasurers getting together and doing something drastic if we could get all hundred five treasures onboard to do something. Um, this year, well, in October, there'll be fifty-four new treasurers coming on. So we had that many retirements and that many. So it's, it's a good opportunity to do something drastic at the moment. One of the thought is, is do we close down the office for a month or something and put the same signage on the door that says contact your state representative and, and the exact same message all across the county or all across the state? I don't know how many of the older treasurers would be onboard to do that. I mean, there's always talk and, and they say, they say they're onboard, but I think when it comes down to it, are they going to be onboard to do it? I know for me in Sedgwick County, I'm okay to do that. I'm not close to an election time. That's, that's the big thing. It's, it's political. Um, just kind of what that reputation is going to be.
And so the, the sixteen million shortfall is all the treasurers going through the same thing that you're going through, including Johnson County?
So all the treasures essentially right now, it's a thirteen million dollar shortfall across the state is what we're having to be subsidized property tax money. And, oh my gosh.
This has really got you choked up, I see.
It does. I see I'm out of water too. Um, so the sixteen million dollars is what we're wanting to do is we're wanting to reallocate some of the funding. So let's say you come into the tag office, it costs thirty dollars to pay for a registration fee. It's thirty dollars. Right now, Sedgwick County gets seventy-five cents of that. The state gets twenty-nine, twenty-five of that. So what we're asking to do, thank you Lindsay, is to reallocate that money and give us five seventy-five of that and give the rest to the state. And if we do that across the entire state, that's where the sixteen million dollar shortfall comes in to KDOT because our money when we send it to the state, it doesn't go to the Department of Revenue. It goes to the highway. It goes to the highway. And then highway turns around at the end of the year and does a transfer over to Kedor, um, in a tune of about fifty-six million dollars, which then essentially funds Kedor. So it could still work. Maybe they, they reduce what they're giving Kedor because Kedor used to do all this work and they've passed it down to the treasures. So there's no, so the the argument is, is they're not doing the work now. They don't have the staff there to do the work now. So where's their money going? Um, we're doing the work. I've talked with Commissioner Meisner about this too. What if we shut down on a Friday afternoon, two or three times a month? And, and just to try to reduce some of that, that expense that's there. I, I don't know. There's, I mean, there's some options there just to be drastic. And I just want to let you know that I'm, I'm thinking of some of those options and, and what can we do to help reduce that funding? Um, if we do get to the point where it doesn't pass, and I know commission has already set that resolution saying that, um, you're not gonna subsidize the tag offices after this year. And the estimate this year is nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And so in order to, to make that up, I'm essentially laying off twenty-five frontline clerks. And I'm shutting down an office, but on the flip side of it too, I'm in that lease at the Kellogg Building. That's I'm stuck in that lease. So are we going to pay for a building that's sitting vacant for the next few years? I mean, I don't know. There's, I, I mean, and so I'm, I'm, I'm seriously looking at those and what, what the effect's going to be on our office and trying to come up with what solution we can do to help help with the, the reduced funding.
Yeah. And so the public, when they do see this, and for those that may not be in the loop, this is, we're specifically talking about the tag fund. It's a function from the state that local property tax dollars have had to subsidize because the state fees are not keeping pace with expenditures. So it's not just all treasurer services. This is tag fund specific.
This is tag fund specifically, and typically it wouldn't be included in this today's conversations, but because we are subsidizing general fund money, taxpayer money, it's, it's up for discussion.
Okay. Thanks for the update.
Yeah.
Very helpful.
All right, Kelly Arnold, county clerk. For my office, just over the next year in twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six, my focus is going to be on our tax system software update, upgrade. That's going to be, uh, a lot of work for our staff, not just the clerks, but the treasurers, the appraisers, a little bit on G I S. Um, but we're slated to get that going this year. Um, and so that's kind of what I'll be working on. It has some budget impact.
Tonya Bucketham, registered deeds. Uh, we're about three weeks into our new records management system. We're still working out a couple of kinks, but other than that, everything is working out really good. I do like to remind people that we have that property fraud alert. And if you've signed up for that subscription, you need to re-sign up because it goes away. So you need to re-sign up because it gives you an opportunity to have an alert, not just by an email now, it's done by text and a phone call. So again, we got our new system. As of from February third until today, we have one thousand six hundred and forty-three people that have signed up for it. So.
That's pretty substantial.
Keith Allen with the sheriff's office. We've got a couple of different things we're looking at. One of the issues we're dealing with is as technology continues to advance and we're storing uh, more and more electronic, electronic data. Uh, the manners in which we're storing it, everything's filling up. And so that's kind of been on top priority. We're currently researching and working with IT to determine which is the best path forward. If it's a cloud solution, um, it's extremely expensive to move forward with the servers. Um, and I know this is an area that'll come up that we'll need some additional discussion here in the near future, but uh, just to give it some to understand, like in the next three years, we're looking at, I think, fifty-eight servers that we operate. Does that sound right, Mike? That we're going to have to look at replacing if we maintain all the storage of our, like our records management system and CAD data and our jail management system data locally. So we got some big issues with data that we're trying to resolve. And there are some options in the works, but that uh, we'll probably try to get a resolution this year and at least have an op, you know, some options moving forward to address that issue. As always, um, you know, the city of Wichita, uh, police department passed some pretty significant raises last year uh, for the sheriff's office, or for the Wichita Police Department. So the sheriff's office will also look at, um, you know, trying to maintain competitiveness. And there may be a decision package. The sheriff isn't here today, but that may be something that we try to address just to keep that competitive as we move forward.
Appreciate that.
John Muller with DA's office. Digital evidence management is a big um, piece of what we're going to be dealing with over the next few years. Like Keith said, there's so much now. Security footage, body cam footage. You know, everybody's got a ring doorbell. There is so much of this digital evidence uh, with the cases that we see now. So from the beginning, our discovery processes, our, our folks in discovery are overwhelmed. Um, our attorneys are overwhelmed trying to review, uh, this footage and prepare for their cases. So that's a big challenge that we're going to face going forward. Uh, we hope to be able to use some technology to help us with that. Uh, there's a lot of um, programs out there, a lot of AIs, the big, the, the hot topic right now. I don't know how much that could help us, but we're certainly going to explore that. We have a new case management system that'll be going into place. Uh, hopefully the end of this year. We hope that that's going to help us, uh, manage a lot of that as well. Has a lot of features that should, should help with that. But that's going to be a challenge because it just keeps, um, snowballing. There's just so much, so much of the digital evidence now that, that has to be dealt with. And then attorney, uh, recruitment, retention. Uh, that's still a bit of a struggle for us. Uh, there's been some efforts made over the last couple of years that have really helped. Uh, we're in a much better place than we were. Uh, but it's still a struggle and part of that's compensation. Part of that are other issues that I'm sure you've all heard Mark talk about recently. But those are the, the big things on the horizon for the DA's office.
Okay. We have a couple of state appointees, praiser and election commissioner, if you'd like to. We heard quite a bit from the praiser's office on Wednesday. I don't know if you read the news or anything, but.
Well, anytime you give me a microphone, it's dangerous. So. But there are several bills at the legislature that are wanting to cap values. Capping values doesn't solve the problem. I mean, cap value, what's going to move up? It's going to be the levy, taxes increased, people are still going to be furious. If you take the time and go through the math, many of them get it, um, that, that capping values doesn't work. A levy lid, not, excuse me, a, a tax lid is what you need. And, uh, Ronnie and I worked through an exercise here that, that's quite interesting. And we did it for every taxing jurisdiction in, in Cedric County. And, and we wrote the rules of how that would work. It, it, it's, it's quite interesting. And by far, schools are the ones who, who really milk the cow. So, I mean, there are some districts in their jurisdictions where uh, it, it's truly sad because you think that they're doing or they're, they're raising the levy, you get all the tax they can. Clearly they're not. There are jurisdictions out there that are trying to live by the rule uh, of the revenue neutral rate. There are others that just don't care. Also, there is Senate Bill ten where you have, uh, the legislature basically saying, uh, that some personal property is going to be exempt. Uh, and we knew that was coming. Nonetheless, uh, it looks like the House is a little nervous because they don't want to be accused of, uh, you know, exempting people's expensive toys, their airplanes and their boats. So that's probably going to be added back in. The thing is with CIME, that is commercial industrial machinery and equipment. Uh, that is not in the bill. However, I do have many of my appraiser friends, county appraisers who want that to go away. Number one, they want their counties to be able to enjoy economic development. And in their small counties, it's very difficult to attract anything there. Uh, there are others who want to reallocate their staffs uh, to real property only, and they like all personal property to go away. So I have to fight with them and I have to fight with the legislature to make sure we don't lose our CIME because it makes such a big difference to the fire district. It makes a big difference to Derby Schools and Derby Rec. And it also makes a difference to Cedric County. So, uh, you know, I, I'm at odds with some of these people, but nonetheless, uh, Ronnie and I did meet with a large, uh, a very large, uh, company yesterday. And I have told people that this munching on CIME would start. Well, in earnest, it has now started. So you've been forewarned.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Mark. Appreciate it. Laura, would you like to, any update on your office?
Okay. You mentioned election equipment earlier. We are already working on that with the other three big counties. Y and Dot is going to take the lead. We're going to do a joint RFP like you did in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. So that is in the works. The biggest acts we're going to have this year is our pole pad printers. That print, what? Yeah, the iPad to the pole print has to be replaced because they become obsolete and no longer supported by Apple. So that's thirty pole pads that will need to be replaced to a tune of about sixteen thousand dollars. The printers themselves, they're oaky printers. They're no longer manufactured here in the United States. You can get them in Europe. Um, so it's coming, becoming more difficult to get toner replacement for the printers themselves. So and they're at the end of their life. And the other big ask is, um, increase election worker pay. I know Commissioner Howell thinks that most election workers, because he said this in a public meeting, that they do it. They volunteer. They're not doing it for the pay. I would argue that's not true. Um, a lot of them do it for the pay and we hear it every election. We only get eight fifty an hour. You know, and it makes recruiting election workers difficult. So we would like to up that a little bit. So that's going to be our big ask.
Okay.
Yes. We have five elections this year, five. Um, obviously the one on Tuesday, which we're seeing a miserable turnout, which I knew we would. We have an election April eighth, one May thirteenth, and then the primary and the general. The move, I, we might be able to move between the primary and general, but I'm hesitant to say that because if there's any type of technical glitch in the programming of the general election, that would set us behind with logic and accuracy. I don't, I just don't want to risk it. Um, so I think it would be better to wait until after the general, you know, between Thanksgiving and Christmas to do the office move. Now, we can move the equipment over there. But I, I worry about technology. Sorry, Mike. I don't want any glitches in programming. So that's all.
That's good. Thank you. Okay, Tom, what's next?
Okay, now it's, um, we've done this differently the last few years, but I guess this is the commissioner's chance to kind of talk about what their expectations are for budget. This won't be your only chance, but it's your first chance. Two of you are right off the election trail. So, and I know you have been out in contact with many, many citizens. So maybe a chance for each commissioner to kind of talk about what they're hearing from constituents as far as expectations of budget or priorities. We'll be taking notes and listening and Chairman, however you want to pass the mic amongst.
Just come down the. Just come down the aisle, I think.
I just wanna kind of go from my own experience. This is my, I think, fourteenth budget season opening up. I've never opened, started this early, but I like it. I love the timing, I guess I'll say firsthand, because we just had the appraisals report out Wednesday. Now, we're already talking about it. With the city, it seemed like we were starting the end of April, first of May. With the school board, it seemed like we waited until after school was out, so I really like this timing. I think it's particularly important right now because there's so many balls in the air that, I'm all about control the controllables. You know, we have things going on nationally with the states, so I think it's important that we're having the discussion early. I'm, I'm sure my feedback's gonna be similar to Commissioner Wise, where we just did come off the election trail, and we both ran on, you know, we gotta reduce property taxes, we gotta reduce spending, and our phones and emails and stuff are really firing up. So, I, I think it's very important that we, I appreciated the line item detail. We got a lot more information, I felt like, today than what I've had in the past with retreats. A lot of times, it just seemed like I just got a bulk summary to where there was a lot more drill downs today. I really appreciated that. And it gives us the opportunity to ask these questions and reaching out to the public, because there, there's a lot of frustration out there right now, and, and, you know, we, we've gotta sell this to them and make sure that it's something our public wants to buy into.
Respectfully, Commissioner Stephanie, do you wanna go next as the, a new person, or do you want me to go?
Sure.
Okay.
Jesus. Yeah, I think Jeff said it really well. Coming off of the campaign trail, we did get to hear from a lot of people, door knocking and, and reaching out. So, one thing that, emails that I'm getting is accountability. I, I said I was gonna fight for taxpayers, for tax relief, not just holding the line and, and not increasing expenses, but actually causing some relief. So, that comes through shared services. We've talked a lot about that. I'd like to have ongoing conversations of what are responsible ways that we can attack shared services and ensure that we are working through efficiencies and not duplicating. That does come with partnerships through other government bodies, and I understand that. I think that we have a good relationship to, to maybe make some headway on some of that. And I, I'd really like to get a decision made on this admin building. I think time is, it costs money, and we need to make a decision on that. It's not an easy decision, but we've gotta move on it. Property tax versus sales tax, we talked about it through the conversation today, especially regarding the zoo and, and interest bank. That is something that, as I campaigned, it landed well at every single door. So, I wanna keep that in mind, that people are interested in seeing what it looks like for property taxes to be only paying for what we've been calling core functions, but, you know, whatever we wanna call it now. And then sales tax funding, some of our, our fun things that make our community so great. And then I think we need to be working on putting pressure on and working with the state to fund services that we provide on their behalf. So, if I can get one thing done in these next four years, I would love to affect some change on that and impact on that. I think this was, this was great. I stayed quiet most of the day just to kind of absorb and listen. This is my first budget cycle from a government standpoint, and so I've, I've learned a lot, and so I just wanted to kind of explain my quietness has been because I'm on information intake and wanna make sure that I don't miss anything. So, thank you.
I guess I'm gonna go, then. So, I, I wanna say thank you to our staff. You guys do a wonderful job putting this together today, and I really do appreciate the detailed information. I agree with what Jeff said about that. Some of my priorities here, again, I, I know that I pushed a resolution recently that did not pass. We're, I guess, gonna visit that back in October. So, I look forward to that conversation. I don't think we should push that decision off till October. I think our, our taxpayers would, would like to see us to have that discussion sooner than later. Along that line, you know, I know we, we've, I've seen, I've heard a lot of criticism, criticism, criticism about internal rules that we create for ourselves, and, and one of those was a mill levy target. I still think that's not bad governance. I think that it's good to have a commission-led target that staff understands exactly what we're trying to do from a commission perspective. Along that line, you know, I appreciate the two handouts that Lindsay handed us regarding the tax lid calculations. And as it sits today, I have to tell you, I'm quite surprised to see it doesn't actually cramp us the way that the calculation came out this year. But I can tell you that that would be extremely popular to our taxpayers to have an internal, self-imposed tax lid policy. And I would suggest the one without the public safety exemption actually, right now, doesn't seem to hurt us at the moment. I do think that if we get into the situation where we've gotta start cutting somewhere, I personally would, would prioritize public safety over virtually almost anything else in our budget. And so, I don't, I don't, just because there's not an exemption for public safety doesn't mean they're gonna take the brunt of any cut. I just think that if we're gonna raise the, if we're gonna grow the budget faster than those calculations, then I think we need to take pause. So, I would really like to see, similar to the resolution that did not pass, we're gonna look at it again in October. I think we oughta have a self-imposed county commission-created internal resolution that governs how we operate. It should be based on the tax lid without the public safety exemption. And to be clear, I'm advocating that the state does it for everybody, including themselves. I think that's reasonable. And there's a lot of reasons why I think that either one of the, I call it tinkering with the appraisal process. I don't think it solves any real problems, either one of them. In fact, it makes things worse in some ways, and if you don't know, if you've nothing about, thought about the math and, and all the, either one of those, I believe both of those will shift the burden from people who benefit from that math scheme to people who don't benefit. And there's plenty of them that don't benefit. And I also have to, to say, I think some of those that don't benefit are agricultural folks and are commercial taxpayers. So, if you're, if you're concerned about business and you're concerned about fairness, I don't know that either one of those really is a perfect solution. I think they both have problems. But a tax lid actually doesn't shift the burden to, to anybody. It does, what it does is it gives us a target that's based on the local economy. And based on the long sheet, Lindsay, I would argue that we've been conservative compared to our economic factors around us for all of these years. And you can, if you look at what's gone on since two thousand and eight, it's not new for Cedric County to operate below CPI, or, you know, wage income is, is, goes up faster than our budget, and assessed value goes up faster than our budget, and our mill levy has, has actually generally gone down in terms of percentages. And so, I guess my point is, I don't know that I see anything on this sheet that alarms me, because I think we're in the habit of being a very conservative organization. And I think what that does is it tells our taxpayers that we're not just gonna raise the mill levy and capture the increase because it's what everybody else does. They, they always accuse us of this. We just capture the mill levy. And in years past, our mill levy hasn't changed much. It hasn't gone up, but it really hasn't gone down. It has gone down a few times the last several years, but collectively, it's less than the mill that's gone down. But most governments that capture the technical increase will think, "Thank you, Kelly. Appreciate what you do." But the technical, technical increase through the appeals process makes a small adjustment, and governments capture that. And most governments, if you were to actually plot their mill levy, you'd see that they have gone up over time, including Wichita. So, I like the, I like some internal controls. I like the idea of having a mill, having a mill levy target. I like the idea of having an internal tax lid. I like the idea of stating to our public that we're not gonna fund non-core functions of government with property tax dollars. To me, those are principles that people will understand. And if we wanna speak to the heart of the issue of property taxes, all three of those, I think, have great merit. So, I would argue for each one of them once again. I may be alone in that, but I would urge my colleagues here to seriously consider those changing topics ever so slightly. I don't know that I personally agree with this, but I just wanna share my, I'm getting constituents continuing to reach out to me based on a conversation that started a year ago on our CAB board, actually. But I have members of my, of my district that really think that Wichita State University should be a Wichita, should follow the state law and should be funded through Wichita's mill levy, not the county. I know we've got a, a bond commitment to Wichita State, which, which takes up about a third of our one and a half mills. And so, I don't know that we would ever tinker with that, but if you gave back to Wichita as much as you could, it'd be about one mill reduction for Cedric County, and then the county, the city would have to pick up the difference. So, I'm not, I'm not suggesting this is a good idea. I just wanna bring it up. The fact, I think the conversation is, needs deep understanding. I'm not, again, I'm not saying I'm in favor of the idea. So, Andy Shalap, if you're listening, I'm not saying this is a good idea. I am saying that I think it's a discussion that is happening whether we like it or not. And some of the people in the community that are looking for tax relief understand this is something they are, they are interested in, in understanding the, that particular issue. I would like to raise the issue of, you know, this is a dirty word in politics. We use the word earmark. We actually used it once today. Earmark for, I forget how we used it earlier, but there was an earmark for something or other.
CIP and Technology Reserves.
Okay, well, she said CIP and Technology Reserves. Anyway, the word earmark, I think, if you understand what that means, it means that, you know, if, if you have a US senator that's, that's advocating for spending in his district, let's say something in Kansas, and he says to someone from another state, you know, "I would support something in your state if you'll support this thing in my state." And essentially, these are things that, again, we've all heard of the bridge to nowhere. I'm not talking about that type of spending. That's just totally wasteful spending. I'm talking about things that are important to part of the total jurisdiction. But the, the problem is, I can't ask for my colleagues to support some project in my district, I don't think, without some type of commensurate consideration for something in your district. And you guys know your district better than I do, and maybe there's something in your district that you would really love to see some support for, but you, you know that, as a single commissioner, you'll never get three votes to support that. And I understand that's how this works, and I, I have never received three votes for something in my district, with the exception of every once in a while, there is, actually, going way back to before twenty seventeen, there was a program called the R three forty-two program. And again, that was deemed to be overly political. I don't know how to make it less political. I don't, the politics was a problem, so I don't know that we wanna go back to that. But I would say that if there was a project in a district, and there was another similar project in a different district, where it was considered somehow to be fair, I don't know that I would mind necessarily raising those types of things. And I'm, what I'm getting to is, there are some roads in my district, I, I believe, truly oughta be paved. And I think we have a problem getting around, District Five is, is unique, because there's only, only two good ways to get north to south in my district. And both of those roads are, in my opinion, over-traveled, and they're, I think they're dangerous. I think Rock Road has become a dangerous road in my personal opinion. It's high speed, it's, it's four lanes, and it is, no separation, and to me, Rock Road is, is at capacity. Certain times of the day, I think we need to deal with Rock Road. Greenwich Road, again, I think at one point was, it's just a county road, but it has gotten so much traffic because people are trying to avoid Rock Road. Greenwich Road has steep ditches, no shoulders, and I think there's a public safety concern there. We, I think we need another north-south road in my district. And I don't know what to do to advocate for that, but I, I know the R three forty-two program, I'm looking at Jeff Bluebaugh, you're, one of your, Tim, Tim Norton, I think, over a number of years. He was here sixteen years. He paved mile after mile after mile, and you have a brand-new, a road that's county-owned that goes all the way out to Highway fifty-three North. It was paved through the R three forty-two program. Had it not been for that program, that road would not be paved at all. So, there have been some good things that have happened as a consequence of that program. I don't think, I would consider that to be a wasteful spending. So, I, I would just tell you, I, I don't like the word earmark because it's a dirty word, but I do think there are some projects in my district I don't think I can ever get support for. But I don't know how to, I don't know how to get them done because it seems like I'm, you know, asking for favor to my district, and, and the other commissioners don't get the same, you know, commensurate type of attention to something that's important to them. So, I, I think the three forty-two program was well-intentioned. That's essentially what that is. It tried, it tried to create fairness between the five districts and provide, if you will, an opportunity to address something that we understand is not driven from warrants, but it's driven from understanding that what's going on in your district. And I'll just argue, though, I only got to use that program one time for my first term, and we paved a half-mile by Southeast High School, which was a half-mile going south from the school on a dirt road. So, kids didn't have to drive, didn't have to travel to school on a dirt road. And then we partnered with Derby and, and West Star Energy at the time, and we got a two-million-dollar project to pave two miles. Derby paid for a half-mile. We paid for one and a half miles to go out from Webb Road to Greenwich on eighty-seventh Street. And if you look at what's gone out there with the capital investment, with the housing, it is exploding out there with million-dollar homes. The catalyst to all that was that road that we paved. And it was, at the time, David Spears was here to tell you, that was the worst count, the worst road in Cedric County was that road. They had to raise the road by four feet and move it over because it had translated over time. They had to move fifty-five telephone poles because the telephone poles were in the middle of where the road was supposed to be. And so, they had to move two large utility poles, metal utility poles, very tall. They had to take those out and replace them with one. And then, at the end of the day, West Door put in over a million dollars, and the county put in six hundred, no, actually, it wasn't even that much. I forget the exact number. I think between the city and county, between city of Derby and county, it was about six hundred thousand dollars. And the township kicked in thirty-four. So, we had a four-way partnership and got it, a mile and a half road paved. We paid for a mile and a half, and Derby paid for a half-mile. But that road has incredible capital investment now that's going on. And, and again, that would've never happened had it not been for that R three forty-two program. I actually have one road in my district where it's paved except for, there's a, there's one mile missing between Sixty-third Street and Pawnee. There's one, there's a one-mile road that's missing, but it'll go in halfway between the two. But paving one mile would create, if you will, a north-south artery. And another one of those things is the center of Derby could be connected to the center of Rose, Rose Hill. We're, we are two and a half miles short of doing that. Sixty-third Street's a great road, but you have to travel, travel a mile north and a mile back south to, to use it, and it's a forty-five mile, mile road. And there's a lot of folks who would rather go from the center of Derby by the Dillons to the center of Rose Hill. And all that entire, that seven or eight-mile stretch there is all paved except for two and a half miles. So, there's been a desire to do that. Anyway, I guess my point is this. I think the program has value. I would like to have a discussion about maybe doing something, maybe not exactly like it was, but I think we oughta do something there. And I would just say this also. Back when we got rid of our pug mill, the, the cost of asphalt was going up, and we were using millings and cold-mix asphalt to do our cold-mix program, and that was deemed to be kind of a substandard process. And so, we heard from our hot-mix suppliers that we can get hot-mix for the same price as cold-mix. And we, the first year I was here, the first budget cycle I went through, we had earmarked, I believe, about four hundred thousand, maybe five hundred thousand dollars for the R three forty-two program for a two-year, that was a two-year commitment. So, it was roughly a hundred thousand a mile to do that program. Again, they weren't great roads, and they would have to be basically touched up every five to seven years. But now, to pave a mile is well over a million dollars. And these are sometimes are section-lined roads where you have residents who would want to be, they wanna pay for part of it. They don't wanna pay for a million-dollar road. And we don't have a way to do this without essentially, call it a benefit district. And if you put the entire cost on a few homeowners along that road. I think we need to find a way to lower the price of paving. I don't know if that's a chip-sealed road or some type of other technology. I don't know what we can do there. But we oughta find a way to do roads for a lot less money than a million dollars a mile. Or, if we can't do that, then we ought to go ahead and find a way to partner with these folks on section-lined roads, so they don't have to pick up the entire cost. I, I don't want these folks to have to pick up their cost. I'm not sure you guys heard that or not. I think we should share the cost with those folks. Onto a few other things. The Northeast Expressway, I don't really wanna put any money in that this year until we get that report back. I do not. I think we should not fund that this year until we get that report back from the state. So, that's a million dollars we don't have to spend this year. And then, I'm still interested in partnering with the city on a, and I know people think this is a terrible idea, but I like the idea of being able to have a, an employee-based health clinic that's shared between different municipalities. And I think we could provide better services. We have our own pharmacist, our own radiologist, our own physical therapy. You can even add some childcare in there if you want to. But I think between just Wichita and Cedric County alone, you're looking at twenty-five thousand people getting healthcare through a clinic, and you can invite other cities to participate as well. One of our most expensive things in our budget is healthcare. And again, you can't mess with hospitalization, but you can mess with general practitioner-type stuff, you know, lab work and sickness and stitches and things- lab work and sickness and stitches and things like that. There's a lot of things they can do. Other large companies around town have gone in a different direction, because they own, they can own the facility, they own, the doctors actually work for the organization, and there's a lot of cost savings to do it that way. I still think there's value there. There's potential. The greatest savings in our budget comes from that idea. I think that idea has a lot of potential. And I'll just say finally, I'm still in favor of modernizing our employee benefit package. I like the idea of short-term, long-term disability insurance. I like the idea of moving from, I know this is correct by state legislation, but I think for our newer employees that are never going to vest, our average employee tenure today is less than five years. Am I right about that, Mr. Manager? I think our average tenure is less than five years, which means they'll never vest in Capers, even Capers III. And I think the end of the day, I think that we should do better, have a matching program for 457. They've got to get some relief from the state to do that. I think we need to have an argument that says Capers III is a big wet blanket. We need to find a better way to do this. And 457, with a matching program, would actually be a lot more interesting to our staff, especially junior staff that doesn't plan on staying here more than five years. And I'll still argue, again, PTO policy is better than sick leave and vacation. I'll bring it up every year. I think if you really want to enhance employee, employees' quality of life, give them total control over all of their time off through a PTO policy rather than a sick leave and vacation, which, in my opinion, the sick leave policy especially is, is, it is, there's a lot of negative things about that. I'll just say that. I won't go into the reasons why I say that. But I'll just tell you, there's a lot of negative things about sick leave policy. I think we could do better by converting that to a PTO policy. That's enough. Thank you so much for the chance to speak.
Do I need a new battery? No, okay. All right. Okay, thank you, Maureen, Finance. Thank you for today. It's a lot of, lot of work. And thanks to your staff and everybody, including Finance and even Budgetiers. Hi, the Budgetiers. Including, you know, and Brent's group for the year he's had, the successful investments this year, which is very helpful. I'm trying to figure out how to spend that right now, so I'll get with you. Anyway, I just want to also say, we didn't really do much on the long sheet. We've referenced that before, I think, in past years, but that's probably next meetings or coming up or whatever. But, but we did have, it was, it was very eye-opening, the CIP world today. Really, really eye-opening, because I think a few of us are aware, or we all are aware, that there's also some other requests of, that are outside what to call the core business, that are knocking on our doors. And, and that's really, today's, today's CIP stuff was very, I'll just say again, eye-opening. And in a way, I apologize, Lindsay. I mean, I questioned our bond world, Tanya, I questioned some of our, and Andrea, our building world. And really, I've got a lot of respect for both of you. And so, it was well-intended just to express my anxiety with what was going on in the, in the overall CIP. So, I just want to, and recently, I think, and I don't want to single out a few departments, but I am, and I want to thank what we've done the last two years in the HR department to shore up the, the employees and the severance, I mean, the, is it severance? No, the other one, the compensation. Shore up the severance. That's a little bit of wrong words there. But the compensation has been, and the impact of that shows in your opening statements, that our employment, employee stability somewhat is, been greatly improved. And that's, that's rewarding to know that that work we've done, thanks to you guys. And also, I want to thank, it seems like our comms department has been very active in, on almost a daily and hourly basis with helping provide us all unified voice and some answers to respond to some of these inquiries. And they've done a nice job the last year. And so, that's just a few observations. And so, with that also, I encourage, I want to thank, I'm not trying to brown those, the chairman, but, but his efforts in the community have been really good with presenting our image in publicly. He's worked great with Mayor Wu, and, and he's not afraid to step out and talk about shared services and merged opportunities and different ways to go about. It's fun to talk to him about, we both have had, well, in a way, we've all had businesses, and you try to separate out your business mind. The business of government is different from the business of, of business. And to adjust your mind to say, okay, I really don't like this, but it's part of what we have to do, so we have to do it. And we, our responsibility is just do it as responsible as we can, or the, what we think is the best we can. So, I want to thank you for, for what you've been doing the last year as the, as the chair. And welcome our two new ones to the first, their first time in the Fish Bowl. So, that's all.
Well, thank you. And I'll be kind of, just kind of high-level and wrap this up. And I want to, again, thank Tom, Lindsay, Budget Staff. Thank you so much for all this. And thank everybody else for being here, too. It's a long day. We're getting a lot of detail. And so, I appreciate the participation. And I want to, first, I want to acknowledge progress. I think it's important to acknowledge the progress of Sedgwick County Government. Really, the last 10 years, but things are a lot different. Even when I was campaigning in 2022 to taking office in '23, now, I'm in, this is my third budget now, and it's quite a bit different than what it was when I first got here. I remember looking at staffing tables and, you know, 75% staffing, 70%. We had some departments at 65% staffing, and I think we're over 90%, 92%, 93% staffing. So, there's been a lot of effort. It's been a team effort from the organization, the organization's house, and the people's house. There's been a partnership here to do what we have to do for the betterment of the people of Sedgwick County and the staff of Sedgwick County. So, I want to acknowledge that progress. And I want to thank all the department heads, other electeds, appointeds, and department heads. Thank you for the work you do for your staff. You've had to bear the brunt of a lot, and a lot of change, and a lot of questions. But collectively, we've made a lot of progress together. So, I just want to acknowledge that and thank you for the work that you do. Balance, I think, is hard sometimes. And when we're trying to balance in this budget this year, is we're trying to balance services and the funds it takes to run the services. And when we get out of balance either way, people's lives are impacted. If we get out of balance with lack of services, their lives are certainly impacted. If we get out of balance with too much funding for these services, their lives are impacted. And, and it's been funny, just in now my third budget, I think we've seen a tipping point on that seesaw. Is that when I was first got here, we were talking about response times, and how long it was taking EMS, and how long it was taking 911, and that's been shored up. I mean, our outputs right now are exceptional in many, many ways. Now, we're talking about what it's costing to do these things. So, finding that balance is hard. And I'm pretty confident through this budget season that we're going to find that balance in a way that will be respectful to the consumer, meaning the taxpayer, but also to the provider, which are those, the staff that are doing these services. But balance is going to be hard, and I think we'll get ourselves back into equilibrium. I want to make a comment about what I've noticed the last couple of years, is that the biggest challenges are in the gaps, I've noticed. Like, what we, I've been calling with Tom on his whiteboard, I keep giving him these impossible problems, because what we're learning is that the gaps are where we're seeing, where we have to step into the gaps to do things, to shore things up. And it's expensive, it's hard, it requires more, it requires creativity. And it just seems like everywhere we turn, there's more gaps we're finding. I think a lot about the foster care and the JO kids. I think about the kids, or the individuals with ADD and mental health, and nobody's servicing these gaps. And, and I think what it's going to require to do that for this community is real leadership. And it's not leadership from the commission, it's leadership from the people in the room that are doing these things. So, I want to invite the staff to stay creative in your ideas, to keep bringing ideas, to be transparent in what you're seeing. What I really appreciate about the staff of Sedgwick County Government, particularly department leadership, is when you ask them their opinion, they give you their opinion. And I think that's, I think that's, for me personally, Tom may not like that much, but for me personally, I'm meaning him, you telling me your opinions, I appreciate your opinions, because it allows us to actually see a bigger picture. I'm not an expert in public works. I'm not an expert in the appraiser's office or, or the work that you do. So, we depend upon your expertise to make decisions on how we fund your departments that impact people's lives. So, man, I just appreciate that in many, many ways, all that you guys bring to the table. And I want to encourage you to keep being creative in how we do things. The last point, it's a point I made last year, and a point that I continue to make, is that organizations have to pivot over time, all organizations, whether it's a private organization or a public organization, they have to pivot over time. Nothing stays status quo, nothing stays along the same glide path, or you'll grab an inflection point where you'll decline. So, we have to continue to pivot and always look for opportunities to improve the model, the business model of service providing in Sedgwick County. And I think it's incumbent, not just upon leaders in each department, it's incumbent on the five commissioners and the county manager to paint a vision for this community of what progress looks like. And it's going to be different, and it's going to look different, and that's okay, is that we have to continue to force reform and model change, and we have to pivot where pivots are required, because this county is changing. This county is changing. This, when I, I can't remember what it looked, it was 19, what was it, when we did the aging agreement? In the 80s. Well, the county's different now than what it was then. When they did, the geography of this county, the population of this county, it's, it's changing. Things are changing. And as the county change, we have to adapt and pivot with it. So, I just want to encourage us to continue to paint a vision for the community of what it looks like. What this community needs from the people that serve it, the public servants and the leadership, is they need a little dose of hope right now. I don't know if you've paid attention to what's going on in the world, but it's kind of feels kind of dark in many regards, and there's a lot of people that have no hope. And what I think this organization, Sedgwick County, can do for this community through our approach to how we serve people, whether it's in the home as an EMS paramedic, or whether you're fighting their fires, or whether you're treating them at COMCARE, or whether they're paying their property taxes at the treasurer's office, wherever we interact with people, we can do it in a way that we positively impact their lives. And I just think the people, this community, need that right now. So, we are providing services that can change people's lives. And I keep encouraging us to do it and do it well, and paint a vision of hope in this community that impacts the way we enjoy our place. So, I just want to, today's a day of just, we're just getting warmed up. I feel like this is batting practice, we're just getting ready to go into the game. And this is going to be, this is going to be a tough game this year. But I think we have the staff and the expertise and the know-how to find the balance, to deliver the services at the cost that the people need them to be. So, I'm encouraged for the budget cycle. Thanks for putting us on today, and thanks for everybody that showed up to participate. We appreciate you. Tom?
The Budget Director has said we are finished for the day. So, next step would be, we will begin compiling, we'll compile some notes. I know we're all taking notes. And the next formal thing from a budget perspective is?
Budget submission, is what we do?
Yep. Okay. All right. Thank you, Commissioners, Chairman. Appreciate it. Thanks, everybody, for coming.